Still, we're still waiting on Commissioner Wainwright to come in, but I think we go ahead and get started. We have a couple of things I think we go relatively fast. But before we do that, as we open every meeting that we have, we open with invocation and pledge, and I guess I'll handle it in case. Please rise. Dear Lord God, we thank you for the time that we're able to assemble here today. We thank you for the day of life that you've given us, and we thank you for the ability to be able to come here and do business of the county. We ask that you give us wisdom, that you give us guidance, that you give us free thought and free exchange of ideas, and that we season our words with salt so that we can be non-confrontational, so that we can get through these proceedings in a way that will bring praise and honor to your great and holy name. We thank you for all the things that you do for us and for our community and for our nation. We thank you for the first responders, the doctors and nurses that provide care to us as humans. We thank you for our soldiers, dear Lord, who protect our country, our great, wonderful, wonderful country and state. We thank you for these men who have decided to serve our community. Ask, give them wisdom, give them guidance today particularly, an extra portion of your spirit. We just invite them into this place. We're going to back out of your way and let you in, and we just thank you. Thank you once again for all the wonderful blessings that you have bestowed upon us as a people. And we ask all these things in your great and holy name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, I'd like to welcome everybody here. We just, a couple of housecleaning issues, just silence your cellphones if you haven't already done so. I'd like to remind members of the board and speak into their microphones, as yesterday we had some interest in hearing you a little bit better, so please do that. When you come to the podium here today, make sure you adjust the microphone, it's pretty easy to do to your mouth so that the audience can hear you. We'd like to welcome these outside agencies today who come before the board and request funding. It was a great amount of work in the community that is reflective of our personality as a community, our character as a community. We thank you for those efforts, and so we recognize that, and we have to make the hard decisions as to who to fund and how much to fund. So please bear with us as we try to do what's in the best interest of the tax and parish of Swanee County. So without further ado, Commissioner Wainwright has joined us, so we're going to go ahead and jump right in. We have the treasurer for the animal control governing board. If you would, come forward and give us some highlights of your budget, if any, or make any comments that you want. The board may ask him some questions. If none, you're free to make some closing comments, or you can, we'll see you next year.
Okay. I want to thank you for the budget of last year, and we're kind of requesting the same amount, 10,000 for running expenses for '16, '17. And we'd like also the county to count reserve animal control building front. We rolled over. We've got things in the room. Lay right now. Building the quarantine room.
Quarantine room for the animals that may be a little bit sick or...
Dog that's been impounded due to a bite case or something like that.
Understood. Any questions, board? Guardian Animal Control. Okay. Thank you very much. Have a great day. Next up, we have the ARC of North Florida. Give your attention to the representative from their organization.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm just on the backside of bronchitis, so hopefully you can understand me.
Understood.
First of all, we want to thank the county for all their support over the many years that you have supported us. We're an agency that provides services to people with intellectual and physical disabilities in the community, and we're asking again this year for your assistance. It allows people in Swanee County to attend services that they so need, and it allows their family members and their caregivers to go to work. So with that being said, I wanted to add that we added an additional element to our services where we're recycling cardboard because we're trying to self-sustain and offer our individuals an opportunity to work and make some money. That's all for the day.
All right, thank you. Does the board have any questions for the representative of the ARC? What's your name for representative?
Beverly Standbridge.
I can't remember now. Did you take Bobby's place?
I did, I did. I've been here a year. I was here last year, but he spoke, so...
Right, that's how it's always...
Yeah, we all know the dynamics. Give us for that. We're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, have a great day. Next up, we'll listen to Guardian Ad Lightum, and that representative would be Ms. Tammy Williams.
She's in the hospital.
She's in the hospital.
Yeah. Bring her prayers.
Yes, give her a prayer. Move on, make a note of that. We may reserve some time for her later, or for a representative from there later. Next, we'll wait, we'll listen to the Historical Commission Chairperson, and that will be Mr. Eric Musgrove, who also happens to be our board secretary.
Taking off my clerk's hat, putting on Historical Commission hat.
Pull up your microphone.
Yes, sir. Everybody hear me okay? I'm just going to read out a report real quick for y'all. Thanks again for your funding annually. You've been giving us $2,000 just to explain what the Historical Commission does. We are tasked with presenting and preserving what we can of Swanee County's history. We were established by the city and the county in 1980 to do this. The past year, we've been involved in a number of activities. I'm just going to list a few of them for you and the public. First of all, we own the freight depot where the museum is located. The museum is a totally separate organization, but we as the Historical Commission own the building. We maintain the building. It's over 100 years, so a lot of our funding goes to repairing what we can of that building. Lots of maintenance, things such as the air conditioner, roof leaks, back deck insulation, fire suppression system. Those are ongoing issues at that building with it being so old. We've also been very busy this past year with an oral history narrative project, basically finding older people in the community and recording them for prosperity so our kids, grandkids can find out what life was like 50, 75, 100 years ago. So we've been very successful with that. Some of those, we've been interviewed this past year, including a veteran who served at D-Day in 1944, a retired pilot who flew aircraft for the President of the United States of America, someone who was at Pearl Harbor in World War II, and several others, local movers and shakers. So we're very proud of that project, and we are continuing that. And we also have set up in the last year a website, Swanee Historical, or email, excuse me, swaneehistorical@gmail.com, and our website address is www.swaneehistory.com. It's a work in progress that we are putting on there, events that we're doing, those videos, things like that. So also walking tours. You can download a walking tour and basically walk around and see what Live Oak and Swanee County has to offer. We've instituted a membership program and still working out some details on that. And we've also printed out several different brochures and continue to print out brochures on Live Oak, on Swanee County, on movers and shakers in our history. And we've also been putting on regular presentations around the county, especially at the library, a monthly presentation that I put on, but there are other presentations throughout the year that we put on also. And most of our effort over the last year has been working on an attempt to merger with the Museum Association. If you recall, in August of last year, at this workshop meeting, it was suggested that the Historical Commission and the museum look at merging. So that has been our primary focus in the past year, and we are looking to you for guidance as to how to proceed with that. We've tried, we've had several meetings. Our board, Historical Commission, is unanimous in favor of a merger. We think it'd be better for the community and for historical things, have everything together, but we are basically looking to you for guidance as to how to proceed at this point. And this year, we are asking for $3,000 for funding, which is historically what we had received up until, I believe, two or three years ago when it was dropped to $2,000. So I'll take any questions if you have any.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I heard you mention, I enjoy your office that you put in the Democrat...
Thank you.
...to help you there. How often, I heard you say about meeting, how often do y'all meet?
Well, right now, we're meeting monthly. We are, one of the things we're looking at is shifting to a quarterly meeting system, have an executive committee, and so four or five members would meet every month, and then the rest of the board would meet quarterly.
How many members do y'all currently have?
We have 12, one just resigned due to health issues, so we have 11 right now. Any other questions?
You were going pretty fast. What's the website again?
I'm sorry. I was trying to get a line in, and I only have three minutes. It is www.swaneehistory.com. History.com. Sorry.
All right.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Musgrove. Moving right along here, we have the Swanee County Conservation District, and we have this Johnny Fortner. He's going to give his presentation on that. I answered the question.
Good morning, here are you all.
Good.
Johnny Fortner, currently new with the Conservation District. I took Ms. Teresa Owens' place. She retired in May, just started there in April. Appreciate everything y'all do for us. The only increase that they're requesting this year, it's $400 in the travel and for them account. We've taken on administering some contracts with FDAC, the Office of Energy, and Office of Ag Water Policy, incurring some extra expenses there. Everything else will remain the same as it was before.
Any questions of this Fortner about the other school?
Yep.
Thank you for your time. Have a great day.
Y'all have a good day.
Next up, Swanee Valley Four Seas. We'll listen to the director. Please state your name for the director.
Good morning. My name is Patty Stevenson. I'm actually the fiscal administrator and standing in for Michelle Board, our executive director. And I thank you for allowing us to present to you today.
Welcome.
Nationwide Head Start and Early Head Start serves over 1 million children and their families each year. Head Start helps families get out of the cycle of poverty. Our mission all along has been to assist our community's most vulnerable children and families, those living in poverty. Swanee Valley Four Seas is the area grantee for Head Start and Early Head Start in Columbia, Hamilton, Lethley, and Swanee Counties. Our agency serves 470 children and their families, birth to five-year-olds and pregnant women. In Swanee County, our Early Head Start program at Azalea Park serves a total of 56 families with birth to three-year-olds. Our Head Start program serves 75 families with three- to five-year-olds at our Live Oak Learning Center on Mary Mack Street. We also have a Head Start center in Branford where we serve 17 families with three- to five-year-olds. Our program targets low-income families at our below, that are below the federal poverty level. Foster children and homeless children are automatically eligible for our program. Children with disabilities, regardless of family income, are automatically eligible. Our program is serving the neediest of the needy children in each year, each year in Swanee County. Head Start is not a daycare. Head Start is the sole source in our area for providing comprehensive, individualized child and family services, including education and early childhood development, nutrition, health, social services, family services, and parent involvement. Head Start sets the stage for everything that follows in life by helping children build a strong foundation for success in school. We have three areas of our program, which is the health, education, and the family services. We extend an invitation to you to visit our centers if you haven't yet and see for yourselves the difference we are making in Swanee County. We are requesting $10,000 donation to support obtaining necessary classroom materials and equipment. Our program is required to obtain 20% of the funding needed each year through help from the community, which is approximately $1 million in match every year. Although we are able to obtain some of this through volunteer donations and time and space donations, we really do need cash contributions as well to support our classrooms. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions, Swanee Valley Four Seas, rep. Hello. Another question I have is, do you receive any support from United Way?
We, very little. We were a part of the United Way. We are no longer a part of that. We do get designations.
Can you explain that to the board?
Designations would be that somebody who has a payroll withholding designates us as who they would like the funds to go to.
So no direct contribution?
No direct contributions.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Have a great day. All right, next up is the Swanee Valley Genealogical Society, and we'll listen to Mr. Cal Williams, as he gives us a presentation or answers the questions.
Good morning, and I'd like to thank you for your past help with keeping the Swanee Valley Genealogy Society up and going. As you know, this is where we have our family history. This is where you can go to begin the search. You, like many of us, have an interest in where you're from. We have a lot of records there, not only Swanee County, but from many other places too. And I know several of you have been to see what we have, and we also invite you to come on the first Thursday of the month and attend one of our meetings. We usually have a snack, a little food there involved. We're not asking for an increase. We would request the $1,500 that you generously blessed us with in the last year. We are doing fundraisers. We have two fundraisers scheduled for this year, and so we try to do that along with what supports us is the dues from the members and what we get from you all. And, you know, the daily rates when someone comes down to do some work. But we do appreciate what, how you've helped us out in the past, and that's all we ask for. Any questions?
Questions of this Fortner? Another question I have is, how many, how many phone calls would you say you receive? I noticed that during one budget this year that they claimed that there was a tremendous amount of interest from outside of the area and regarding family lines and stuff.
Jenny can tell you probably much better than I can with regard to that. Jenny's the president.
I'm just trying to illustrate the outreach that goes outside of the community and how it develops, if you put, you know, Swanee County's name out there.
You know, probably, I probably get a call at least once a week from outside, I mean, and you're not...
About email.
And lots of emails, lots of emails.
So Swanee County is on people's mind.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, our people are everywhere. I mean, we've had, and I don't have them right now, but I've had members as far away as England. We've got members in California.
Australia.
Australia, yes.
Yeah, so that's all I was...
Yeah.
I understand you very much. Thank you very much. Have a great day. Now, we'll listen to United Way of Swanee Valley, their executive director.
Good morning.
Morning.
I know everybody's got the request, and we wanted to hand you this morning some updated information from...
Missing it to Mr. Wainwright. We'll pass it down.
I want to get these passed. There's a spreadsheet and a PowerPoint presentation. And so everybody did get the request, which is a letter that I submitted back in May with a little package that explained that United Way, after 48 years of serving our community, has now secured a building from which we can function in the future and grow. As a matter of fact, we've grown quite a bit just since we moved in the building because you can add people to add services when you have a place to put them. And, but, in the package that you received before, you had a spreadsheet that showed you the grant funds that we brought into our community during fiscal year 15, '16. These are the funds actually received during that calendar year. And with the help of the county economic development officer, our, my board member, Dr. Jackson, who I believe is in here. You can see that I added a page to the PowerPoint presentation that shows the economic impact to our overall community and then for the dollars that are attributed to Swanee County, so you can see that as well. And these dollars do provide incredible services to our community. As a matter of fact, we're already pretty much ahead for '16, '17, and we were '15, '16 already because we've gotten, already one of our grants for this year announced, which also includes Vivid Visions for 37.5, I believe is the number. So we continue to bring resources to our community to serve the people of our community. Our bottom line is that we can't, so much of what we do really focuses on stable housing. If we can't keep our families housed, we can't keep our children in school. If we can't keep our families housed, we can't keep their parents employed. So it really all fits together. It's a basic need for us to help work on the housing stability as the homeless coalition for our community, as well as our local United Way that does indeed provide services to, and funding to our agencies that apply for funding through our United Way. And in response to Jason's question, some of our agencies apply for funding, some just want to be listed as a United Way affiliated agency so that they can make their services known in our community. It really kind of depends on their budget and their needs and lots of factors that are kind of agency-specific.
Understood.
So I know y'all have all the information that I've already given you, plus a PowerPoint and a spreadsheet today, so are questions yet for me?
Any questions?
I have one on the PowerPoint. Do you have a staff emergency board? Is that the board for Swanee County?
There is one for Swanee County, but in Swanee County, Kimberly Thomas chairs it, so our office doesn't do the, we have in some years, but then she took over doing that. So, you know, we're happy to do it if the county wants us to, but if there's somebody that wants to do that in that county, that's fine too. So near county, Swanee County, and Swanee County, Kimberly Thomas chairs that. So yes, it exists in Swanee, it exists in each of the counties.
Question, y'all?
My question. I do invite you, come see the facility. It is our community's facility, so I really would invite you, anytime you're in Lake City, stop by and see our new offices, although a lot of our time is spent coming to see our clients in Swanee County as opposed to clients coming from Swanee County to Lake City, also because we have to do home inspections. Oftentimes, staff are in their cars and they're over here, but do feel free to stop at any time and see our offices when you're in Swanee County.
What was your name for the record? Mr. Eric Musgrove.
My name is Rita Dotson.
And then my question is, is regarding the jobs created, the economic impact. I really appreciate that information and your professional presentation there. But are you prepared to speak to how you arrived at that number? Are those direct jobs or indirect jobs?
And then that is based on a straight-up calculation from just standard industry practices for, in economic development, where they take the actual budget figures and look at what are the job codes that our agency has that we're using those dollars for, and then how does that relate in terms of total dollars in the community to then generate how many jobs based upon those American dollars?
Understood.
So it's basically, it's a software system that they use in the economic development field.
Understood.
Anything you want to add to that, Dr. Jackson?
I understand the concept. I get what you're saying. Okay. Excellent. Well, we appreciate your professional presentation, and we'll definitely give some consideration.
We appreciate all your work.
Thank you. Have a great day. Next up is Vivid Visions, Inc., and their executive director. We'll give some important, please state your name.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you this morning to speak, and thank you for supporting Vivid Visions in the past. You guys have really been a big help to our organization in helping the victims of domestic violence in our community. My name is Kathy White, and I'm the executive director for Vivid Visions. We're the certified domestic violence center for Swanee County, and we have the domestic violence shelter and outreach program. This past year, we served 56 women and 58 children in our shelter for a total of 5,318 shelter nights. They are able to stay with us up to 90 days. Their average length of stay probably increased this year. It was very difficult for them to get, it's been a challenge for getting jobs and employment, you know, and housing is a big problem in our area, unfortunately, not a lot of it. Through our outreach office, we served 118 women, nine men, which also had an impact on their children of 186. Domestic violence crime has increased in Swanee County over the prior year by 33%. Our expenses for this past year were about $1,000 more than the prior year of '14, but our income was down about $16,000. Vivid Visions would like to ask for $15,000 plus, if there's anything extra out there. We are in desperate need of some assistance in making sure that we're able to maintain our operation and support and help the victims of domestic violence in our community.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Any questions about the board?
Yeah, I got a question. Could you tell me, you indicated that domestic violence had increased 33%?
Mm-hmm.
Is that number based on what you're seeing in your shelter or actual...
Actual from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, their UCR report.
All right.
That is a total of the police department and sheriff's department and highway patrol as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next up is the Museum Association, and we'll listen to the chairman, Mr. Alonso.
Good morning.
Morning.
I didn't prepare a speech this morning. It became this kind of a surprise to me. I've been at the hospital for the last two days. Now, I missed a medium last night because of a meeting in the fed county with the sheriff. But I heard that there was some controversy concerning a letter that I wrote to you and the city council president. So I want to answer any question concerning that letter. Now, let me say this, the merger is not off the table. If you read the letter, it said, "I said that it couldn't be done without a just mediator." And I still stand by that. We need somebody that's run fast to come in and be in that medium with us. So, but that's still a museum, any day-to-day operations. Ms. Fay Herring handles all of that, I don't. So I knew at best, I can say this, the museum does a great job over there. There are a lot of things in there that people see that, the history of Swanee County. But, I want to say this, as a protest, there's no African-American history in there. I don't know where it went. It used to be in there, but it disappeared. But it needs to be brought back wherever it went. And any other questions you have for me, I want to answer concerning that merger.
Understood. Any questions of Phil, or...
Mr. Phil, last night, there were some questions with regard to alleged communications that you were asserted that were, had between different board members. From a legal standpoint, to clarify that, I want to make sure that you're talking about that, are you saying there was some type of sunshine violation that occurred between members?
No, that's not what I said.
Okay.
In the letter, I said there was communications with the, with the Historical Commission, about maybe one or two that we weren't made privy to. Not two at one time, but people were talking to commissioners along one.
Okay.
And we weren't.
That's fine. I just want to clarify that it's not a sunshine violation that you're...
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I don't have any, so whenever we get to the deliberative portion of that, there may be some deliberation, or you could ask her some questions at that time.
Okay, that adds to the funding. I think we requested last year $6,000, and this year we request the same.
Understood. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Yeah, thanks.
We just spend a lot of time on the conservation, preservation of artifacts.
For art. Identify yourself too, please.
Fay Herring, curator of Swanee County Historical Museum. We spend a lot of time on the conservation, preservation of historical artifacts. We have many people that come in there, we have many people that use the artifact. We had people there this past weekend, so way in the wee hours, and we had people there that I worked with Monday on my day off even. We spend a lot of volunteer time there, and we do a lot of extra things just to keep that place going. We do it with minimum funding because a lot of that comes from our heart and not from a paycheck. We appreciate your support. Swanee County is a beautiful place to be, so we want to keep it good for our future generations to come and appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your time. All right, next...
Gentlemen, thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Carter. 10:00 AM, I'll see what we're supposed to be, we'll round a little bit ahead, but is the representative from Meridian Behavioral Healthcare here? Thank you. We'll run a little bit. So we'll, we'll take a break, yeah, we can take a break. It's 9:33, we'll come back at 9:45. At 9:45, we'll get this. Is the representative from Meridian Behavioral Healthcare here with us? Seeing none, we'll just move on. Swanee Valley Transit Authority, and we're going to listen to Ms. Teresa Fortner, as she gives us a little report, some highlights, and can answer some questions to the board. We welcome Ms. Fortner. Welcome, Ms. Porter.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. First, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to stand here today. We appreciate the support that this board has shown us for many years, and we look forward to working with you in the future. I understand that we passed the interlocal agreement last night at the best time committee, and we appreciate that greatly. We've been working on that for some time. Your attorney, Mr. Pavat, has been working with us and the Columbia County attorney to streamline it and make it a little easier, maybe more easier to understand. So, we do appreciate that very much. And again, we appreciate all the support you've shown us. So, if you have any questions you would like to ask me, I'll do my best to answer those.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes?
No, no, thank you.
I'd just like to say, I appreciate the opportunity to work with you. I think that we've come a long way.
I agree.
It started four years ago, and under the direction of Mr. Sessions, your support of him, as well as the rest of your staff, we really appreciate what you do for the community and how you just transitioned that agency into something that we can really be proud of. So, congratulations, Mr. Sessions, and yourself, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a great day.
Okay, and thank you again.
All right, once again, last call for Meridian. If they can come in through the deliberative process, we'll listen to them. But I guess that rounds us out for today, listening to the outside agency. And this time, typically what we do as a board, for the benefit of those who do, is we start deciding what gets included in the budget and what is out of the budget. And it's a very interesting time. Thank you for being here with us through this process. Board, I guess we can just go, since we just freshly listened to the outside agencies, within your book, you have a page that outlines most of the agencies which you've heard testimony from here today. What are your thoughts on these as we make their way through? If anybody wants to jump in, I'll kind of run through what I'm thinking. And just one other point before we get started. Last budget season, prior to this, we had decided to cap outside agency funding requests at, I believe, $100,000. We were just a little bit excessive of that, we were $1,500. So, that just leaves a little bit of cutting to do. If we decide to stay at that cap, we can fund less. But I think that in my, in my way of doing things, I said that we would honor some of these requests. My opinion personally, the historical commission would be $3,000, what their request was. The Swan County Animal Services, I would like to honor that request. Genealogical Society, $1,500, I would like to honor that request. And then Vivid Visions, $15,000, which would be a $5,000 increase, I'd like to honor that request. All the others are up for discussion in my process. Discussion.
Chairman, now we also give, we should just talk about it, $24,000, we give that to Swan Valley 14.
The Swan Valley Transit, I think, now, Mr. Sessions, you can kind of give us an update on that. But I believe, is the funding that we're going to do 90 cents per capita, would that, would this be in addition to that?
No, this, we already had in the budget, plus this right here, actually, it would have been a little bit less money than the county actually gave us last year.
The 15 and the 24. Because I was thinking that with what we did last night, we could just wipe this line out.
Right.
Is that correct?
That will come up to the right of now anyway.
Okay. So, we can wipe that, we can take this $24,000 from here and take it out?
As long as.
We do the 90 cents.
As long as you do 90 cents, we should come up to.
We agreed to that.
Same thing, right.
Okay. All right, so let's go ahead and X that out. So, that frees up.
Let's just take it off the list altogether then.
Right, correct.
He only needs 15, not 70, is that what it comes out to?
No.
No, the 90 cents per capita.
We did the 90 cents, yeah, 90 cents per capita last night.
We have that number.
It'll be about 39.5 total, but it'll be a little bit less than you gave us last year.
I don't know what the state number is on residents, but I think their number was like 43.
What I'm saying, we can exclude this from outside agency requests in the future.
Because we just by agreement, we've got an interlocal agreement.
Right, it's off of this completely.
So, are you adjusting your outside agency list then?
If that, if that changes that number, but it wasn't, let's see.
I don't want to increase, I don't want to increase funding outside agencies though.
Right, the $104,500 is a total of that list. If you take the 24.5 off of that, then that would, that would come off of that and bring us below the $100 threshold. And then we can add to or take away.
My question though was actually more of, are you going to reduce now this $100,000, since you're no longer going to have the budget in the Swan Valley?
Let's just the 100.
Right, correct, but let's run through the others and see what we end up with, and then we can make some calculations about that. Unless you just want 7,000, 8,000 on that. It's up to the board.
Well, what I want to get to, and it's indicated here, is the economic development budget in the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay.
If you want to go and clean up the rest of the list up top, I'm prepared to do that.
Yeah, let's just clean that up, and then we'll move to discussion on the other.
I was in agreement with everything you had. What about the art, was we going to go to 29.5 on them from 28? I'm okay with doing that.
I'm okay with that because of the funding as they appear. I'm going to check more on that. 29,000.
I'm okay with the animal, historical, genealogical. The only one I'm most certain about is, now, the museum, if I remember right, that was, we do that with the city, is that right? That's still.
The local region.
Right, and that's, I'm bound to the museum. For me, that leaves United Way, Swan Valley 4Cs, and Vivid Visions.
Well, and I'll just add some discussion, if we're wanting, if we're asking for these outside agencies, these boards that serve under us, clean up their acts and stuff like that. I would like for the Museum Association to continue to try and do that.
Oh, yeah, I'm not letting that go, I think that we can continue that effort.
There's a considerable amount of data that needs to be considered before that's funded, and I know the city is doing the same thing.
I'm okay with not funding United Way or Swan Valley 4Cs, we didn't last year.
The only thing I would say about United Way is they are a professional agency who audits and does things to make sure that the taxpayer money that they do receive is given to agencies, other agencies who don't. Where the proper audits are done to make sure that that money is going to where it should be needed. And if you're, and they do contribute to Swan Valley 4Cs. So, if you wanted, you could contribute to United Way in that so that they can have the responsibility to, you know, push that money into the community as appropriate to these outside agencies.
If they're going to do that, I'd really just give it to. I'd say, so I'd rather do Swan Valley 4Cs. They can use that number to help them with their grant applications, United Way is.
I'm not saying to fund Swan Valley 4Cs, because last year, you know, we said that that was, that was competing with private sector, daycare.
Every one of these do.
So, you know, if we want to fund Swan Valley 4Cs, we can put some strings attached to what we did with United Way, so that that money is funded that way. To do that. And I'm okay with Vivid Visions.
I'm okay with Vivid Visions, I don't want to beat up people out on the street.
So, which ones do we have, three of them? I'm okay with Vivid Visions, art, animal services, museums, historic.
Only one I've got left out is United Way and 4Cs.
That's the two that I've got.
I said the two I've got.
So, we just need to make a determination if we want to proceed with funding United Way in an effort to, because you did have some desire to fund Swan Valley 4Cs, but United Way would make sure Swan Valley 4Cs.
I'm okay with bringing both of those off myself.
Okay, so that's something, any discussion?
Well, that's why I asked you the question. They have a staff emergency food and shelter board in those three counties. She said they did have one in Swan County. And my concern was that, you know, the support in other three counties, they're putting that money out there, it won't have a difference in that. But if you're going to give, Eric, Commissioner Wayne, right, he's all right with both of the laws. Now, I know there's a Swan Valley 4C here, and it does have those kids. We gave them half of that, we didn't give them anything last year, but we gave them $5,000 that we, to get that.
Okay, well, and again, once again, United Way does already contribute to Swan Valley 4Cs. So, if you wanted to say, give it to United Way, Swan Valley, with the string attached, that that money would be put on directly to 4Cs.
Well, you can designate, the money we give.
No sense, if you have the animal, just the whole Vivid Visions.
Right, right.
Where you want to go. They have their, they monitor the funding, they monitor, make sure the money's being properly. You don't, you don't do that, you just give the money and hope that if we're not going to check back with United Way and see if they checked up on it.
Oh, that's another layer to your options.
They did, they do.
Well, each of these are supposed to sign, you know, an agreement that the court's office has before they make the disbursement here, and then at the end of the year, they're supposed to turn in their budget and show how the money is worth then. Is there anybody on the list that did not comply with that for last year? Eric, we have the, we turn in the audit to Eric, once they submit their budget request, they submit an audit or a financial, and the smaller ones are the little financials, they don't have big audits, they're very small, and they go to Eric's file. Then, when October 1st hits, he tells us, "I'm good, we're okay to pay." Some we pay a month, like some of it's little, some we do quarterly. So, Eric's on top of that.
If some submitted financial slip requests.
But then a copy should go to Eric too with that.
So, let's come to a consensus here, United Way of Swan Valley. I think, so you give me your vote on United Way. It's not really a vote.
You're in brave.
My opinion is that probably a little bit less because they're not helping with the food shelter that we have in our county.
United Way is not?
Right, she said that she's not being through our food shelter here, so maybe we need to do something and give a little bit of money. I'd say we could drop them off by $1,500 at least.
Okay, what's your opinion?
I'm going to say this is going to fund Swan Valley 4Cs, not fund United Way, and that puts us below $100,000.
Zero.
Zero on both?
Yes.
So, with me, I'm saying yes, United Way, and no, to Swan Valley 4Cs. What do you say on Swan Valley 4Cs?
I think, oh, they didn't hear you. Yeah.
We can fund to some percent of 4Cs. I'd say five.
So, we have five, we have five there, and we're saying 3,500 on United Way. We kind of need, I guess. I mean, really, we should just consider one at a time, so. United Way is Swan Valley, you're saying 3,500, and you're saying 5,000, I'm saying 5,000.
I didn't say 5,000.
What did you say?
I said no.
So, you're nothing. I'm saying 5,000, you're saying 3,500.
United Way.
We're just talking on United Way. In clout. So, what about, let's see if we can get past the 4Cs. Wesley's nothing, what are you on 4Cs?
10,000.
10,000. And you're five. And I'm saying no.
So, wait until I laugh. Don't tell him, don't tell him he's the pivot man.
All right. Commissioner, just to bring you up to speed, I'll put you in possible kind of anything.
Don't tell him, you'll put him under pressure. Just tell him.
At what kind of level of funding, if any, for United Way of Swan Valley? What level of funding, if any, would you like to see for United Way of Swan Valley?
We can give them 10,000.
They requested 5,000, I think, so is that what you're saying?
Okay, yes, no, no, let's give them five, and it says that it is there, 10,000, I'll give them.
Okay.
No, I'm going to give Swan Valley 4Cs.
Okay, we're not.
5,000.
So, five, so I'm for five, he's for five, Larry's for 35.
35.
That's what he said. But I was for five, you're for five, he's 35. Commissioner Gamble is zero. Is that correct? And Commissioner Wayne, I was zero.
So, I got that.
If you divide it all, it's $2700.
What are you giving us, 20,000 or 10,000?
You take the two, zero.
Y'all, y'all, y'all got, y'all got, so that's Swan Valley.
The average is 27,000.
Well, I'm just saying, why don't you just give 5,000?
Look at Larry.
I mean, I'm not going to lose this sweep over.
Larry became this pivot.
I'm now the pivot person. I still think that we need to make sure that our, that our emergency food and shelter board get some of that money that they're not getting from United Way for our county.
So, we're making that clear for the, you make a phone call?
I can make them designated, but I just think going through another agency to designate.
Well, I mean, they're the facilitator of it.
I can, I can do that, if we all agree to that, I'll call them, tell them to designate to the.
So, 5,000 to United Way of Swan Valley. All right, now on to Swan Valley 4Cs. Commissioner Wayne, I said zero, Commissioner Gamble's at 10,000. Where are you at? I'm kind of at zero myself.
Swan Valley 4C? Well. Zero.
Zero, so that's three.
Almost three.
Three, okay. So, we're at zero with Swan Valley 4Cs. All right, give us an updated number with those top ones there.
Updated number for what?
It's updated, and I'm also listening, so.
Total for the eight agencies.
Just for the top, there's a number of $104,500, and we just went through, we decided.
79, 428.
79, 428.
At that.
79, 428.
Swan County.
Did you take the transit?
No.
That includes the transit.
No, we're taking 5,000. Then it makes it 80,000, then you took.
70,000.
70,000, unfortunately, because there's no other numbers on there.
It's 70,000, what it is.
Okay, 3,000.
I got 50,000.
Is that what we got? 55,000. Thank you. All right, okay, right, stop, the trespass, okay, Commissioner Gamble, give us a number, you understand? So, I can write that number down? 70,000. All right, so that's what we got, 70,000.
70,000.
Great job.
We were trying to get it from them. So, we're at 70,000 there. Now, moving on, transit authority is out, health department is more than likely in, because we have an agreement with them, it shouldn't even be on the list.
I was going to say, listen, Nina, let's take transit off that list completely, so next year it don't even show up on the health department.
Right, health department should be gone.
And the health department too.
Yeah, health department, they're gone.
Health department's not in the budget.
Yeah.
Meridian, we agree, we came to an agreement with the, with the attention of the attorney. So, we scratch that off, Meridian should be off the list, that was with the Chamber of Commerce.
Still need a number though.
55, we wouldn't negotiate. Fifty-five, we wouldn't negotiate with them, right?
That's in the budget, in the budget.
This is the budget for last year at fifty-five. They insist that we owe a couple hundred grand. They ask for seventy-five to be a contribution. And I suggested originally sixty-five, but I think at fifty-five, you won't hear them squeak this year, but next year you'll hear them squawk a little bit.
You can count their income too, that's fifty-five.
So we gotta leave, we gotta leave it on the list.
That's fine.
We don't have it on the list.
It's on our outside agency request here.
Well, not seventeen thousand.
Yeah.
It's not part of the eighty.
No, it's not, it's not included in that total, but we do need, we need to have it, we'll have to negotiate that apparently coming up next year.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I am too, but we're not being kind to.
Perfect.
So you're at seventy.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 okay, so.
So we have in, in the economic development budget, which I don't know if we should consider this now or within his request for departments.
I think we need to look at that whole picture, because we've got a designated mileage rate, which was, I forget, hundred and twenty-six thousand, or sorry, I'm on it. Okay, now we need to go back and look at where all that money's going.
Okay.
We can go ahead and bring in the forty-six something, whatever it is that we get from the city. Forty-six five or something like that, forty, forty-seven. Here we go, forty-seven thousand twenty-eight dollars. They still owe us fifty cents, by the way. According to the green bar sheet.
Now, so do we want to amend this outside agency list to, so we would leave Meridian on the list, because next year maybe, so if you.
They stay on there, but it doesn't change that total, still seventy.
Still seventy, so the question comes more now is if you want to lower your, this is annual offering to outside agencies to seventy thousand. Or would you like to?
I'd say, look, we, I mean, listen, that's an arbitrary number every time we come in here, but.
But, but we, we held.
Let's set a benchmark at seventy, and we'll see what we do next year.
Okay, all right, so you gotta hear that, and then next year we can remind them of that.
Wait, I don't make up the consensus here, Jason, don't you? I didn't hear anybody else say anything.
Well, we, we set it at a hundred, we removed basically twenty-five thousand from Swan Valley Transit, so I'll say seven, seventy-five.
Seventy-five, everybody okay with that?
I'm okay with that. On the, total on the outside.
Total on the outside agencies, which would be governmental funding, or these outside agencies, I've set it at.
We're fixing to knock your stuff in the head. Give us a few minutes.
So seventy-five is okay with this in?
No, that leaves us with five thousand, so we'll give it as far as we're going.
We haven't done anything with the five, it's just, it's just sitting there, it's still seventy.
That was the five I asked for.
I see how you. All right, so.
Hey, listen, I'm just tickled, and, and the eight years I've been here, we went from like two hundred, two hundred twenty thousand, we're down to seventy.
We, we did.
Well, it was. Well, but there included some of those individuals that are statutory, so it wasn't quite.
We were able to wind that down, get some clarity on it. So I would say on the four C's, there were three noes.
That's what you're here for.
All right, so, let's see, moving on to department requests.
Wait, 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 what?
What are we waiting on?
Well, I was uncertain. Do you wanna look at the economic development budget now, or you wanna just do the outsides, or, or our scheme, or departmentals first?
Well, I think it helps us if we, if we go through the list and we come to it, you know, we stay on kind of schedule.
You the captain, would you, let's go.
That's what I want. So let's look at the department requests.
What about the wish list?
Wish list, have, what is that? Options. Two. So you've got your list, and you've got backup for that. There was also, remember, the department heads presented their, did their presentation, but I realize that there was some software added to the building. Department has some notes for that.
There's also the server.
Oh, yeah, the server. That fell under IT, I think, if I can see. Did it not?
You talking about the data?
No, we're talking about, we have a server here that's capacity in the county, and we have the backup. So if that server goes down, there will be nothing available, and everybody will be down. So if we, if we have a side-by-side situation where we have another server, then we can bring that up on.
Sixty, six, maybe sixty-five, or sixty-something.
We better go ahead and include that.
IT department, sixty-five.
Government funds the IT department, that money will keep it in your budget, and that will get paid out of that.
I think we need to pay it out of the department. Yeah. Yes, 'cause I don't want it to be a reflection on that department.
There's nobody here from IT to answer the question, or maybe somebody here knows, is, do we have a cloud situation with our server, where there's some offsite storage?
It's raining every day.
Yes, it rains every day, thank you.
That was Hillary.
Oh, yes, Barry. It's, as far as I go, is where we, we have that, but we don't, we don't have a redundant.
Correct.
And we can quickly access, if something were to go down, we have that app on the floor, it takes us days to get that. It's called man hours, it just can access, and things like that. So that, that's why we're, even though we have the backups, it's still necessary. While, while we were looking at doing, if the, everything would be backed up at night.
Right.
It's where the head, if, if we were to lose something, you can bring a backup, almost.
Good.
How much was that, Barry?
Sixty-five thousand.
Is that offsite, Barry?
I, it's right, we're putting in, we're putting them in different locations, so that we won't have our main. If something were to happen, we were to have a tornado or flood or something like that, it would be backed up local, that's the kind of location.
I'm okay with that. You want to put a check mark by that, you can. All right, let's start at the top, are we okay to move on? Everybody feeling with that? Okay, so we're going to general requests, from the general maintenance department, floor cleaning equipment, fifteen thousand dollars. I think we've kind of ventured into that last year a little bit. It looks like it was successful, so they're requesting some additional equipment. We have any partner with that?
Uh, yeah.
I'm okay with it. There's two.
Three.
Three. Okay, four. That's a, moving on, maintenance vehicle replacement, one to two trucks, that's the maintenance department as well. I think you heard Marcus talk about the vehicles that they had, not knowing if they get in them while they start up. I've seen them run around town in some fairly antiquated vehicles, he reported that they were twenty years old. So.
That's twenty-one, that's how it's done.
Yeah, that's true.
I'm okay with it.
So that, he said, he's got eighteen thousand dollars allocated for one to two trucks, he's requested they be four by four, which is probably a good idea.
I don't think they need four by fours here in town. We don't really have any off-road stuff that they do.
It's on the condition of the safe road that they're driving on.
Yeah, in the city lot.
Okay, all right. I don't have a qualified statement, but whatever y'all can find best.
That's it, there you go. So who, who is okay with this?
I'm good with it.
Everybody's okay with it. All right, large format eject printer, this is the request from IFAS Extension, sixteen hundred and forty-three dollars. This hardware.
They might consent, Mr. Rodriguez is out for some public speaking engagements and drum up some money.
Well, I'm always in support of any outside agency, and they're really not outside agencies. I would say root, raising general funds from public, I, I think they need that, I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it, yeah. And I'm okay with eliminating the next.
I'm okay with that as well.
Same thing with the veteran deal.
Okay, veteran services, computer software, track veteran data, I think that's reasonable. Then we got EMS, reach chassis of current ambulance. Is, if we stay on top of this, then, you know, we're not driving antiquated vehicles and putting ourselves, making ourselves liable.
I think we need to do this on a regular basis, I don't have a problem with that.
Correct, and I think we get three reach chassis on here. I say this, please, it's our person.
Is this in addition to what you approved last night?
Sir?
This is in addition to what?
Yes, sir.
Very glad you.
Yes, sir. We try to do a reach chassis once a year, we're working on these agreements, I should have those figures pretty soon on fire, and EMS apparatuses. But this would be for a reach chassis of a current vehicle that's got a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it. The chassis can be used for other departments if needed, when it comes back.
And I will remind the public and the board, we run up and down some, some, some roads that, you know, in, in the backwoods, and these are roads that are not maintained by, carrying a lot of them, and so it beats our system. Whereas in other metropolitan areas, even, they may not have to reach chassis as often as we do.
And you, and you look at, and you look at reach chassis at a hundred and fifty-five, and a new at two thirty-seven. So, you know, it is a, that's why we use regular ambulances for our savings in reach chassis.
Okay, so then we're looking at six life pack cardiac monitors, five-year lease. I think we need that, but give us some more.
If they needed to use one, we may not, hopefully they have one.
You'd hope that they have it.
Yeah, we hope that they would have one.
And we, we purchased, we did a grant three years ago for these same monitors, we cannot get another grant. This is for replacement of existing monitors that we are putting a lot of maintenance in. This is a lease for, you know, a life pack monitor, a new one costs almost forty grand. This is a lease over a five-year period, that's six for thirty-three a year versus a big purchase all at once, two hundred and fifty thousand.
What, what are, actually, my question then is, are we better off just to lease them anyway?
That's the way I would like to, that, that is the route I'm trying to go with lease, trade-in. Pretty much same thing we do with road grader dump trucks, that equipment that we use that we're reliable for. There's a big market for that turn-in, and that is the way we're trying to go with a lot of our equipment, stretchers, monitors, because you look at forty thousand dollars per a monitor, I can keep it two years, turn it in, get a good value, and that way we're always providing good equipment.
With good new equipment.
Yes, sir.
What's the difficult lifestyle?
With technology, you have to have, you get into, some of these cables on these monitors are a thousand dollars apiece. You know, that thing rolls up, unrolls constantly every day, you're constantly replacing. If those things don't read right, and you treat a patient incorrectly because of an issue with the cables, we become liable. Transmission between hospitals, our monitors, our cable transmission, transmitting directly to the ERs in Chan's UF in North Florida, so that saves patient time. So there's a lot of factors involved in that technology.
Living in a rural area, I'm, I'm for, for having some technology on that truck.
Yes, sir.
Yep, check. Okay, so that's okay, yes?
The, the next, the two thousand sixteen Chevrolet pickup, we can pull from fire contingency, so I would like to scratch that one. That is for fire investigations and inspections, things like that, replacement of an older vehicle, so if you would allow me, I can pull that completely from fire contingency, and we can scratch it off general fund.
Okay.
Yes, sir, general fund.
Pull it out of this contingency.
And it would go to fire contingency, it'll be added down here at the bottom.
Good. All right, then we got a striker stretcher, you had mentioned, and I put a, put a, it's funny you had mentioned lease, but I put lease question mark by the asterisk.
We, we're, we're looking at that. This stretcher, as you can see, is sixteen thousand dollars, they're very costly, they have new KKK requirements for sixty-four J as far as the state EMS office.
Could you tell me what KKK is?
It's, it's. I, I understand, that is the spec required on ambulance safety equipment by the state. They, this, most of our stretchers are capable of two seven hundred pounds. We are getting patients that sometimes exceed those, and when we have a life-threatening issue, we put that patient on that stretcher, they exceed the weight, or we start bending frames, things like that, we become liable.
Let's back up just a moment. How are you getting them on the stretcher?
For brute force, brute force, and for, you know, calling extra personnel, things like that. So we, this is a little bit larger stretcher, they call it a bariatric, weight up to a thousand pounds. It is a little bit wider, so it, it's, we're seeing a lot of these issues, and this is to, we have one in service in the department, we can shuffle it for the call that's needed. It, it's just, I think it's a better service for our citizens.
Got room in the ambulance?
Yes, sir, it's still fitting the ambulance. You know, you're, you're going from a, a standard-sized stretcher to a slightly wider stretcher, a little bit better design, and it's still, it's still safety, all safety requirements, things like that.
When you think of these stretchers, you see them, they're amazing.
No, no, no.
They, we, this is a standard. This is a standard lift cot, you can go to an auto lift that a lot of services are using to prevent back injury and knee injuries, you're talking thirty-five thousand dollars a cot.
Yeah, I like that one better.
So, you know, this is a manual cot, you have to have different wheels and lift shocks, because we are dealing with sand, we're dealing with mull homes with three steps coming out of them, so we have a little bit different.
We've, we've been upgrading all of our lists to thousand-pound lifts.
People that we.
Seven hundred and fifty pound, we know.
We, we have, we have upgraded to thousand-pound lifts.
And, and, you know, it's, it's a whole different world in a healthcare setting, you get bariatric patients, a whole different, equipment, and everything, everything's different. And it costs a tremendous amount, in fact.
We, majority of the time, when we purchase new ambulances, this stretcher is in the cost of a new ambulance. So we try to do that as, as a combination package. This is an additional plus a replacement for an older unit, so.
I, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Sometimes there are, there are not beds available in other hospitals, because they have, they have policies that they have to have particular equipment in place, and they can't afford all of the different equipment that's required at these larger hospitals. When you go transfer a patient, they may or may not accept those.
Should we wonder, should we wonder? No, I'm good.
We're, we're having to tax pay them, absorb some of this stuff. So we're good with that, sixteen thousand, six thirty-two for the striker stretcher, okay? Uh, you're, you're also, okay, so we're good, oh, look at there. You just changed it.
Just changed, just like that.
Magic, quick draw.
So we're listening to Greg Scott, he's gonna talk to us about you.
Currently at the airport, we do not have the vehicle, and staff's always having to use their vehicles to run around town, do different things, and we need to have that available. The other thing that we really need to, to talk about, and I haven't gotten enough information, and that's a courtesy car. We get a lot of people that fly in that need to go to the courthouse, go get something to eat, whatever, and insurance is a killer. I mean, I just can't find them right now. I talked to Lee Harbor, and, and he, he's, he's interested, trying to look at options. In other communities, they do have them.
Get some bicycles out there.
Awesome, good idea.
That's from them later.
Can't work out the, what, the rental car place down the road?
Well, they, they, we, we get that, but, you know, you got a pilot sitting there waiting on his client to go do his thing, and wanna go grab a bite to eat, or whatever, we can get food to them usually with deliveries, but. Mr. Rice, who you've met with the EAA, who lives down in Steam Hatchie, he said, if you had a courtesy car, I'd love to fly up and go to Howland's, or, you just get, 'cause I don't really have it there, but I could fly up here. And, and, I think, we don't really, at first, I thought, so we had one gentleman that was very adamant that we needed that, because it was other places.
Hey, Swan Valley Transit is right around the corner.
There you go.
I mean, I'll get the minivan.
It's all about, you know, about Tommy, you know?
I understand that, I don't know, he's got a minivan there, though.
Okay.
I will say that having been in various airports, school airports, that typically what happens is, and it's not, probably not gonna happen here, but you, you may check around, but what happens is, is that a, a car dealership will put a vehicle there, and their insurance covers it as a test drive. So they'll put it there, kind of as advertising for the dealership, that may be something you consider, I don't know that, that they're gonna be up for it, but you never know, so you can check with them. There's some good suggestions here, Swan Valley Transit. There's some good suggestions here, Sunny Valley Transit. Maybe continue to pursue, see what the insurance is, because I understand the problem.
Yeah, we're not ready to make, I'm not ready to make recommendations yet at all on that, but just on the radar. But I appreciate Commissioner Sessions.
So what about used pickup truck?
I'm okay.
7,000 is the used pickup. All right, good. So moving on here to the building department, there was a request made, we had some limited discussion about it during that time, new four-wheel-drive pickup for, for building department for Patrick, and then also some software. He requested an amount of 8,000 dollars. So currently shares a pickup truck, or no?
He needs a, he needs four-wheel drive.
He needs four-wheel drive. I have a problem with that. Does it have to be new? Of course, he's getting, he's going pretty regularly.
We're having a difficult time finding used ones. We're going to be to the road department in a minute, and you know, we've been trying to find one for extension, and when we get them, they're usually pretty good, but it's just difficult to find them used at these surplus sales with Sarasota.
If you look at the used car lots up here, they'll put, I mean, the amount of money they're getting from these used pickups, it's great. And of course, this is going to lead into another discussion, you know, we get, every year, throughout the year, we're buying new vehicles and everything like that, and we need to have some discussion at some point, or you guys will need to have some discussion at some point, about fleet lease program, because we trade out these vehicles on a regular basis, because, you know, you're just getting up there to the level where you've got so many that they need to be working and running and all that stuff.
What we're doing, is that good, just energetic, what we do is, we're very discreet. We're taking the trucks that drive the most, like in this case, the building department. He needs a new vehicle. But a lot of these other trucks that you'll see that are 8, 9,000, 7,000, we're buying the used trucks and putting them in the road department places where, for instance, your greater operators drive out, they take a fuel tank and they pick up trucks, and they park, but they're not driving the truck all day. So that's still, in my mind, a better approach for those guys. But the ones that, I don't disagree, you know, we get enough of them that we need to, because these people are driving all the time, that might be an approach, but for now, I want to continue buying these surplus trucks, because they work real well in some cases.
So the building department, are we okay with a new truck, or?
That needs to be a new.
That needs to be a new one, because he's getting where he's staying pretty busy.
So I'm in favor, it sounds like Christian Wayne, right, there's your session, Mr. Fleming. What about the software update? He requested 8,000 dollars for a software update.
I would recommend budgeting some of that, and then we'll, like Nina said, we'll work with finance on making sure that everything reconciles and matches up. He's going to have to have that.
But, so we are budgeting for it now?
We need to budget for that.
We need to, it's not a budget.
So we'll go ahead and add that in under the building department, of this list operating here. 30,000, it's true, 8,000 for the software. Just hilarious. Okay, moving on. 911 addressing funds would be the Dale Ottenflex desktop computer, I think, that's paid for by state funds, probably in contingency.
Yeah, both of those are.
Let's get it. We got some money there.
Understood. So I'm going to go say yes on both of those.
Yes.
Moving on to the road department, three used pickup trucks, 15,000 dollars each.
Those are the four-wheel-drive used ones.
Four-by-four is what we're requesting. I think the road department should all be basically.
Yeah, these really are going to be with people that have to get out during flood conditions, and they have to haul barricades and different things.
So what do you guys think about that three used?
These three trucks, they going to be four-wheel-drive too?
The first three are four-wheel-drive, the ones below that, the six at 9,000 are two-wheel-drives.
We need to have them, because we still have some greater operators that are being delivered to their machines. That's not very definitive.
So everybody's okay with the used pickup truck?
Yeah.
What about water truck? 50,000 dollars for a water truck. I guess we need some.
The water truck that we got on the road does not need to be on this.
Dangerous. I'll be honest with you, I'm thinking that 50,000 is very conservative. We're hoping that we can find a used one for 50,000 dollars. If we put 75,000 in there, I would feel better about our chances of getting a decent truck. We use the truck often, it's very dangerous, probably does not meet some standards that are required, but having said that, we absolutely have to have a water truck that's reliable.
How often do we use that truck?
Very often.
So why don't we throw it in with the lease with the other trucks?
I don't think you're going to lease a water truck, tanker truck. This is not a detachable tanker, but it's got a big tank on it with baffles. We don't only use it for putting moisture on roads, we also use it in many cases as a roller to roll lime rock. We're driving over and using the weight of that water in that tank.
Did it pop out with gallons, eh?
It's, I don't know how the gallons it is, but it's a good-sized truck.
If you see the one coming down the road now.
Get out of the way.
Get out of the way.
If you see the man dragging his foot on the pavement trying to slow it down, he isn't just kidding.
So, so you're wanting, you're saying 75,000 is probably the appropriate?
I would, I'm believing that we should try to budget at 75.
Is this for the water truck?
For the wooden trucks.
Yeah, the water truck.
Did y'all do the 45,000?
Yes.
Yes.
What happens sometimes when we're trying to work on these budgets, is we will go to the websites of these companies that deal in used equipment. We may find one for 50,000. Well, it's gone by the time we get through our budget process, and you know, the rest of them on that page are at 75, so.
So that's just an update.
Yeah, we try to be optimistic, but the reality is, we're probably not at 75.
I think we need to go in and get all the truck we got.
Commissioner Fleming, you okay?
It's a road header.
So we're all okay, 75,000 for the water truck budgeted? I still think it should be leased. Six used pickup trucks, more than likely, that price point would be two-wheel-drive with the expectation of hopefully being four-wheel-drive. And that's 54,000 dollars.
So what's the difference between those six and the three up top?
The three up top, we're budgeting what we think the four-wheel-drive is going to cause, because the others are two-wheel-drive. If we find four-wheel, and we get it at that price, then we will.
I have a question about the truck. These trucks are just, just thing-of-cab trucks that you're thinking about, are they crew cab type trucks?
We, what happens sometimes when we go to a sale, we can find some that are crew cab, and we buy those if we can. But if we cannot, we're just using them for, for instance, for greater operators that take the fuel tank out and use the standard cab.
Oh, those crew cabs are much better, because they can carry more. I driven, ridden that road one year. He's riding me in this.
Yeah, they go faster. We're competing with other, we're competing with other rural counties, government entities that are trying to buy from the same purchase surplus sale that we can. In fact, I want to mention something else that's related to that. But the crew cab's always going to go faster. Everyone's after a crew cab. And we, we're fortunate enough to get some of those. Commissioners, I want to ask you a question about our process for making these purchases. Once this board has approved the budget, and you have approved a budgeted item, why don't we consider going in and authorizing the partners to make those purchases that have been approved and budgeted? Because what we do is, in the alternative, we come back like we do today, and we get your permission again to do what you've already authorized to be done. It would save us a lot of time and help us to meet some of the deadlines for getting our numbers in at some of these locations, because sometimes we get short notice on them.
I'm willing to admit that I thought that's what we were doing.
Well, what you see us do, though, is we come back on the budget and get permission again to do something that you've already authorized in your budget. It's just a redundant exercise that, in my opinion, if it's necessary, as long as it fits within the budget.
You may miss out on a better vehicle if you have to run it too, so you may first come first.
Why, it took us nearly 10 months to get a garbage truck, or, I guess.
Anyway, that's just a thought. It would save us a lot of time, and you know, you've already budgeted and authorized the budget.
Took me a right little while.
And we'd be all in, and there has something.
It's good as long as you have good staff with good machinery. That's fine. Otherwise, I don't have that. All right.
What you asking, what you asking, what you getting now?
We can, we will.
We'll put it on, we'll put it on an agenda, but that's just a suggestion to help us, when we're, again, we're shopping for used equipment, and we're competing with everyone, and it would save us some time and improve our chances of getting what we're trying to obtain.
So that's all you're talking about, your, the used equipment? You're not talking about other projects that have to be, that we want?
No, 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 no. Right now, I'm just talking about used equipment trucks. The other thing, we'll continue to bring in for bid, even if they're budgeted items, we'll still come back because of the thresholds on those, and we'll, you know, bring them back on the agenda.
So we are okay with the six used pickup trucks? That was off, I understand. Mike, Commissioner, Mike, you okay with six used pickup trucks?
Yeah.
Moving on. Used service truck, 50,000 dollars. Correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we buy, didn't we budget for one of those already?
Yeah, we've been trying to get two of them, and we finally have a good one, a decent one. In fact, that's the one we were talking about yesterday.
Got a little crane on it. They actually need a crane.
Yeah, it's a 550 or 5500.
How are we feeling about that? Okay? All right, so total road department request increased 190,000, increased by 25,000, so that would be 224. If you're making notes. And recreation.
All right, first one we listed is paint sprayer, is for the ball fields. We paint for soccer, we paint a mile, mile of lines, says you can make one pass. So it's, one we've got is aged and easily replaced.
All right, how are you guys feeling about that? I'm okay with it.
I'm glad we're fine with this.
All right, moving on.
Golf. Golf park, we're hoping to get a used golf park to, just got rid of the Polaris, and just getting us around different places is something that, I mean, we're spattering the golf park, just want to get in a truck and run around the corner and come back.
I'm good with that.
Are you? So it'll be a used, what are they going for now? They're not much for them, they're getting new ones.
No. I can get a used electric one for about 3,3500.
Is there one else that's on the market?
I'll, I'll give you, for instance, this is a benefit for these little buggies. I first, I've got like five of these utility vehicles we run around the farm with, and they're 14,000 dollars. I'm going to buy brand new ones, I'm sorry. 14,000 dollars, 18 to 20. But I'm sitting there figuring out, so when one's crashing, and I'm looking to replace it, I've got one on the farm right now, this guy, in excess of 35,000 miles on it, and that's just ditches and mud. That's 35,000 miles I don't have on my pickup truck.
Right.
You know, not to mention that it saved me at that time I got this. It just saves me a lot of time, but these things are really worth having, like you just mentioned. Saves you getting in that truck, that saves time, and then wear and tear money on that truck.
35,000. So we're okay with that, 35,000?
No, I'm good with it. I was just, I didn't think that your electric golf park, or new ones, made 5 or 6.
Are we talking about electric, or are we talking about gas?
Yes, gas.
Full-size pickup truck, 75,000, that's used, it's used, it has to be used. All right, and we're going, are you going four-by-four without, or?
Just regular two-wheel-drive, we're fine with that one.
Four-by-two.
This will be fine, I mean, that's like a draw.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Flatbed dump truck, four-by, is that four-by-four?
No, just, I can't remember, honest with you. That one, that Sarasota County, they've got aluminum-bodied little dump trucks that, I say little, but you know, when we get ready to haul fertilized pallets of lime, different things, you'd have something we can slide it back in the truck, the pallet at a time. The, I lost my train of thought.
Do you have a forklift?
It's a dumping flatbed, that's what it is, it's.
I understand what you're talking about. I mean, so if you get pallets of material in, there's no way you can load pallets on the truck unless you use hand stack?
We get it loaded on when we get there, and then we, at lunchtime, whenever we get done with lunch or before lunch, we all gather up and use that.
I understand how that principle works, yes.
Or, and sometimes we got, we got some force on, you know, we borrow the tool boards loader to do that.
Okay. Can you, I mean, file a flatbed dump at 75,000 dollars?
But we hope to, I'm not sure. Or we still probably won't.
I bought that three-ton cab over horse one that I drive, and I bought it for 6,000 bucks. Man, that's awesome.
When, Jamie, when you get your chassis back, you're getting, you're getting a dual-wheel chassis back, right?
Yes, sir. 35 or 4500 chassis, dual-wheel.
Well, I was thinking it may not even cost 7500 to put a dump in one of those chassis.
Right, that'd work.
And that would, you know, we'd get the vehicle back, and then we don't have near as much involved in it, too.
What do the frames look like on those trucks? When you have to take the chassis off of, are they beat up pretty bad?
Part of the chassis would be fine. Especially for issues.
The only, the only issue you have with them coming back would be an airbag system on the rear versus a standard lease frame. That may be something that may want to be addressed, but that's, that's the only thing in front of you.
Got all that, but it's not a big problem.
The truck we're using now is one that LivePS wore out, and they gave us about 10 years ago, so.
This is an old truck, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah.
All right, so we're okay with that?
10,000 for portable building.
At the shop, we've got, as we, as we get opportunity to take care of more things, we.
Keep collecting more stuff.
Keep more stuff, and it's getting more, we need to have more secure areas. We have, what we're thinking about is like Keen Corvus, it's got roll doors, we need, especially like reel mowers, that kind of stuff, make sure they're out of the weather. But that's really what we're looking at doing is.
Take as much as given, as much as required.
So your special size, just all you can give at the end, right?
Yeah, we got around some numbers, and it's, you know, I got one.
I bought a 12 by 24 for like 5500 bucks, you know, 6,000 bucks. I don't have a roll door on it, though. That might be a little bit more, I don't know.
We're looking at probably a double, no, so we don't need that high, just to get it in and lock it down.
Yeah. Those are awesome, those.
I spoke to a contractor one time, and about one of the houses, you can't find material for what you get one of those for, so.
Just one question I'll ask, is it something that you need pretty quick, or is it something that we could look at, partner with the technical college on some of their students?
We could, we could partner.
I mean, and I'm not saying with that for a saving of money, but it'd be a good.
Good project for them.
I'll call over them and see if we can work something out.
Thank you.
May get more, more building for the. Maybe get more, more building for the.
But, I mean, it'd be a good.
Labor trade.
A good gesture, a good partnership.
And just so y'all know too, when we built the concession building at the sports place, that's how we started, was with the Masonic Crew, put the foundation in and that sort of thing. It took us a while, but that's, that was good.
Besides, if you needed it immediately, I mean, you're gonna be interested to where they're at and their.
You get it in the school term.
Or next year.
Yeah, true. So tend to, yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with the money, yeah.
I'll just make my suggestions.
The next thing is the reel mower. Back in '04, we got a used reel mower, that's three-gang, it's a hydraulic-driven, we cut the ball fields with those, we got a used one a couple, a year or two ago and we, the one we wanted to replace is the one we got in '04, I believe it was from Sarasota County, before we started being creative and, but kind of stole it back then, but.
I don't, I don't have a problem with it, but I want to ask you this, is what, I don't know, what's the difference between a rotary mower and a reel mower on the ball field?
You can cut it closer and it's the, with the turf grass, you don't get as much stat you, in its more rotations, it's a little bit quicker and it's wider.
It's top grass, you'll have Bermuda grass on.
Right, right.
Make it look like a dollar. Bermuda grass, you cut it, the reel mower actually cuts it like scissors and a spinning mower.
Beats it off.
It prays the ends of that grass. When you cut it with, with the regular mower, it gives you a great kind of a dent when you first cut it.
Could that be your back lap weapon on the reel?
Got a guy out of Jacksonville that comes in and sets up for a day and does ours and I can't remember the guy's name, but he's got an operation, he pulls on a trailer, comes in, school comes over and brings their stuff, a couple of the guys.
But we just bought him, you know, the back lap, you know, the coffee boat and stuff and that, and it's difficult to work, but is there?
Well, that's why we don't do that. We contract a guy who knows what they're doing and, so it's made along the way.
Okay, so we're okay with the reel mower replacement?
Yeah.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. All right, chief, is this truck, are we still pulling it off or are you still gonna break half the money from that or?
That truck, just take the 17-5 from the top, add it down here, this is not a board-funded item, this will come out of fire contingency. So this is just a notification and request to pull from fire contingency. So this total will be 75 times two.
Thirty-five. So just that line item will be 35,000 for the 2016 Chevy pickup equipment?
That's it, that's it. Vehicle and lighting and sirens and all the equipment needed for it.
Great, all right, thanks chief. So we're okay with that? That's correct? Good, all right. All right, do we get an amended number on that there, yes?
We added, we added to the list, isn't it?
I got 616086 for that, all that.
616 what?
086 for the equipment.
Okay.
Everything plus 65,800 and the 25,000 I wrote to parlor.
Well, I would say however, you know, 86 when they were adding two dollars, that's the.
That's what I would want. I think you see where the two dollars came in.
Two dollars.
So that's close, 616, we'll just say 616 with a finger.
Came from the 1643 and the 1190, I guess the 43 dollars for extension or the 98 dollars.
Okay.
You got 13 on a stretcher, you got 13 on a lifeline, so we, I'll find it for you.
That's okay, that's okay.
616. All right, before, before we.
616086 is what somebody shared, I can't remember who.
All right, before we jump into this next page, I'll have to take a little break here. Come back, uh, let's just say five after 11:04. I'll get back underway here. Before you start, we, due to the fact that we changed venues, the Meridian Behavioral Healthcare representative will be speaking with us today, he showed up at the other location, so we changed the venue, so that was our fault and apparently he didn't get the update. So he's gonna take a little time now, we've already approved the level of funding, but he's gonna talk to us now about Meridian and some of the services they offer. Maybe you can introduce yourself and give your name. The name that I have on here, I'm pretty confident that's not you. I don't think I'm mistaken.
This is an updated annual report that I'd like for you guys to have, what you had in the packet of what we would have sent to you already would have been eight months, sorry, 10 months, and this is gonna be an annualized.
Go ahead and state your name.
Richard Anderson, I am Chief Clinical Officer for Meridian Vanger Healthcare, also Senior Vice President.
Thanks.
I've been with the company now for 35 years, where we've been providing services to thousands of people in this county and other counties throughout our county area. Do we have enough to go around?
Yeah.
Where are we sharing?
Okay, we're good, we're okay.
All right, who can share this out here?
I'll take it.
And I'm sorry, I have a dumb foot that just came about, so.
Just wanted to give you a brief overview of the annual services that we provided, Meridian and in Swanee County, agency-wide, we provided, in a lot, I mean, in all services, we, you can see what we provided there and we provided about 1,522 services to Swanee County residents. If you notice the trend, the trend from 2013, 14, 2014, 2015, and then now 2015 to 2016, it's been steadily increasing in terms of the amount of services that we're providing in Swanee County. We have an office that's here in Swanee County, part of it is, what you provide is in-kind for us to be in that office and we are open every day of the week, the business week, and we provide therapy services there as well as we do some prevention or house staff at the prevention and case management. Swanee County accounts for 9% of Meridian's core services, receives 10% of Meridian's treatment services, 3.48 of the population of the county was served by at least one Meridian treatment program, which is above the mean of the 3.43. Meridian provided over 1,300 outreach and prevention services in the county. And a lot of those prevention and outreach services are provided in the schools or at county fairs and things that are happening within the community, so we have staff that are present there for those events. Who we serve, you can see that the majority of the people that we're serving are female, that's 54% to 45%, there's a 1% that's unknown, sorry. The age of the population predominantly is between 18 and 49. The majority of the persons that we're serving are Caucasian, 70.919. Less than 1% of the people fail to need some kind of subsidy for their care. So we're providing services, people need the services, they need it in the schools, we, we work with the schools to try and get all of those individuals who have mental health or substance abuse problems here and we try and work with them, with them there. And less than 1% fail to need some form of subsidy for that care just based on, just not having the resources to do so. 82% are at below 100% of the federal poverty guidelines. Medicaid helps pay for services and they have accounted for 933,000 dollars' worth of services, which is 58% service revenue from non-contract third parties. Commercial insurance provided an additional 45,574, which is only 3% of the services provided. Meridian provided 745,000 dollars in services to individuals without means in Swanee County. County funds supported 12% of that care, 5% of which was in-kind, so 7% of the actual cash funding that you gave us was helpful in providing those services to those individuals. The most frequent presenting problems that we see are depressive disorders, that's for adult, and for children is disorders of childhood behaviors or depressive disorders. We also have a large population of the adults who have substance abuse disorders. If you look at our outcomes, our outcomes are good, we have 89% of adults satisfied with care, 90% of the children satisfied with care, just combined, children under, of 89%. You can also see that the functioning of the children and other adults increased as we provided the services to them. Meridian accepts Medicaid, most insurances, Medicare, client fees, which is usually on a sliding fee scale, funding for those without a payer means, which means that the state of Florida picks up some of that, those funds are limited, county funds and then donations. And you can see through the pie chart here, the combination of those other providers. Despite these sources, in 2015, Meridian provided 1.4 million in uncompensated care. That means that we provided 1.4 million where we got no, had no payer for, we didn't get paid for those services, but those were people in our services who really needed the services, so we continued with care. State funding requires a local match of 2.4 million. County governments now make up only 58% of the total match required. The next sheet you'll see that the county funding per capital by each county, Swanee is at 2.75 per capital. Your funds are in-kind and in their cash. Currently, the county provides 55,000 dollars in funds and 67,124 in in-kind match, which totals 122,124 dollars. This is 2.75 per capital. If you were doing it at the full match, it would be at $4.97. We were coming to make a request that you increase the total of what you were giving Meridian by about $20,000 and that could have been either in-kind or cash match, so that we can get up to the 142,932, which is, gets you to about 3.20 cent per capital, which is still well below the funded level. Any questions?
Thank you very much for that presentation. You brought a lot of good data with you today and we appreciate the professionalism within the presentation. Any questions by the board, represented?
You said you have office in Swanee County, where is that?
We do, it's in the same building with the Health Department.
I have a question in regards to, I noticed on the how many served page that in Alachua County that there was a reduction, Dixieville a reduction, Gilchristville a reduction, Union there was a reduction. Have you, have you guys put any thought into why that occurred and have you attributed that to any of your particular outreach or the people served that got back to functioning and functioning well? I mean, have you, have you looked at these counties as examples of what you can do in other rural, rural counties that you serve?
What we actually did is we actually reallocated staff to the areas that we were serving the most people. Prior to last year, I believe, we didn't have more implementation of staff in all of the schools in Swanee County like we do now, so we had to move staff to be able to do that, which then created some boards in some of the other counties that meant that we weren't serving as many people, but we went where the need was.
Okay, so where you have more staff resource, you see a better rate of returns, a reduction in the amount of cases because you have the staff support there to offer preventative services before it gets to the level.
Correct, and we, it also, you know, in the long run, when you look at it, with the children's functioning at the schools and what they do in the schools, if they're able to get the counseling and are involved with a therapist, so they're talking to people and understanding of the issues that are going on in their life and in their families and home.
So within Swanee County, you said that you saw a greater need this year from, based upon the results of last fiscal year, so you, you moved more staff into Swanee County for this year or something?
That is correct, that is correct.
Because it does look like we had a rather dramatic increase for those served.
Yes.
Okay, any further questions? Thank you for your time very much.
And let me say thank you all for your support also, really appreciate it and thank you for letting me get up.
You're very welcome. Have a great day.
Thank you.
All you guys, we have some data to look at. Okay, moving back to other requests on the second page, where we're at is building improvements and other, and right now for, we have a maintenance request to contract, contract to paint the library interior. Maybe Ms. Durham can give us some feedback and also Ms. Lawrence give us a question.
The library interior has been in dire need of painting for several years now. It was an inherent problem with the construction of the building to the best of my understanding and how I see what has happened, there was no dehumidification installed in the building when it was originally constructed. Therefore, the sheet rock and all the other substrates absorb moisture and it caused coatings to turn loose and we are losing those coatings throughout the entire building. These numbers are evaluated on area square footage, not square footage of the structure. We're losing paint on the ceilings, so, I mean, and those numbers also reflect the possible need for after-hours and trying to work around the public coming in and out of the library, considering that is our heavy issue building in the county.
I noticed that the other day. Is there any, I understand we probably need to do something about covering it now, but is there any idea, any ideas pending or to be presented before the board to solve that problem?
Already taken care of, sorry to take. Yes, sir, when Diddy came through, we were having problems dehumidifying the building, y'all remember that we had water intrusion issues, we couldn't drop the humidity using the method of dehumidification that they had at present, as our restoration company did, we couldn't lower it below 75%. We need to be at 60 to 50. I went through and using a little bit of knowledge that I had, went in and put dehumidification in the air conditioning systems and now I'm maintaining 50 to 45% relative humidity in the building, whatever I want, I can set it there and I can get it.
Good, excellent. Any questions by the board?
I know you probably have to have certain grades of paint to buy.
Yes.
Do you have contracts, a state contract you buy off of or a certain kind of paint that you'd have to buy?
We have established a standard of color and paint schedule that we use throughout all the county buildings and I assume that we will carry that over into this building. I see no need in altering that because it makes repairs and touch-up in the future when we have an issue, a much minor deal than it does to go in and paint a whole room. We did that in Ms. Allen's building this past year, she had some scuff marks, my guys went in there with cigar rollers, hit the scuff marks and you can't even tell that we didn't paint the whole wall. So that's, that's the idea behind that.
Okay, I just, I had a question come to me about paint and types of paint and if you're going to state contract or, you buy from certain places.
We typically use a Sherwin-Williams grade paint, but we use a better grade paint. We do not use the builder grade paint because we find that its longevity's not there and its durability for cleanup.
What are the wishes of the board regarding this request? Gotta maintain.
Yeah, maintain.
That coming out general or that coming out library?
That was my only question, is there library contingency that can be tapped for that or is that?
How are we looking with contingency with your improved, you know, with your expectations with regard to your new project?
I would probably have to take a more closer look at whether. Um, I would probably have to take a, a more closer look at whether this could be included.
Um, yeah.
Because that means I have.
You guys understand, I understand that. We need to be careful how we use it. I mean, that's, that was my only question. I don't have a problem doing.
Okay. But what I was going to ask the board is that if you do approve it, uh, to allow me to include it also in the pass-through because that makes it eligible for state match.
I, I thought, yeah, I thought we were doing, everything we were doing as far as maintenance and moves, it was all pass-through.
Yeah. I did include the maintenance that, that Marcus requested. I know we're not at that place yet, but my pass-through figures included that as it was. It is twenty-seven years old.
It's there.
And, um, sure.
No, I don't have a problem. We need to get it done. I just, was just wondering if there was some library contingencies that we could use.
Well, we use it if we, if we do it through the, through the pass-through to general fund, then it will count towards, um,
Additional state funds.
Future, 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 if I use the library contingency, it won't, if it's a twenty-five cent on the dollar, that's where you get y'all coming back from that.
And I will take a look because even if we don't have a four seventy thousand, we may have some that could be included in the pot.
Uh, I'm fine with it coming out of general after thinking about the, uh, the pass-three-dollar one. That's, that'd be a pretty good increase in, uh, state.
You got a seventy thousand in general fund.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, moving on, uh, let's see, economic development.
I got, I had two more items. I didn't know if you wanted to skip that.
Let me see where we at here. Where are we at? General custodial. Okay, you wanna, you wanna go ahead?
I'm standing here.
Go ahead. With, uh, where we are is line, is department number nineteen twenty on our list would be, uh, second, third, fourth. Go ahead.
Well, it's kind of self-explanatory. We've got buildings that are coming online and we're gonna need people to clean them. Um, now, I did, uh, get a question from Mr. Gamble yesterday about the Dallin Park Library and wondering, you know, will Dallin Park help fund that? That's, that's y'all. Y'all do, y'all do those kind of things.
My question, I just, I didn't, I wasn't thinking about meeting it full-time.
That's what I'm thinking. Do we need a full-time custodian?
Well, I, I put in for a full-time. If you want me to go to a, a part-time and find out how that works. I mean, there again, it's somebody that I don't need to drive from Live Oak up to Dallin Park to go out there and clean. You know, I need to set somebody in that place. Now, however y'all choose to do that, I submit it to you, a full-time person. And, and, uh, I, I believe we could probably do it on a part-time basis, not a full-time basis, but, uh.
Well, what happens then is the trap.
Exactly.
You'd have to designate certain days of the week that they spend the whole day there or go there every day, and then that would be a big one.
Well, as before, we got the EMS fire right next door. You provide them the general force.
We do not. That is taken care of.
We do our own part.
Okay.
Yeah, they do their own, get their job.
I, I would think that volunteer services needed the most.
Well, what's the matter with all?
To do. I would, I would go ahead and fund it at, at least part-time, and I'll enter into some conversation with M C what their standards are.
Well, even if it meant, well, even this, even if it meant if, if you had, if you, even if we paid them, but they had one of their staffs, rather than us having to truck somebody out there.
That's kind of a little loud.
Because it's, it is, it's a part-time deal. See, my gosh, you don't need somebody there five days a week.
Well, they do need to be there five days a week. I can't say that they will take eight hours a day, five.
I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, they need to be there every day, but not all day. Yes, they, because you got bathrooms and things that you can do every day. I got no problem with that.
And, and by the knowledge of how that, uh, area works, that building will be well-used.
Yeah, no, no, I, 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 yeah, I meant to say that they don't need to be there all day.
Mm-hmm. Exactly. And, and I prefer them be evening people more than I have daytime.
Sure. Yeah. Great. I don't know if they make contractor have staff out there.
I'll, I'll, I'll speak to them about it, but as far as budget and purposes of.
Probably the napper.
And if you say if you think part-time would do it, I think it would.
I, I believe part-time would do it.
I'd say just full-time.
Present it at a two-time rate because it was easy to calculate.
One full-time.
One full-time for both facilities is what I was thinking.
Well, then you're, you're dealing with the travel, but my issue is downtown, I'm running a little short anyway, so I was gonna utilize the state's attorney overrun on labor hours to compensate in the areas where I'm running short now.
Here locally.
In, in that, in that demographic, if we're not, or in that general area.
Just so everyone knows, the, the one for the state's attorney's office is because their, their current lease includes their, um.
Exactly. And, and also what we're gonna run into with that, I've already been, uh, in touch with Monica at the state's attorney's office. We will have to have extra background checks done on the people who go into that facility also.
Yes, you'll be looking at what's happening.
Exactly.
Well, why don't you just?
Just.
State, two, two state attorneys. I'll let them hire a person.
They don't need a person full-time?
Yeah, they, I can do their building with part-time, but I'm running short on my other building downtown, so. I'm just trying to utilize as best I can.
I mean, these, these are the hidden costs that are not counted in when we do these additional.
Right, and if you'll, you know, I don't know if you noticed on my budget, I did not do an increase on custodials on flies, even though we have new buildings coming online that are gonna take progress. But I wanted to give it time to see where we are, so I'm not giving you a fictitious number. I wanna give you good, solid numbers.
I'm going to carry on.
These are, those are good projects.
I think they're waiting to figure out what the answer is.
Oh.
We need, we gotta have. It's either that or we gotta, either that or we go back to, I brought it up some years, years ago, is, is look at contract and all of it out. That's the only, but either way, you're still paying out.
You, you lose really hard on contractors and out.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just saying it's either way, you're still paying out, so.
So you're funding one and a half physicians. Is that what you said?
No, we need to go ahead and fund both of them. We're going, they can work out something. He's gonna talk to Greg.
He's gonna check.
We're gonna see what we can work out. Work out something. I never mind.
And I'll pause the request and I'll hire for that person, and I'll just come back with the board after we and Ricky, I guess, have discussion. Would that help?
I think for budgeting, probably we can go ahead and include.
That, well, that's what's my, my thought.
Point now, new year.
Okay.
Just let you know what's. Okay, thank you. Okay. So have we come up with? All right. So we, we got, we got all that squared away?
Much to my chagrin, you hope.
Just checking. Fire. Nine additional firefighter paramedic physicians in gear, twenty-seven percent tow cost.
I think that's kind of our business to see.
Well, you have others on top that you skipped.
Let's go back to where we let off.
Yeah, I can tell you the, sorry about that. I like to run in order.
Well, Mark has decided.
Sorry, maybe. Okay, so stop. We're going back up to chamber marketing line, department number thirty-seven forty. Then on our, on our list here, uh, we're asking for chamber marketing assistance that would be routed through economic development, and that amount is thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, pretty self-explanatory, I guess. I think Dr. Jackson addressed it in his comments yesterday. Uh, he wanted services rendered to his department from, through the chamber. So, uh, any discussion that you guys wanna have is, is good at this point. Ask questions.
I figured between the city's contribution, and hopefully it continues, and the millage that we're collecting, we're at a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. It goes to the economic development department.
Commissioner, the, the number that we actually.
Oh, you got a better one?
Yeah, that we actually bill the city so that they can put it in their budget is fifty-seven thousand, nine sixteen.
How come we, we're way off that mark on our revenue sheet here?
Well, because.
We budgeted last year's amount. After that, you negotiated a better contract.
No.
Oh. That orange tie is working for you.
Actually, last year, they did not, we did not bill them for the approach.
Certain couple of months.
Yes.
Okay, that's a pro-rated value.
Well, this, this is the real fifty percent.
Okay, so we're gonna add another ten thousand to that. So now we're at a hundred and eighty-three thousand. Yes. All right, I, I just wanna make sure I was clear on all that. And that's, I guess, I'm, I'm trying to tie some of this together. That's, I guess, fellows, is where I'm going. Uh, Mr. Jackson already had requested yesterday that we, we do an extra person, or he needed some staff.
That's in the next one.
I know, but I'm, I'm just, let me think out loud for a minute.
Well, should we come up with the same time?
Yeah, thirty-seven forty, same, same thing.
Okay, all right. Uh, uh, I don't remember what it called, not a mid-trade assistant, but whatever it's called. Intern, thank you. Uh, that was gonna be, we can, I guess we need to decide if we're gonna leave the funding level the same, where we're gonna take the monies from. Right now, I don't want to hire another person. I think that we can utilize, uh, we've got, I think Van Esther could help out. She's down there at, uh, the building department, uh, doing a great job for them, but she's got some time on her hands. I mean, if we're talking about somebody that can help prepare documents or answer phones while Mr. Jackson is out, I, I think she, she's great on the phone. She could, she could handle that. Uh, Jennifer could fill in. She's not in there. I'm volunteering both of these ways. We got, Jennifer could even, I mean, she's got time, you know, during the day that she can work, you know, she can help out with some of this stuff. I'm just saying, we've got some staff that we could utilize to help facilitate Mr. Jackson's job. So that, that, we don't, in other words, we won't have to go expend any more monies for that. So, or I don't think we do. So that leaves if, if how we want to coordinate some dollars, and I don't understand what the chamber marketing assistance is. We had a ten thousand dollar request on the other sheet, and then we got this request here.
Ten thousand dollars.
We did. We took it out. So that's, it came to this number here. So I don't know what all that entails. I'm sure these gentlemen can help us, or help me understand that. That's all my thinking out loud for the moment. We didn't get anywhere with that.
If I can comment, uh, you know, last year, that was the, uh, recommendation, uh, with, uh, getting assistance from the other.
We talked about that?
Yeah, that, that, that did not materialize.
Didn't materialize.
And it's not the phone work that I need. I mean, pretty much I answer my own phone. Uh, it is, uh, a lot of the data accumulation and actually, uh, the more and more we get out on the, the web is basically being able to respond, you know, in a timely.
Well, I agree. I, but I, those two individuals, I know that they're sitting in an office all day long, and they, I think that they can assist with that.
Well, I can tell you, nine-one, uh, Jennifer will tell you that nine-one-one dollars, uh, can't be utilized.
I already know about that, but we, we can, we can change that one. We can fix that. That's fixed. We're just a matter of she, I think, actually, I think she's underutilized. Because we let those dollars restrict us, we could change that funding balance a little bit.
Well, I, I, I just, and that's fine. I just don't want it to just be a discussion here, and then basically, again, this year I have no assistance.
I understand that. I'm ready to solve.
Okay. That's, 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 that's what I need. Action.
Okay. Action, Jackson. Not a problem.
Dr. Jackson, um, in, in the course of discussions about this additional physician, uh, being an intern from the college, I had asked you to request some additional unpaid assistance from the college as well. What is, what is the result?
Uh, my discussions with them was favorable because, uh, they, they're looking for internships, be it paid or volunteer, and basically I had a discussion with them about also providing additional interns, uh, from a volunteer standpoint, where they could shuffle, uh, in and, and basically assist with some of those services. Uh, remember that the volunteers, you know, that, that there's not a consistency. Uh, but if you have a paid internship, uh, pretty much they're locked in, and they could, uh, the volunteers could supplement. So actually, I could have more than just a part-time, uh, uh, more than just a part, a part-time person. It could end up being, uh, almost a full-time, splitting the part-time pay, utilizing the volunteers.
And the, the incentive.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I got that.
The incentive behind that is the, uh.
I have a pretty discussion on these items.
The incentive behind those volunteers is they get credit, college credit, for the time spent in the officer. So it's not just like a volunteer, like, we need your help, do it for free. They're gonna get some sort of, uh, credit of, I can't, I wanna say clinical, but.
Well, they get credit. The, the other thing what they bring to the table is, uh, they, they bring up-to-date technology skill sets, um, creativity, uh, to, to this process. And so mainly, as I said, please, it is not answering the phone. I answer my own phone. It is actually, you know, the, the data mining that's there, but it takes a lot of times to, to actually pull that data and actually respond to, to the requests, as well as, uh, doing the, the trend analysis, uh, that now we're, you know, as you remember, I indicated that we really want to be the, uh, the information hub, the data hub, and, I mean, folks are calling. I mean, it's private businesses, that's existing businesses that's here, that's actually looking at their salaries on what they should be paying their folks, and what is the market, what is the region, uh, basically saying. So we, those are, those are questions and things that, you know, if you can get into the system and, and get that information, would be, uh, great assistance.
So the, the one physician, uh, the one that's paid, that intern, the expectation would be that they would be here for a year or two?
But no, one year.
One year. Okay, and then they would cycle out.
They would cycle, they would cycle out.
What is the volunteers within slide?
Well, if they would, we would have a cycling out, um, and actually, it's, remember, it's an internship, so, uh, either they're in school or they just completed school. It gives them experience, gives me some, some.
Relief.
Reliefs, some assist technology, and with individuals that basically have technology skills.
So I, this is just my comments on Dr. Jackson. If you're satisfied with the work that he's done here locally with economic development, he has requested this multiple years, and he has done a good job, I think. And I think at this time, because of the inclusion of the college, the local college here, uh, I think that it's a good partnership to bring somebody on, to utilize the youth in that way, and see what kind of, what, what can grow out of it, because that person, they decided to come to love this area, we may utilize it in other areas. So I think that it's a, it's, it's needed.
Are we talking about a forty-hour work week?
Yeah. Mr. Baker.
I, I don't, I don't see where we've, I, I'm sorry. I, I, if you, if you, if you add a mine, I don't see where it's, and, and get demographics and these kinds of things. Once that information is harvested, it's just a matter of, and I don't know your job, so I'm thinking out loud again. If, if that information is already harvested, that's sitting there, it's just a matter of retrieving it out, say, okay, in your particular application, this is the information you're asking for, and it's done.
Well, this is a twenty-eight hour a week job. It's not forty hours. I mean, it's twenty-eight hours.
Well, we just, we're just looking at hiring two custodians and, and one of them not wanting to. We don't know how to work the logistics out for that even. So I mean, all I'm getting is, we're, we're talking about adding more and more staff. We hadn't even got to the nine firefighters yet and, and all the gear that they need. So I mean, there's a lot of things that this thing is fixing to start snowballing here.
And, and if you all can help me, what is the, with, with the part-time individual student? And if you all can help me, what is the, with the part-time individual student, what, basically, we're not obligated to any of the benefits, is that correct?
Less than 30 hours. Less, yeah, less than 30 hours. You're not, I understand, you're not involved in the benefits, I respect that.
Yeah, just payroll tax. So, basically, you know, I clearly understand the impact on the budget, and basically, I've gone out creatively to identify a way to make that happen that has less impact on the budget. You know, I can't speak...
No, I understand what you've done there. I'm grateful. I'm just not, I'm not... I don't wish to add this particular staff. That's all. I'll leave it at that. I think we've got some staff we can utilize, but I'm just...
I understand. Here's where we are with all of these additional staff. We are growing as a community. We're going through, what we're talking about here are growing pains. As a board, we've decided that we want to offer additional services.
I don't think our population's grown.
No, I'm saying that the...
It has increased last year.
Yeah.
Well, that's the state's number from antiquated data. The up-to-date, real-time data shows 44,000 plus.
Which is only 2,000 or 3,000 more people.
But over the course of, but when should you put the infrastructure in, before they're here, or when they get here? So, okay, 673 people doesn't sound like a lot, but it was, of course, 10 years, it's 67,000 people.
But has the tax base grown?
The tax base has...
We can look at Lamar's numbers and see, it decreases every single year.
But that's because of one individual. I've done the research.
The point is, is the tax base is decreasing, the services are expanding, we're allowing it to expand with the demand. I understand all that. But there has to be a point in time where we say, "Okay, we really need to ease up on just letting it happen."
No, I'm not saying to let, I would say, "Teeter." Your tax base has actually grew $15,000 in the taxes that might have came in. So, I wrote an article about the paper.
I read it, I read it. It's a great article, by the way. But...
Well, you can see why, yourself in the paper.
Okay, so the tax base just funded a half a position, and we're fixing to add them. Eleven.
Say something in favor, and say something different up here. So, anyway...
I've said about it.
Mr. Baker?
You're right.
Yeah, I was just gonna say...
Pull the microphone.
It could be one of the alternatives, and I think Allen mentioned it as well, with the college, but also River Oaks, and it's the workforce development. It's where they've contacted Dustin for about, like, internships in which the student may work a series of months. And so, it's where they pick up the cost, because they're trying to get training for those people. So, it could be that you could check in with Allen as well, especially if the physician's not getting funded, to try and find out. I don't know the length of those, but I know that they've called our office before and offered those.
Go ahead. I view this situation that Barry's talking about, and I haven't had a whole lot of success with these so-called interns, because typically, all I ever need them to do is wash a vehicle. And sometimes, it's hard to get somebody that can actually wash a vehicle for them, I can say it like that, and then they don't show up all the time. And I know in a situation like Mr. Jackson's guy, they don't need consistency, somebody that probably is looking at a marketing-type...
Background.
Future, background or future, or something, or want to learn, that they'd be more interested. You take somebody that's used to sitting on a tractor all day, and then you give them to Allen to work with, and, you know, help him as much as somebody interested in that background would help. But I haven't had a lot of, a lot of good results with this so-called internship, because they call me all the time, and I say, "What do you have?" And they say, "Well, pick up your grass or wash your cars." And then they don't, then they don't show up, so.
Well, all I'm getting at is, is, just, just real brief. We're looking right now, we've got requests for 13 employees, and that's in perpetuity. I mean, that just continues coming back every single year. At least 12 of them have benefits. I mean, so, you're, this is getting costly. I mean, that's, that's the big cost of government is employees in here. We're just, we're starting to stack it up here. We, I'm just getting nervous, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Joe.
There are some opportunities, potentially, through the University of Florida. Normally, when we get the request, it's for a summer intern, and I think there might be some individual or independent study that we may be able to get in terms of an intern who may be behind the eight ball, so maybe something, Dr. Jackson, that we look at for next year, because summer classes start, started already, or, I mean, the fall classes started already. So, it may be something, if we can't get in now, we can get in, you know, maybe starting January, but it is something to look at in terms of the professors, if they would be willing. I know one of the challenges that we've had during the summertime in terms of getting interns is housing, that they, if they're not from here, that they have housing. So, I don't know if maybe there could be a small amount for gas, so that as they travel back and forth from Gainesville, if they're, you have housing there. So, just some other opportunities that I'd be willing to explore if you desire.
I'm sitting here, I'm just thinking out loud for a moment. I'm gonna think out loud for a moment. I don't know anything about what the Chamber does. I know that they did have someone sitting over there working on whatever they work on. And I don't know if, and maybe this conversation has occurred, the possibility of maybe splitting the salary with someone over there and having that person that's there in an office environment all day anyway. I don't know what type of data they compile. I know that a lot of people that end up calling Dr. Jackson, call there first, trying to obtain data, trying to find out information, trying to learn something about our demographics, and then ultimately get transferred over, and Dr. Jackson starts getting involved. But it would just seem to me that if they had a full-time person over there that was capable of handling what they need, and it may not even be a possibility, I don't know. This is kind of where I was trying, what he needs to do, and do it for, with shared costs, part of it comes from the Chamber, and part of it coming from you. If it's going to happen, it would be less expensive for both parties. Yeah, I don't know if it's doable.
Here's the thing, and what I'm looking at on the sheet here, is the Chamber's asking us for assistance. Apparently, they don't have the funding or the, to share in that. In other words, we'd have to fund them...
To fund us.
To fund us, is what I'm thinking. I mean, and so it's, I mean, I...
Are they paying an assistant now?
Yeah. Would we fund half of her pay, is that what you're talking about?
That's, that's my question.
Okay.
Is it doable?
I guess that's why I want to try to bring all this together, because I know that these two departments, there's a lot of overlap. And maybe overlap's not the right word, but I know that there's a lot of...
Partnerships.
Okay, partner, good word, good word. That's why you're the doctor. So, with that, I guess I'm trying to bring the discussion forward with both of these at the same time, because I, there is, I mean, it works closely, and I'll shut it up. Go ahead, Jimmy.
No, Commissioner, you're right. Dr. Jackson and I have been working together a lot. We, it's been a concerted effort to do that. We've, on many of these projects, we've traveled together and met together. We think it's very important, as far as Mr. Harris mentioned, Karen, you know, obviously, he is administrative assistant there, but she is full-time, but she's absolutely slammed. You know, we house several boards there. And what most people don't realize is, and Mr. Harris mentioned that, is we are the first stop most of the time, whether it's walk-in traffic, people moving in, tourism, that's where they come to the Chamber, the phone rings constantly. So, while we certainly don't mind assisting and working, you know, with economic development, we would like to do that, I don't think that's an opportunity that Karen can have. And when you mention the budget and us being here, you're correct about that. We receive no funding from the City of Kansas. Last year, it was $10,000, that was not asked for. This year, and that was for marketing purpose, but nothing that helps pay the bills, essentially. So, we're on our own over there, and we do that through membership and through, obviously, fundraising events, Christmas on the Square, those types of things. So, as we try to take on more tasks and do more, obviously, everything comes at a cost.
Sure.
Yes, you're both kind of correct in what you're saying.
Well, I want to make some distinctions here between, we're talking about growing the tax base. Both of these departments, whether it be Chamber of Commerce or Economic Development, are designed by purpose to help us grow the tax base business-wise, which we know pays more tax than the homeowner does, you know, within the realm of the property, the intangibles that they, tangible and intangibles that they have. But the property owners and swag, they have to pay the lion's share of taxes at this point in time. We'd like to kind of reverse that by growing, having economic growth. So, both of these departments do that. And when we, when we hire Dr. Jackson, we want to equip him with tools that he needs to do the job. I don't know that we have, I don't know that we have fully explained the responsibilities or job description of the person that he's requesting, because when we say data mining, that's a foreign concept, a foreign term to the board. If there were more definitive responsibilities outlined, I think it would be a more palatable, more palatable thing. So, the last thing that I want is to continue denying him the tools that he needs to be successful and him having, him leave us. So, I think that perhaps in subsequent, you know, budget workshops in the future, that could be laid out more clearly, and perhaps the boards at that time would fund that position if we don't fund this budget. I do feel like, I do hear the discussion about interns, and I think that's the, when we're discussing interns, here, we're talking about local colleges, who, children, students, learners, live here locally, and we don't have to worry about housing. I think in larger metropolitan areas, governments have provided housing, because they realize the benefit to having these interns. But I think it shows the college good faith, if we, if we did hire somebody like that and then gain the benefit of the others that they send over, if they show up, you know, they may or may not. But if the incentive is there, which I know, and a lot of us have been through college here, when we had to do things like that to gain either extra credit, or just as part of the curriculum, they had to do a certain amount of hours, there is incentive there to do that. And like Commissioner Sessions said, if you have a student that has a career path that's dedicated to marketing or economic development or whatever, they're gonna be interested. They're not, this is a whole different subject than manual labor. So, I just wanted to make those distinctions to the board, and maybe Dr. Jackson can speak a little bit more to the job description, to give the board more clarity on what he's asking for, because I don't think that data mining fully explains it.
Okay. Thank you. Basically, it's the maintenance of our all-out demographics, and what is really time-consuming, which the Realtor and the site selection consultants really depend upon, is our database of inventory of properties. And basically, it's not just putting the property in there, but, you know, putting all the data, the electric that may be associated with that site, the utilities that's associated with that site. So, in the database, a lot of times, you have to go verify that information site by site, many times calling Swan, Dow, and Electric, calling our natural gas folks, understanding what phase, whether or not that's real. And so that, and so that data is being, actually, those sites are constantly being fed to me, and to be honest with you, I can't keep up with it, and the expectation is to have it in that, in that inventory. So, that's, that's one of the biggest efforts that we're willing to take once.
Here, here, I guess, and I want to be blunt, no offense, because I've talked with you all the time. You're, I know you're out there, you're beat the pavement. But in two years' time, you should have already accumulated that database. Now, granted, I know that there's gonna be some changes that come about from time to time, but I don't see that that database is changing from day to day.
It's not, because we're behind.
I understand. But in two years' time, we haven't accumulated that inventory of what's out there?
Yeah, but the inventory is a living organism.
I understand it changes.
Yeah, I mean, basically, as properties come available, we get that information, and it's being sent to us. As properties come off the list, we should be removing that, and...
I understand. I just don't, and I'm not in the market.
Right.
I just don't see that it changes, that it, I know it's not static.
Right.
But I don't see that it changes so much that it requires a person to be there every day, gather this information up.
Well, I mean, that's one aspect of it. That's what I'm saying.
There's all the other demographics that go along with that.
And the requests, where we're putting together proposals, that's what I'm saying, that that's the, that's the data mining that has to take place as it, as it relates to that request, that specific request.
But didn't we hire you for that?
That's, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. And basically, I bring the expertise, how to make that happen, but when you establish, and I can tell you, I said this from day one, when I was interviewed, you said, "How many persons would you need?" And I said, "Me and an assistant." And I said, "That will never change."
I can't remember that, but I wouldn't disagree.
Yeah, I mean, I was right up front, because I've done this, and I understand what it takes on the back end to, to make sure. You want your data and your information credible?
Well, I, and I, I agree. I think that we, I think that some additional help could be utilized.
Correct.
I think that we've got people on staff that could fill that void, as well, I'm getting at. We won't have to go out and hire somebody, hire an intern, whatever.
All I'm saying is, we had this discussion last year, and to this day, I don't have anyone.
Well, I'm willing to make it happen.
I agree, but I think we got, I don't want to fund a new position. I'm not really sold on the intern deal. I do believe we have some staff that we can move around. We did this last year, we said we were gonna do it, we never did it. We're sitting in budget workshops, let's go ahead and take one of those positions, cut it in half, put that half the money in budget this year. Go ahead, split that position.
The only problem I see with that is, we're talking about Jim Payne, I'm talking about Van Esther, we need to check with Patrick to see what his load is over there, if we can afford to lose him. We're having a discussion here about...
That position there was never a building department position, as far as...
I understand.
We moved her down there just to help them answer phones.
Relocated the, kind of...
Does it have a part-time, or did the part-time relieve, is it just Marcia and Esther?
She retired, yes. It's just... Yeah, there was another woman, I can't remember her name, she left.
Mr. Antrick, you got it.
Can you, do you know anything about it?
I can tell you what I do know about it. I don't know who the other person was, they were apparently gone before I got here, but what happened was, Marcia was the only person there when I did get here. So, Marcia either had a vacation, or sick leave, or anything else, there was no one there. And others in the downstairs would just answer the phone and do what they could, Ronald might come over and help with what he could, or whomever. So, the upstairs was overstaffed. Oh, and it was incredibly obvious to me that the upstairs was just terribly overstaffed. So, when we started shrinking that down, two people are no longer there. I knew that there was a need downstairs, and Van Esther could fit the bill, so that's how Van Esther ended up down there. And then she went through the whole train and everything, so she's there. I guess she helped answer telephones for everyone else down there, if they're out as well. But that's what's occurring. Now, the only, the complication that I see, again, I'm sitting here, being real objective, because I haven't participated in any of these conversations back and forth, I'm trying to think through this. The one thing that I think, you know, for instance, Jennifer, we can talk to Jennifer and find out how much of her day is just hands-on, all day long, dealing with this 911 addressing stuff. It may be that she's got four hours a day or more that she could contribute to working on stuff for Dr. Jackson, but it's the... But it's the, the distance in between a communication on a daily basis that I think is probably the, the biggest handicap to that. Because otherwise, you can fix the funding issue. You can designate, yeah, you can designate the funding issue and take care of that, it's on, you know, just in line right here. You can remedy that piece of it. The other is something that, you know, they would have to work on together and figure out how to bring that about. Now, if on the other hand, you need someone sitting right there that you can call and say, "Hey, did you take care of this, or can you handle this, can you make this phone call?", that's a different matter. That's, that's something where, you know, maybe it needs to be in the same location that that person is, that's got a dual responsibility, or vice versa. So it's that type of interaction is the only thing that I see as a impediment, otherwise, because I think we've got at least those two people that could do some portion of this work. I think it's the separation of location is the greatest impediment right now.
Are we using all the offices down there?
Thirty-second story, I tried that inventory business, I mean, intern business myself one time, it was a disaster.
Well, I think in the respect he's talking about intern, I don't think it's what we've got.
Well, it's different than what I had done.
Yeah.
But I, I personally had some bad experience.
Yeah, it's not through the workforce.
Yeah, what he's done is totally different.
Yeah, this would actually be through the university, we would identify someone that has the skill sets. And basically, it's paid, but also it's going towards their credit also. The, just to comment on Mr. Harris, if, if I had one, one person, the location, we don't necessarily have to be together, I mean, we can communicate if there is a place that, that, you know, I can say, you know, this is what we need to, I need assistance with and get this out, that, that, that works. It's not having the resource at all available is the issue.
Mr. Ankron, I'm sorry. Just go back.
Just real quickly, as a taxpayer, I think y'all know him one heck of a job, looking at this entire budget, the questions and things. And I understand, you know, and I appreciate Wesley's concerns with the tax dollars, hiring additional people that's going to go on. What you're talking about here with Dr. Jackson and economic development, it took us three years, actually, four years, a little bit longer, of discussions about, we want the county to grow. We want to be in front of growth. And then it went to another, you know, as part of that, on and on, until we finally got to the point where we hired the Economic Development Director. The whole thing, you touched on the growing the tax base. You're not going to do, you're not going to increase the tax base as quickly with just residential type development. You've got to have the businesses. Now, we, the county is paying the Economic Development Director to do those things. If you handicap him, and he does not get the tools that he needs to do the job, it's like sending a mechanic out to work, but you don't have any tools. He has the knowledge, but no tools. I think you would be remiss in this whole discussion if you don't give him the tools. The person that he needs, needs to have the skill set, and as you pointed out, the desire to do that job. If you don't do it now, consider it, and I hate to use the word investment, because of what the feds have used that term for.
It is an investment.
This is, it is, is an investment that you're going to recruit. What would be your payback timeframe, if you want to look at it that way? I think that your, that person that he would hire, or could hire, and needs, between he and that person, I think the benefits that would accrue would probably be here within 12 to 24 months. They would more than pay for their position. And I, I think you need to look at it in those terms. And I still think you're, as Wesley's point out, this is going to be something that's going to go on year after year. But look at it, you know, how long? If you don't put it off again, how much are you going to lose? That would just, as a taxpayer, out.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
That sounds great. I, I'd like to chime in, you know, I don't want to see him handicapped, that someone have to, he have to have this tool in order to get his job accomplished. You know, wherever he comes from, he's got to have that help. He can help with the tax base, in order to get his job done. You know, I, I look at it a lot of times, I don't say anything to him, but he's running and he's going, and not only him, I mean, people throughout the county. And that help got to come from somewhere. I know, you don't want to just balloon everything out, but I think it works itself out, he gets some help, and he can help, and anybody can help him to be able to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Sessions, do you have an opinion?
Well, I already said what I thought, I think he needs somebody that has the same mindset or has the same career path, you know, their interests, at least if it's, even if it is a, an intern. But I know how valuable it is for me to be able to holler out the door to my assistant and go through the list of things we've met about early in the day and say, "Where are you on this, where are you on this, where are you on this?", while I'm doing the things that I need to do sometimes. And when, and when you get stressed, you don't do as, you're not as productive when you're stressed. And, and I just think that, that a good assistant, and I like to look at the price of this, I mean, it's, it's $29,000 going to make us a million dollars is a good possibility, because if the bone rings and somebody wants immediate information about our accounting, let's just say, we have, we have the best place in the nation for distribution. And if we don't have the numbers ready at a moment's notice on a phone call, and let's say Honda of America calls us and wants to put in a plant right here, and we act like we're just a little alive oak, and we don't jump all over with the information immediately, they may move on out to Crest, or go farther out west on ten, you know?
If they call, I'll help him out, we'll get the data.
You know what I'm saying? Because that's one of my dreams in this county, is to get a car manufacturing company in this county, because we're getting distribution points. So I think information now, people, people used to call us UPS, and they wanted to know if their package was in Lake City. They didn't care if it was getting delivered that day, they just wanted to know it was in, in a truck, going to be delivered. They're all about information. That is more important this day and time than the actual result of the delivery. They want to know information a lot more lately, in the last 10 years, to me, than anything else. So I think that it would be a good return on investment to, to get somebody to help Dr. Jackson out.
For further, hold on, explain. What we have here, we'll have some further, we have three yeses at this point for a position to, just for the record, so we can have a further discussion.
Yeah, I think what he is, I don't, I'm not in disagreement with any of these positions. I guess where I'm at is, how are we going to fund it? Instead of millerate, if they can offer development, if we're going to start increasing and have a general fund, then we might as well do away with millerate. I would, I don't have a problem with that, but if we're going to fund it, I want to talk about yesterday, look at that TDC tax, and start funding it, pick something else that's related to economic development, other than general fund.
The, if you recall back, we had the discussion about millerate, I think I had it at point one, discussing, point oh eight.
Well, maybe, maybe with what we need to do. Whatever we need to do, we need to, it needs to be based on either we're going to stick to a millerate, or that we're just going to fund it arbitrarily every year, or whatever comes in.
And, and I have no disagreement with that, but I think that point one is better, gives people information about where their tax authority is going, I think other departments can do it the same way. But that's just my desire. So I'm, I like the millerate, tied into the millerate personally, but it bounds the board's responsibility. Do away with that?
I don't want to do away with it, I just, we're, we're incensed going away with it if we just start increasing funding in disregard to what that rate is.
Okay.
I would like to look for alternative ways to find revenue, and I believe that that direction is going away.
The TD tax, it's, it's limited, and any large reduction in that limits that board's investments, and that's what we're going to look at.
I think you're talking about that one percent that we're holding.
We've got 1% we're going, and there's an additional, we can even go up on it, it's a tax that does not affect Swan County as a whole, it doesn't do enough to benefit the county. I believe that we haven't had enough discussion on it, and that we need to look at moving forward in that direction. I'm not holding to handicap what they're doing, but I believe that in certain parts of it may be designated to certain places, but if you do it...
Wrongly.
But we can, we can, we can use it, we're the one that levies the tax, and we're the one that collects the tax, and we can designate how it's used.
No, I, no disagreement, and I feel like we should take more interest in some of these subsidiary boards that are extensions of us. So if you want to take interest in the boards, then we need to do that, because some of them are operating a long time down there.
I mean, you're even going to go into another one here in a minute, Parks in Red, new ball field, $200,000, there's sponsorship you can use for that.
But, and we're going to talk about that. Sure.
Well, let's finish this one, so we can go eat, I'm hungry.
All right, so, so right now, we have three yeses for funding, and do we, do we, what, give us a rate, a point one number of a mill, so we have something to work with here?
$155,000.
$155,000, and what's, and then add to that what the city contributes?
$57,000.
$57,000. And does that, does that give us enough to fund a new position if we do that?
His budget right now is at what, $183?
I give you enough for that position, but then you got $38,000, you got tons of more.
$129,000.
Total goes two, it's two, 12, 916.
So that, that, would more, would that more than cover what we're, what we're needing?
Budget right now is $183.
All right.
So maybe we'll start to do... You take what the city pays back, which is the $57,000, $16,000. So that one, it's $125,000, $184,000.
So it's more than enough to cover position?
So if you add it back in, the $31,544, which includes their desktop computer, you'd be at $156,628.
Okay, so maybe if we do...
And if you put the $38,250, just saying, I don't have to talk about it, but you would be at $194,000, and his point of a mill is $155,000, so he'd be over about the $38,000.
Okay. So, so the 212, 916 is what he would receive if we did went to the point one mill, and then his budget would be one, what'd you say, $196, was it $196?
$83,000.
No, I'm saying with, with the, with the position.
With the position, it'd be $156,628.
Plus what the city gives, which is $57,000, $16,000.
No, that's...
I was letting that out.
So he would, so give me, so if we did fund the position...
But not the assistants, he'd be about at one point of a mill.
That's the, that's the end result, right?
He wouldn't have, if you were looking at the point of a mill, he'd be a thousand over.
Just a thousand.
Right, $156,000, and a point of a mill is $155,000.
So, so basically, you could absorb that $1,000 of his budget.
He might fit, I don't, I'm not going to speak on that, but that would include the chamber marketing assistants.
He can do that.
Yeah, I can do that.
That's just...
I'll cut back to Alan's.
So point, point one is a good, is a good marker at this point. Does the board want, go ahead, Jimmy's got something.
I just want to point out, you know, when, back, going back to TDC for just a moment, there are...
No, no, don't you.
Yeah, I want to, I want to break this apart for just a moment. If we, if you're looking over that particular department, now I understand, I don't have the budget numbers in front of me, but I understand that they were shifting or intending to shift some administrative expense to be able to do that. That position, if they need a, a full-time administrative position, a TDC position as an assistant, would not be anywhere near a full-time person to, so that you could add those responsibilities into this without them, because those two divisions, or two departments, if you want to call them departments, are more closely aligned than even the chamber and the...
Thanks, thanks.
Thank you for your point about a little bit.
You want to cut back into that?
I'm ready to go.
It's a, it's a, it's a large discussion outside of just the TDC funds, and what we're going to do about it, it's a large...
Yeah, but, but part of the conversation that I tried, when I started going into this is, you've got, you do, you've got, not only do we have the chamber and economic development, and we got TDC, we got all these things that are working in the economic department, that's what I wanted to try to look at. We've got a lot of different things here. I mean, I've thought about Ben Esther, but I mean, if, I don't disagree that a person can help, okay? It's just a matter of how you're going to fund it. We don't need a full-time person. I don't want to hire nobody else under the county's umbrella. I, I just, like I said, counting that, we're talking about 13 people we're, we're looking at already right now during this budget.
I think that 13 people goes directly back to what we're supposed to do, is protect the people, and, and that shows that we're growing.
And we're only one mill away from being maxed out.
No, I don't disagree with that, but we have done a really good job of managing the money.
I don't disagree, I'm grateful for the board that I serve with, but...
So just, and, and then again, we haven't gotten into construct, that, that 1%, which could go to developing his debates when you're doing renovation and construction in regards to the TD money, which we're going to talk about, where the ball fields at Heritage Park, and Mr. Scott's going to give us some, some real solid numbers in regard to the economic impact there, that is expanding the tax base through TD money. So before you start cutting into those funds, you got to look at what else we already got going. And then you've got requests pulling from those funds to go, which the TD board incidentally passed to send X amount of dollars over to the chamber, which you have control of, but the board, you have, just as the other boards, you know, they may...
That's my point, why are we going to, we're going to fund the chamber, then we're going to fund them with TDC funds?
I'm just saying that, that wasn't part of the conversation. Now you're adding another element to the conversation.
Well, you've got money going multiple directions.
Exactly, so it'd be more complicated than it is. Just break for lunch, we'll be back here at, say, 1:30, 1:30. Get back underway here.
Mr. Chairman, I do have the snow blower ordered to help us get out of here when it's...
When it's a little warmer?
It's great.
It might be great up there.
You know, in the hot lights, in the spotlight, you know, so...
I don't know where it's coming from, it's about 55 out here.
We're waiting on one more, I think, can you tell it up here, I promise you.
Wow.
Yeah, I think, I don't think we have any more new gear. We were talking prior to leaving the meeting, we're talking about funding a position for Dr. Albert Jackson, where those proceeds were to come from, and at this point in time, putting him on spot, I'm going to turn the, check the floor over to Jimmy for back, there were some questions about using TD funding for that, or just he's come on the video.
Okay, so in line, what was, you're, the, looking at the TDC budget that they submitted, you see that they're asking for additional administrative expense money, uh, and the way that they're going to be utilizing it within their budget. I am, I've told them, and I have the opinion that they can't exactly do it the way that they're going to do it, and we would have to readdress their budget, you know, because of that, but be that as it may, the TDC does need some help administratively. So if you fund this position for Dr. Jackson, you have an individual that will be there that's not a, a full-time person. The TDC and the work process that they're doing is also not a full-time person, so you could be, and they have similar purposes, so that you could have the, an individual to be funded to cover both positions. Now, when we get back to the TDC budget, and how we'll have to re, redo their budget, elimination of that administrative expense will get them back in line with what their, uh, current economic plan is, so that you'll solve two problems at one time by having this one position.
So just, just for clarity to, and then we can have some discussion, possible solution to this, or to choose is, is to take funding from the TDC to fully fund the, the 29,994 economic development position, and thereby that would remove the need for the administrative funds to go to the chamber to administer that, that particular, uh, board's needs, so to speak. That would also give Dr. Jackson the assistance he needs, uh, at his, at his level, and those posi, those positions kind of go hand in hand, so to speak, uh, but there would be some additional responsibility that the board will be requesting of that, of that position for that person. Uh, that is a solution, uh, if the board wants to do that, and that's, that's what we have to talk about here, so, discussion.
I, I want to get some clarity, you said, the council.
Yes, sir.
You said, TDC have someone there, or they don't have them?
They do not have someone.
They do not.
That's correct, they do not have someone there. In the budget that they've submitted, though, the budget is a budget number, and it's based on what taxes are projected to be, uh, collected, and out of that, they have, next, their economic plan, the TDC plan says that they are to spend the monies in a certain percentage areas, and they're limited to 10% as administrative, you know, expense, you know, in there. And so, and what they're projecting inside their budget to y'all is greater than that 10%, so my solution to that is that you, you can eliminate inside their budget where they're off on what their budget is supposed to be by creating this position over here that would also exist for Dr. Jackson. Then you tell TDC, you say, no, go back and adjust your budget to, to do this, because we're telling you, we're providing you this person.
So it would be like, it would be one individual, but it.
Serve dual purpose.
Dual purpose, yeah.
Along similar paths.
And then it relieves the chamber of the duties, so that they can do what they're designed to do, which is do, assist local businesses grow.
That sounds good to me.
I agree with that.
Your chamber man wants to speak, I think.
Mr. Norris.
So just for clarification, you're saying if you do this, then the chamber will not do any functions for TDC?
For the TDC, you're, you will be relieved of the duties related to TD.
Okay, so the TDC will move to a new location, and then you will administer, and we will have no other contact with TDC through the chamber?
Well, other than what you would normally have when you had questions or concerns, if you got it, you know.
Because the chamber is the original tourist development center, and when anybody comes to town, they're still going to knock on our door.
Of course.
So we're just going to put a sign up.
Why wouldn't we allow them to continue to meet there?
Well, because if they're not going to pay us.
Okay, I see.
I mean, if they're taking all the funding.
Deep prior to this budget year, have the TDC been funding the chamber?
No.
Well, we did give them.
I didn't miss it.
Do that, I'd be $20,000 off.
Yes, they paid, yeah, $20,000 we give for administration, and we have been taking care of all of the function of TDC, which includes all the grant processing, uh, we work, obviously, we contact and send a lot of information, but the chamber has, that has been their role.
Is in addition to that, there's a fee for the financial aspect of things, or is the $20,000 to cover that? I believe it's.
And what has been happening is out of that $20,000, we've been paying for bookkeeping, we've been paying for printing, we've been paying for postage, copiers and employee, we spend about 35% of our time for $20,000, and I'm pretty sure we all know that doesn't add up.
Right.
So that's where we're trying to go, but if, if they're going to take that funding and use it for this position, that's fine, but then obviously the chamber would have to.
Right, well, there is, we have a similar sized boardroom at the airport, which, you know, could be utilized for that function after.
Yes, that's what they decide to do, we also get all the mail, I mean, everything comes through the chamber.
Yeah, there's a growing pain.
Right, um, the website, everything's tied to the chamber, so.
I'm getting asked.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How many, how many people you got up there? Uh, there's just Karen and myself, so, and that was part of the, the, the plan that we had been talking with through the TDC board, uh, was staffing another person because, uh, on, on a part-time basis, uh, to help with, you know, what Jimmy was, was, was saying was.
Change him, change him.
Right, because, and you guys have been in the chamber, you know, Karen is more of administrative role, and when you walk in that front office, uh, all of her information is, is kind of available out there, and we would like her to be in a different role there, and then have a person, person that could, you know, entertain people as they come through the door, answer the phone, or, or, or that type of thing. So we have entertained that, but we can't proceed that way if TDC is not a player.
Well, if the commission took on the role, I'm willing to look at this further, I mean, I don't think we can solve it today, but, but if, if we, if, if the TDC and the county was to put somebody there answering the phones and doing TDC stuff and doing Mr. Jackson's stuff, I mean, would, I mean, if, they're going to be catching the chamber commerce people coming in too, as far as answering phones and whatever, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, there would, there would be, obviously, when someone walks in the door, you know, and sits multi, they could be looking for TDC, they could be looking for the chamber, they could, they could be looking for any.
But you got a front person that's not being funded by chamber that, that could.
Right, we.
Green that.
Right, we.
Just like Karen's doing now.
Yes, yes, we can't obviously fund another individual up there, so our relationship with the TDC was when we were trying to, to grow, to do that with another.
Well, what I'm getting at is leave the TDC there, let that person field inquiries through the door and on the phone for chamber at the same time.
Yeah, and, and we certainly may be able to work that way, there's just, there's a cost for doing business there, and, and, well, I want a clarification on it, if all the funding goes away, then there's, there's no reason for TDC to be there, we can't, you know, we can't be still getting the mail and, and, and doing all of these functions for TDC, and, and making their copies, and doing the grants and everything, and there'd just be a part-time person there answering the phone and doing that kind of stuff, I mean, it would have to be.
But I think we're talking about an individual that would take on every aspect of TDC, where your chamber person doesn't have to. I, I. They would also take care of Alvin's staff.
If that's, if that's possible, well, then we would welcome that, uh, I've talked to, and this is getting into a whole other camera warrants, but I've talked to multiple places, that you, you, you cannot do that with a part-time person doing what you're.
No, 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 this individual would end up being full-time, this would end up being a full-time position there, is, if I'm understanding kind of what you're saying, between Alvin and the TDC, those two would make it a full-time position, and at the same time, while they're there, they could field inquiries for the chamber even, as they're walking through the door.
And if we can work that out, and there's still be some kind of, you know, compensation for the chamber to house that, and, I mean, we still, we have, when you're looking at it, we have.
Talking utilities, all that stuff.
Yeah, yes, we have utilities, we have phones, you know, we have copiers, we have postage.
Right, and all that, I just wanted to make sure that, that if we wanted to keep TDC there.
Yes.
I, I, I want to see that it would be viable, I mean.
Yes, yes, absolutely, a, as you all know, there's just incurred expenses that have to be, and, and if we can work that out, and.
Yeah.
And, and again, I don't want to speak for, for Alvin, obviously, but.
Well, I'm just trying to get an understanding.
You said a 28-hour person.
It's premature for that, let them decide first.
I need to say this, Commissioner, when we proposed this, in, in, in a, Commissioner, in an effort to limit the amount that was going out of the TD, we currently fund the chamber $20,000 off.
I understand that.
What we were saying was, fund the position now at 29,944.
Right.
To not have to give benefits, but then have that.
Well, so you're not having, I'm not having a full-time person.
28 hours, 28.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, so, so here, because then you've got additional $6,700 on top of that, so here's the thing, if you have some heartburn with regard to data collecting, if you add responsibilities to that of the TD, TD board, then it becomes more palatable.
Well, I thought that's what you were talking about, you'd end up having a full-time person that does take care of his needs, but also at the same time takes care of TDC.
You can do that, but then, you know, you run into the additional salary and benefits and all that stuff, right?
Well, I.
So if you're okay with that, then, you know, then that's fine.
No, I, I.
I, I, when I, when I, when Jimmy proposed it, he was talking about 29,944, which is the one-time fee of $1,600 for the computer, and then, and that would just be housed either at the airport somewhere, or, you know, at another location we deem appropriate for both Alvin and, and this other person.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris.
This question goes back to your benefit question.
I'm sorry. Hold it up.
I'm good, pretty good with sign language, I like that. Um, this, this goes to your comment, question about benefits, if the TDC is an entity that can hire an employee, the benefits would not be the same as they would with county. County could reimburse up to a point, you know, that half of that salary, that would take care of part of that expense issue, because the expense would be lower.
So you would say, let them hire the individual, get the FBI in number, and all that stuff?
If, if it can be done.
And then no.
I don't know if it can be done, but if, but if it can be done, and it's an employee of the TDC, uh, I don't know why you didn't pay the TDC for a, a portion or to perform certain work for Mr. Jackson.
Okay, so what you're saying is let the TDC hire the employee and then subsidize the benefits or lack thereof for any portion of the salary, that's what you're saying?
You would just pay a portion of the salary for the TDC as being their employee, and you'd say this is the work that they keep performing for us, this is what, we're paying for the work.
So through Dr. Jackson, we then, we then in turn subsidize the TDC, reimburse the TDC through his budget for half the salary?
For half the salary, I mean, that's the cheapest way to do it, I would think.
Okay, discussion.
Until, excuse me, until the TDC plan is adjusted, the numbers won't fit.
Yeah.
So we got to go back and, you know, make that adjustment.
Well, I think they're in the process of working on their budget.
It works the same, it works the same way, you know, whether you, you pay one way or pay the other way, but in, but you just can't fit it the way that they have it submitted, and we, but we can make the same person work that way, either way.
It would fit if half of the, half of the salary came, fit under the current structure, but of course, we want to change it anyway, so you can change the, the ratio of those 10% or 20% or whatever you want, just for clarity, within the current operating agreement, administration of the TDC budget cannot exceed 10%, and it currently, it has exceeded that?
Yeah.
It has.
10% of.
Of the budget.
The funding or.
Of the, of the total money?
Of the total money.
Taxes.
The total taxes received.
So 135 is what's in this budget right now, so the admin costs can't exceed 135.
1,500.
And the county gets 3,000 of that, because we pay their bills.
Well, she takes that off the top.
But that, that part doesn't count, the, the 3% doesn't count.
135 they can have in their line.
Right.
So currently, we're in excess of that, and so that's something that has to be brought under control, but that's a ministry, a staff, administrative attorney type deal, we got to break that out, but we can change that number to whatever we want, is that correct?
Yeah, as, as part of the, the TDC board will make a recommendation to y'all to change how that structure works, y'all approve it, coordinate it then, and then we can go back. I've been telling the TDC board for a while that you needed to submit this to be able to submit your budget the way that you're doing it, otherwise, I would have to stand up and say that we can't do that, and that's what I'm doing and looking for solutions to make it fit. If, if they actually make the change, make a recommended change, and you go through and adopt, um, an ordinance that changes the TDC plan, this could work that way, but it can't work under the current structure.
Kirk, how's it? So what is the desire of the board, do you want to fund it fully, the position, if any position, to Dr. Jackson, half from TD, half from the board, or, and then that money would be, would be from Dr. Jackson's budget, I should clarify that, from that millage that we talked about earlier, half from him, half from TD, that would be a, a good, uh.
You still have to fund a full-time position?
No, no, not a full, I mean, if, unless you guys want to do it full-time, we, we weren't advocating for that.
The TD person is, is a part-time position, they're not going to have time to do his part-time position at the same time.
Really?
So that's what I understand now.
I, I.
That isn't what I.
I disagree with that.
I disagree with that.
I disagree with that.
He said 28 hours, 28 hours.
Why?
A week.
That's what they take back.
Okay, if he's doing 28 hours a week, that means this person can only work 12 hours for the.
For the TDC?
I don't know, I don't know what's involved, I'm just saying, we're talking about a full-time position or what?
Where does Jamie get paid from?
Where is Jamie, who?
Their accountant.
Oh, out of that same $20,000.
Out of the same TDC money?
I don't think they do it long.
He was, he was. Well, I think it's simple, I think that, that we found a good workable solution where it serves his purpose, half out of the budget, half from the TD budget, we adjust.
Policy, the TDC will have to resubmit?
Right.
Okay, so the TD person's only two hours a week then, if that.
That, that much.
Well, I think the benefit too, is if the TDC hires them and they have to regard their benefits, that saves us even more money.
There ain't no benefits for a 28-hour person.
But if they, but if it was a full-time person split.
Wait, wait, I'm not trying to make it a full-time, I didn't, I didn't know, I thought that was between the two part-times, that was.
I thought I was going to.
But TD doesn't do that much, so.
Well, that's what I thought, too.
Well, that ain't, that ain't the case.
What I thought about Dr. Jackson, part of that 29,44, or 29, whatever it is, was benefits.
We're still, now, we're still talking about a part-time person.
Still funding an ad hoc fund, half of it, I don't, I don't see why we.
Have to save that.
Half of it out of there, why?
No, 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 no general, yeah, just, you know, out of that millage, I just.
Well, it's still a little more, but it's.
Why, why can't we fund it 100% out of the TDC fund?
Well.
Because you can't go with 13 bucks.
He's not in the structure that it is now.
Okay, I got that, 110%.
And we'd have to adjust.
So we would have to take another contingency, that this is not in there now, right, out of the general fund, the one that's on.
And if you're all mistaken, you can't use TDC for economic help.
No, that's what, that's what we're saying, we're saying fund it half out of his, and then half on TDC.
It'd come from different sorts of funding.
Yeah.
It'd be split.
Like I said, this, this done got enough, I don't, I.
There's a way to do it, but I don't think it's today.
I just have a hard record.
Greg, you got some, Greg, now, just as a quick one, Greg sits on the TD board as well, so he has some inside.
Okay. First of all, we're in the process of following Jimmy's lead, speaking through the TDC, we're in the process of following Jimmy's lead and looking at ways to revamp our ordinance or procedures or policy or plan for TDC. Looking at other communities' plans and what their commissions have adopted, there's no percentages included at all, it's just, these are things that they will do, which I think is the right way to go, for every year you'd be adjusting budgets if you locked into percentages. The, currently in the budget, the twenty thousand, we're getting more value, in my opinion, than we're getting the twenty thousand dollars that we're paying. A lot of it is because a lot of things are lumped into things that we haven't been split out in the past. Talking to Nina, we can do that, and so we've restructured the budget to accommodate that. The shared things, that gets, that's gonna be interesting to see how it plays out and such, but, yeah. Another question I've got, wearing the other hat, airport manager hat, is, are you gonna house this at the chamber? You gonna house it, before you were talking about doing things at the airport? So I need to get clarity on that and what your thought process or intention would be that also. Because I certainly have no interest in having more people, non-airport people, at the airport.
Understood.
Period.
Understood.
Is there a statute, this is you can't combine the two departments on the expense side? Because that's what Greg and I talked about when he wanted to revamp his budget. You have to have a development and a, you know, in the budget, there's two departments.
Yes, and the TDC, you can't do-
He's wanting to combine the two and-
No.
No, you can't do them together as one item. Out of two different departments, you can contribute, from two different departments, you can contribute funds.
But what I was saying is, that has two departments, one is development and one is promotion.
From the information I've been able to acquire in, in, um, court, just in this respect, that was just the way they said it at the start. After speaking with many of the other organizations and how they're set up, it does not have to be set that way at all. And the percentages, we're speaking of, many counties do not even use percentages.
And I told Greg right, I want to make sure I told Greg right.
Jimmy is correct. The point I'm trying to make is, the way that it is set up right now-
Right.
It hasn't been changed, it hasn't been done, they haven't submitted anything, you know, to be able to move forward with it. And the way it is set up right now, you can't do it the way that you want to do it. I won't let you-
That's what you said last year, same here, that's all we have, every say.
So let me just say that the reason we started down this road is because we started talking about using TD funds to fund the new position. So in an effort to appease the public, the public representation, what was brought out here, we did that, we found a solution, and now we're bogged down in the details. So we have three people that are in favor of, of having the position. So now we just have to figure out how we're gonna fund the position, and at what level we're gonna fund the position, and where the revenue will come from. So that's where we are. We need to have discussion on that to figure it out at this point in time. Position is gonna be created, we just gotta figure out the other details. So let's, let's discuss it, or come to some conclusions.
I don't necessarily think you need to have that today. I mean, you've still got other budget hearings, you know, to go, that if you give them an idea today to say one way or the other, so that if you have the total of monies coming from somewhere, just to get it suggested, if you take it like you were talking about with all from economic development, for Mr. Jackson's budget to start with right now, then we can get with TDC and see how we can adjust theirs, to be able to tweak it there, so that you have the total funds accounted for.
I guess my point is that sometimes, board members don't want to leave some strings untied, but it seems like to me that it's an important point to, how to find out where the funding stream is at this point in time. So yes, those details can be worked out between now and the final budget hearings, but I would like to know that we're either A, it's a part-time position, B, it's a full-time position with no benefits, or C, it's a full-time position with benefits, and where that, where that funding stream is gonna come from? Does it come from Dr. Jackson's budget, the, and half from the TD, or does it all come from the TD? I think that needs to be outlined, it's only fair for staff to know that as they move forward at this point.
If you're gonna create and fund it, I think at this point in time, you have to still fund it under general, and then you can come back in and change your-
There's not enough money in economic development.
I know that, but I'm just saying that-
So you're right, you got to pull it out of general.
You're right, pull it out of general. And if your wishes are to take forward out of TDC, then you're gonna have to make the appropriate changes down the road and then fund it that way.
So what are your wishes, funded out of TDC? We certainly can, part of it at least, if not all.
But we can't do that right now, from what I'm understanding, under the current guidelines.
Correct, but we can give, we can have a path. We understand, I think Jimmy and I and Greg can, can adjust that agreement accordingly. Break back to the board next year. Can we do that by this point?
Sure.
We'll adjust that, we'll adjust the agreement, if we, today we can come to some conclusion on the funding.
Have we got an idea where we're at with contingency right now?
Seven hundred ninety-six thousand, two hundred and eighty.
That's after what we've discussed already today?
It's after everything, first, last dive was the two contingencies.
Yeah.
That, that doesn't, there's nothing for seven hundred seventy-five thousand CSX if we have to.
No, I, I, that's kind of what I, that's why I'm asking the question now, we're, we've got a long way to go yet.
Yeah.
Will that person, the Alvin's assistant, that will be, because I'm, well, she think this is the one that's-
I don't, I don't wanna ask you right now.
I don't need to, I just had to go off of my time, I just couldn't handle it.
Yeah, I don't think it is-
Sometime you'll think out loud.
I still think TDC's the way to fund it, but right now, if you're gonna fund it, it's still in general. Move forward unless we go through the details and revisit it.
Okay, so that's the direction that you have, we're gonna fund the twenty-nine, nine, nine, ninety-four, and the sixteen hundred dollars for the computer, out of general fund. Which is thirty-one, five, forty-four. And we'll work out, we'll bring some back to you next year. Okay, moving on, let's see, let's go back up to recreation, seventy-two, ten, and we're doing?
One quick question. Did we ever decide anything on Chamber?
No, we didn't.
Well, what do you guys want to do about, I mean, you've got a contingency, seven ninety-six, two-eight, we got seven hundred seventy-five thousand potentially going out for-
We got three dollars and ten cents left.
Three dollars and ten cents left. Move the decimal point to thirty dollars and eight two cents. What's the will of the board?
If you didn't do anything else, if I know about last year's vote, I don't know. I'm not willing to do thirty-eight.
And that's, so we're gonna say that that's gonna come through economic development? Uh, we just been funding our general fund, I mean-
That's just one suggestion from-
I don't have a problem with the ten, I don't, until, it just, it's really unclear to me is where we're going with a lot of this stuff.
Well, I think it's unclear until we come-
As I say, once we make that decision, a lot of this other stuff's gonna get a little clearer about what money's left over, TD.
There ain't no money left over.
Ain't gonna be no left over. We gonna come back with some more funds after we get everything.
We're gonna say, we're gonna have to come back and-
We're gonna come back and revisit all this, but I think the decision has to be made first before we move forward in any economic development stuff.
I don't think that, I think that the, if we, we're looking at, through economic development, this request came through economic development, if you're gonna give them, give Alvin, Dr. Jackson, a position, then the, one of these has gotta come off the table. Because there's assistance being rendered for that, for that thirty-eight thousand, and there's assistance over here for the thirty-one thousand. So my mind is one or the other, through economic development. Now, outside of that conversation, you want to fund the Chamber of ten thousand?
Well, we-
I knew that air was gonna mess something up.
We, we had talked about, I hope that mess cut it off. We, uh, we talked about this, these funding sources with economic development. Did, did y'all decide, because I, I know that, I wasn't really, I, I didn't get, I didn't hear the question. Did we decide that we were gonna go from point eight, or point oh-eight to point one?
That, that's, that was-
I think that's what I'm watching, what that is.
Yeah, that was the general consensus of that one.
Okay, I missed the general consensus part.
Talking about the, giving the Chamber ten thousand dollars, I will-
I was hungry.
Let your, um, I will say that there was some money left in the outside agency pool, which is what essentially the Chamber would be, so-
Yeah, but that went back to what I just asked you, what, that go into the contingency, so we know what our contingency level is.
Right, I understand.
That stuff's already done, gone, that's passed. I'm working off of the seven, seventy-five, seven sixty-four.
I'm just saying you gotta count, and if, you're gonna fund the Chamber, that's an outside agency, that's what I have a question for.
Why don't you go and keep your point up? Yeah, because we're gonna find out the way we structured it through economic development, which, uh, as services requires.
As we just discussed, the, the suggestion is ten thousand for the Chamber, which would be the same funding level as last year.
No, they didn't, we didn't fund them last year. We didn't?
Austin, Austin came before.
Oh, that's right, they came back, yeah.
We didn't give it out of Alvin's budget?
Yes, we did.
So is there consensus for that, or?
What is the consensus, just standing down here, for ten thousand of the Chamber fund? If the majority says okay.
For clarification, so that ten thousand just goes into the administrative, and we're not buying any services, is that correct?
I would hope that you would buy something.
They- Just from-
Maybe at least a membership, I think that's what we said last year. That's what Commissioner gave us. No, I think, I think it's ten thousand, just a donation, do with general, what they want.
That's what I want to be clear on.
Oka-doki, well, can we move on now? Twenty thou, two hundred thousand for Ball Field, Heritage Park, Mr. Greg Scott will give us some numbers regarding that.
Okay, other hat. As y'all probably were, we started back in 'oh seven, planning for future space for parks recreation, needing ball fields. We started in nineteen eighty-eight with the idea of the sports complex, and it would take us out about twenty years. So at the point now, we're needing more space, we're using the fields heavily, and, um, just need more space for local use. Idea we had earlier, back in 'oh seven, was develop ball fields to use size complexes at the Heritage Park, looking at five million dollars per four or five field complex, if we went that route. When we built the, the sports place, we used grant funds. Right now, the grant funds aren't there, they're growing very slowly. They will get there. What I'd like to see is, I've asked the city to do this, and also the county, is to start setting aside funds to put in a, your own kitty, whatever you wanna label them, so that as we need them to match grants or to, or we have to match them, but there's things that we can't fund through grants, bathrooms, concessions, some of that is very difficult to fund through, through the grants. That if we've got a, you know, and if we put aside X amount of money, whether it's two hundred thousand, whether it's fifty thousand, or it's a dollar ninety-eight, if there's something there that we build on over the years, so that when we get ready to flip a switch and we get the grant to start making it happen, then we've got some local resources to put into it. That's the idea. Looking at a sports complex like that, which would be a regional park, what we, the idea is, is that it's all about economics, not just local economics, but if you do tournaments. And we have two, four field complexes, and we get that to our local needs and have space available for tournaments. Doing six to seven tournaments a year would be relatively easily doable, and fitting that into what we have for league, league play now, and running the numbers, getting from the Sports Foundation, or Sports Foundation, a twenty-team tournament would generate a little half million dollars to your economy over the weekend. Obviously, there'd be some cost involved in maintaining the facilities, probably hundred thousand a year if you had the two fields going, by the time you did fertilization, irrigation, lighting, staff time, you know, those sort of things. But if, again, if you're generating six or seven tournaments a year at a half million dollars a pop of economic benefit, you know, it's a positive direction for our community. Lake City's done a very good job in developing field space and doing a lot of tournaments, and there's a big economic boom they're facing by cause, cause of the activity over there. Obviously, I know we can do things better than other communities, it being, is because of the support we get from both the city lobby, just one county, and the community. But that will be, my, one of my goals is to start setting aside funds so we can put that into a pot, pull from that, like I told the city council, you control those monies until we need them. You know, I don't wanna, I don't want them to go into our account, they need to stay on your accounts, and we don't need to mix the funds, or maybe we need to go ahead and everybody put their, put their hat in the game upfront, so we don't pull them out later, you know, sometimes that happens in the past. But, you know, you're, that's, that's the idea. You go out and answer any questions that you've got.
All right. Just these fields, Ball Field, Heritage Park, that would include baseball, soccer, football.
Measure would be mainly baseball and softball.
Baseball.
Right. We had the, had the plan originally to have the sixty-one acres behind the home, the ponds, that we could have bought for twenty-seven dollar, but that was not the direction that folks chose to go, when we had a chance to match that money. But, so we're limited in, in that space already. We hope to, at some point, find a way to buy or barter or trade, to get that property, because the idea of a regional park is having one location, you have multiple activities, and, you know, with the paving, now Miller Street and Ish Tutney, it makes it easy access, you know, back to downtown, so people can spend their penny in their pocket before they go back on interstate and head back south again, or north.
I think it's a good location. I, what I was leading up to, uh, back a few years ago, the soccer field.
Right.
Uh, that field being utilized?
It's utilized some, but some of the soils are not the best in the world, and trying to, we've written some grants to make improvements there. Because of the space, we're looking at probably getting two fields in, and, you know, it's good for, as we develop further, and I think in the next year or so, we'll be able to do some things there. We've tried some things, but we've kind of put it on the shelf, quite frankly, to, to move forward. But I look at it as more a travel, practice area and such. We taught the schools some about some needs that they have, about utilizing it, helping us develop that, but we're, we're ways away from doing that. But to, to develop the true soccer complex, I mean, you're looking at probably four, four to six fields would be nice to have, to do larger tournaments and, and such. Surely, you could do some, some tournaments with smaller fields. We've done that at the sports place with three V three, and, uh, three versus three field, or tournaments, and done, done well with that, but, um-
Yes, sir.
Greg?
We're sitting down there providing the water, anything I can do?
Uh, they, we've, we've got the reuse water out there, the soccer facility, we do pave the water- we do pay for the water when that's available, and, um, the, um, we did get the taffy waived, so it was.
Is there lighting out there?
No.
I didn't think so, okay.
Greg, how many tournaments are we hosting now under the current facility?
Currently, we're hosting, uh, we had, well, we had four this past summer. Um, well, there's a couple others that, small ones that we've had also, the main Babe Ruth tournaments, we've had four, uh, two of which we use middle school and high school fields for those. Um, in the, with Babe Ruth, you, you have a system where you, you play in your leagues, then the best of the best kind of play in All-Stars and they move forward. The real, the real opportunity is in travel teams that play year-round, uh, and that's when they're playing, it's usually not as much in the summer, it's in the fall and the spring, and that's when we, we're loaded up with flag football and tack, tackle football and soccer, and then our league playing baseball. So there's really not the, the space we have there that accommodates a lot of tournament space. And we do get some spillover from Lake City when they've got a big tournament over there and need more space, they'll come over here and the folks will come here and play and then go back to Lake City.
I guess my question, so in, in addition to the fields that we have there, we're utilizing the school systems field.
Yes.
Of those tournaments, how many days do the people stay typically, or they come on Friday, stay Saturday, leave, stay Fri- Friday night, Saturday night, leave Sunday, is that correct?
Usually, if it's a, like a traveling ball tournament, it'd be a, a Friday night, come in, Saturday or Sunday is the main play. Uh, Babe Ruth is a bit different, we get more nights out there, they usually come in on Wednesday, uh, or Thursday, and then they stay till Sunday. And there's a, you know, they start, you start losing teams as the, as the playoff continues.
So, um, we could, we can see a measurable return on investment that we may, at this point, in this project?
Sure, sure. We, we're already, I mean, you know, I wish we were, could track things from the day of the inception of the sports place to how much economic benefit we've generated from that facility, but, you know, you've got, in the big picture, you've got the, the money we invest every year in keeping it up, you have to pull off the top of that also, being fair. Like any business, you gotta, you gotta overhead, but, um, just whenever you, the folks, you know, come in, you're in the school shopping and, and you've got more bank to the buck while they're here. Hopefully, we're getting people's money from out of town to spend, because we've only got so much to spend in town.
So, in the location currently now, when we had discussed this previously before this, you said that the land that would be utilized for this facility was currently owned, you used the example of Pecan Overture.
Right.
There. So this project could basically be done on the existing property that the city owns?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct.
There would be, there would not necessarily be any additional purchase for this particular phase of project. How many fields is the four field?
We should be able to get two four-field complexes or two time-field complexes.
Okay.
And this will be youth-sized fields, two hundred foot, two hundred and twenty-five foot fences, um, not the three hundred foot fences like we have at the sports place. Be designed for youth. Uh, you could transition those fields from softball to baseball relatively easily, uh, so if girls softball got as large a voice as baseball, we could transition those fields to the other, uh, and we could still do some things in the outfield of, you know, three V three and some of the other, other soccer things, but, um.
I just wanted to use this to illustrate, um, a good project for the community, is if you take the time now to plan for this, we'd say maybe we put shovel on around five years down the road, uh, because we've identified this need, it's not something that we should necessarily wait on grants for, it's something that you're asking the board to move on now. And this is what I was talking about, when you use your renovation and construction funds from your TD money. If those, if the board so chose to do so, they can decide to allocate those funds for this particular project for the next five years that would equal, uh, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, essentially, because that's about how much is coming into that fund currently. Um, so, or, the board could opt to just set aside a general fund, fifty thousand dollars a year, uh, so that, because, because it is a need, we're just not simply waiting on state welfare to put in a needed project.
Right.
We're actually taking our, our, our future into our own hands.
Right.
So, I'm in support of it because of the fact that we can use data to collect, we can collect data to show what the economic impact is to our community, and it's been, this is not, we're not recreating the wheel here, I mean, it's been done in other communities and they're experiencing the benefits of this close as Columbia County, so I want, I wanna have some discussion and see, see if we can find some way to set aside these funds. I don't know that, I would hope that the city would do the same thing, I think they would kind of look at it as, well, we're gonna contribute the, the land as part of our community. I think the Development Authority probably will have some input in it, uh, as of overtime, and then also, I feel quite confident, uh, that there can be some private, uh, funds used, uh, from various industrial employers around here, uh, as example, and, and, or banks, for that matter, the way First Federal did. So I don't think it's something that the, the county will have to shoulder the entire burden on, but I think it's a plan worth putting into action, uh, prior to, and if for some reason it doesn't work out, then the money set aside can be used for something else or placed back into the general fund.
Totally agree, and, and the, the conversation we've had with the CRA, the city, has been very.
Okay, so then there's another, another funding source, the CRA. So, I think the plan is, is if we can go ahead and implement some policy now in anticipation of this project starting within five, four to five years, that's kind of what you're asking for this part.
Years ago, when we started the sports place, someone had asked you to just go borrow money and flip the switch and go. Um, I said, let's grow into it, you know, let's, you know, we, you know, you can't just all of a sudden have everybody ready to go on day one, you gotta plan and work toward, because you've got, you know, pieces you have to put together. So I think this, this idea, use this time to work toward, uh, a community goal, and it's really a community effort, not just commissioner or county or city, so.
All right. So anybody have any questions?
If you're gonna do this, I would suggest earmarking it out of the reserves and not even bother with the contingency or your general fund.
Add one percent to the TDC.
Add one percent to the TDC.
Add one percent to TDC and use that.
Well, there, now I will remind the board that there is money currently being banked in the contingency fund, the one percent, so we can go ahead and make that policy decision and then, and within this year or the following year, you can, you can address the, you can address the additional one percent at that time. I think we're just asking for the, for the allocation.
Right. One, one thing to remember when you're talking about it, you've already got pots sitting there for renovations of X two, so there should be new, new money coming in, I would, I would assume that you were speaking of.
But I think we, I don't know that we earmarked those funds for that and went through this process, but we did talk about that. But I don't, I, I think that if you're gonna work towards the additional one percent, say to the renovation and construction fund, or however you wanna do that, to the, to the general, to the TD general fund, however you wanna do it is appropriate, but I still think that the board needs to come together and make that decision. Any comments? Supportive of it, not supportive of it?
Thank you.
We can wait nine years until we get a PRAP grant.
Do it. If it's nine years, that's not a plan.
Then he broke, don't fix it, right?
I don't think anybody denies that there's potential there, I mean, that's, uh.
Based upon the situation.
But that's exactly right, I mean, it's, uh.
The TD fund there. They're, they're not coming from the pockets, as articulated earlier from Swan County Residence.
I mean, if y'all wanna earmark that, that set, that in there from last year, but, I'm fine with that, but.
About the same thing, though, you still got X two, that you still gotta renovate.
You can set the policy now, because really, you're, you're, he's looking, he's asking for two hundred thousand, if you don't start that until following the end of this next year, go ahead and do, you can use the money for X two, it's currently there, we're only talking about four years, I think he's, he would like to break it around in, in five years. So, all we're trying to do is pre-plan funding sources and stuff like that, so we can take advantage of these tournament dollars that come into the.
Can the one percent that's already in the budget be used for fields instead of convention centers by statute? That's what I'm confused on.
It's renovation and construction, as long as it's associated with head to head.
Check it out with.
Outside of dollars. And for all of the community.
I don't, I don't think so. I'm gonna have to check that one. It goes to, it says sports arenas, um, in the statute.
Just rename the fields, Craig, or sports arenas. Air, air, sports arena.
I need to look at that a little closer, but I mean, but it does say sports arena or Colosseum. Uh, I'll see what they backed up to, uh, calling that or interpreting that.
Or Colosseum, is that what you said?
Or Colosseum.
Did I say that?
We didn't have to rename it, that was already.
Well, I, I'm gonna be honest with you, when I first got here and I kept hearing about the Colosseum, it was a while before I had realized, I was actually driving by it all the time, didn't realize that was, was what it was.
I was looking for the.
So, that goes right to the point of just naming whatever you wanna name it. So if you wanna name the fields an arena.
You misspelled. The Heritage Park Convention Center of Fields.
Arena.
Whatever you wanna do, I'm just trying to advocate economic development, that's all I'm trying to do. Great job.
Can't say.
Heritage Arena.
So we, so we are, so are we in agreement to set aside those funds?
Well, if you, if you don't do anything now, you can, and, and you can get the board to approve it and raise the, uh, bed tax by one percent, then you can allocate two percent a year just to go to this.
But then that would be a hundred thousand a year. Well, I'm just, we're just asking for fifty thousand for.
And what I said a moment ago was, if you're gonna do that, then I think you just need to go ahead and take the money that we got in reserves, set aside the money, and just do that every year.
Okay.
You don't, because we ain't got it in the contingency.
No, absolutely not.
And you ain't got it in general, basically, I mean, it's, it, either way. So it's, that's, to me, that's your only alternative, is, is to.
Just earmark it.
Yeah, it, this is what you're gonna do, then you're gonna have to just go ahead, the monies that are there in reserves, set aside two hundred, next year, if we get, if we're forcing it like this past year, we add it to the reserve, you just set aside another two hundred in reserve, just earmark it there.
Which, which reserve?
Which reserve do you have?
Construction, uh, we do have a construction.
One, one of your reserves has a million dollars worth of borrowed money.
Fund three fifty-one has a million, one twenty-five on there. That's the renovation construction.
Okay, that would be one, I, I got that here. There's no other way to do it than to get, get to do just that, if you're gonna set, if you're gonna set it up like that.
Excuse me, is that the same bar of money that we did for, I don't, I'm not familiar with the count, but.
It's not the million dollars.
It's not the capital improvement fund that we did?
No, it's just like constraint, money comes in here off the asset sales tax.
Okay, I know which one that, okay, thank you.
And we used a lot of it with the, the land and stuff of it.
Right.
So, we had a million, one twenty-five left. Well, we put in about two hundred thousand a year.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but what he's saying is you set aside the two hundred thousand earmark it.
Just earmark it out of that.
And then each year, if you decide to, you can allocate some TD funds to kind of replace it.
Just create a line, why don't you just create a line for?
We'll definitely create a line, because that twenty thousand animal services reserve is still in that fund too, so, and then as y'all reserve it for specific projects, we'll add line. So you want two hundred thousand to come in here for?
Right. That account number seems net.
I just said, if that's what you wanna do, that's what you're gonna have to do.
Well, we were talking fifty thousand a while ago a year, now we're talking two hundred thousand a year.
Oh, the money, the money is there, what I'm saying too.
Now he's wanting to hold two hundred.
Well, listen.
He says two hundred a year.
No, not two hundred a year, are you saying, is that what you said?
Greg, what are you saying?
No, fifty thousand a year is what we were talking about.
I'm just going by what he said. I said, if that's what y'all wanna do, that's the only way you can do it.
Not two hundred thousand a year.
He's waiting to see what y'all settle on, he's gonna take two hundred if he gets it.
I'm not in favor.
Every, every penny that you want to put toward it is what, is what, I think the right number is, whatever that is.
No.
Like, then it's fifty thousand a year.
I think, you know, if you use, if you use resource from TDC or if you have a contingency of some sort or whatever, I mean, that's, that's sort of that be all, but, um, you know, if we did fifty a year, fifty thousand a year, that gets us where we would need to get to, it just stretches out a little bit, which is, which is, as, as things evolve, the grant base is gonna be coming in from Tallahassee.
No, I can go along with that.
We can, we can.
Keep saying y'all, y'all wanted to do.
We, we can, we can do a piece at a time, but we will, the main thing is, is starting. You, if you, when you got the vision, you'll find a way to get it done.
This is just same side of the funds, and then every budget year, you can revisit.
Well, that's, that's what he's trying to do, I think.
And that's fine.
Trying to start something, and what we start putting in, it's like I said, once you start putting something in and you, and you commit to it, you put a little bit in every year.
And I'm okay with putting the fifty in there now, and then if we can, if the board wants to entertain the notion of, Mr. Gaines, it's repeatedly brought up about raising the te, the bed tax another percent and let that be dead to the arena, amphitheater and all that kind of stuff out there.
Colosseum spelled, let's see.
But now this is kind of the C-Tech you're talking about, we haven't, we haven't charged it yet, right? That's something new that's gonna come down the road.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, you basically did it.
So here, the fifty thousand will go behind tab forty-two in a reserve line.
Okay.
Renovation construction, fund three fifty-one.
Three fifty, all. Thank you.
From Heritage Park Ball Field Reserve, whatever we can get on that line, so we'll know it's for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For filling all the TDC.
Well, for now.
That's what I mean, it's not, it's not coming out of general, it's not coming out of reserve.
No, it's coming out of reserve, this is a reserve.
About TDC reserve.
We get it about two hundred.
Strategic construction.
See, it gives you the opportunity over the years to decide.
I understand what you're saying.
And we used a lot of it, we needed it for the, the clause notes, that.
You can, as you build funds in there, if you wanna use TDC funds, then you can move that fifty thousand back over, do all sorts of.
So that probably don't affect them.
Congratulations.
Well, in that, in the general.
I would just like to say congratulations, Mr. Ford, you did some planning, which is really nice, thank you for that.
It helps when you have reserves.
I was gonna say, we, we got something to work with.
Good job. All right, so we've done the library, we've done the chamber marketing, we've reserved the ball fields, now the economic development interim position, now, we are at twenty-six ten, nine additional firefighter, tell you what, before we do that, let's go take a break, ten minutes will be two forty-two, two forty-five, let's say two forty-five.
No, I'm, I'm.
Time is two forty-five, we're getting back underway here. Okay, so we are at twenty-six ten EMS, nine additional firefighter medic positions, seventy-three percent, I guess this discussion can also include that the line twenty-two ten, the council will be ten, nine additional firefighter medic positions at twenty-seven percent, the way we decide, so it's solid. We've had some discussion on it up to this point, uh, we've had some time to think about it, so, what are we thinking?
Nina and I have a chance to surround, find a number, but I'm all for it, because we may end up needing tomorrow morning and realize that we can do a couple more, so I don't think we need to be draw a line and say, this is all gonna be, you know, Jamie, we may be able to do a little bit more.
Any thoughts? I appreciate the help and we'll, he can put, pen, pen. Any thoughts? I appreciate the help and we'll, you can put pen and paper tomorrow and see what they come up with. Um, this is where I felt we would be and on these costs here, there's a $2,000 cost per employee for their turnout gear. That's about an average cost of what you pay for employee for turnout gear, uh, for fire protection, so, um, that cost is associated in there as well, so, um, if we don't have any discussion this time, that's fine.
Should James be here in the morning with us?
Well, what I was gonna do is just sit down and just run some numbers and then when we came out to what we thought was a sweet spot.
Okay.
We can give you and Randy a call, we all run down there and see what we came up with and, you know, I mean, you, you might be busy, you may be on a call or something like that, but just the initial number crunching, we'll just run a bunch of different scenarios back and forth. Uh, and I, trust me, I got a lot of questions and I think a little different than Nina probably does about things and she thinks everything I do, so we'll probably run through several scenarios and then we'll look at the bottom line at some time and what the total payroll cost would be and then we'll, they'll probably have two or three scenarios that might be best and then say, here's what we've come up with, y'all, and tell me what you think.
I've got one question. Uh, last night we discussed, um, in the repairs to meet with city manager, start working out some deals on maybe merging, merging, and I know I spoke with a couple of councilmen that showed a lot of interest in it, I think if they're right, I think it could go to where it does, maybe merge.
Well, that, and that's the thing, after I heard that yesterday, I thought, well, maybe we don't have to if that.
That's what I was getting at.
We may not have to even worry about it.
We'll have to, that will also have to include the opportunity for those individuals to seek the dual certification, I don't believe.
True, because not all of them have it, I'm sure.
Where at, Stacy? None of them have it. None of them, they have EMT, they do not have paramedics. So there's a year of education.
Stop everybody for a second. Mr. Harris has spoken with them, he's got some information for you, he was giving to you now, and he'll kind of go over it, go over with you, we'll have some more discussion.
Wow, I was thinking there's a.
I'm gonna throw some very general information out. Chief and I have talked about this, talked about it, because it's probably all of you have heard these rumblings for the last many months, okay? Let me give it to you in a nutshell, um, and then we can talk about numbers. In a nutshell, what we think will work, so far as a service, you know that we're providing emergency medical service now. What we think would work would be if we put a unit on the north side of the tracks at the station currently owned by the city. The city would, uh, need to lease us that building for a dollar a year and leave all of their equipment in it, fire protection. And we would also maintain an emergency medical unit on the south side of the tracks. I mean, that's a problem we've had forever, in fact, Commissioner Flumby brought up several times, the need for an overpass. That overpass isn't gonna happen in a long time. And we've got people living on the north side of that track that are stuck with no emergency medical, we've got trains that cut off, you know, part of the city. So, we know that that would work to have a unit up there. Um, we would need, at some point, and we wouldn't have to do this immediately, because Chief and I have been talking just in the last, less than 24 hours now about this other discussion, so if we were to hire the people that we've been talking about hiring, uh, the nine people, and recognizing that we still also have three vacancies that we're trying to fill that are in the current budget, um, we could make this happen, and we could fight fires and we could take care of the emergency medical. We could provide a better service than we're able to provide today. Next year, but this is too late to do it this year, but next year, we would amend our assessment role to incorporate those properties inside the city limits to pay the fire assessment just like everyone else in the county does. So the fire portion of it then would be taken care of with the assessment in the city limits. We have some numbers down here on the sheets that I just circulated. The, uh, I'm, I'm gonna try to just jump on down maybe to the second page. Just look at the bottom of the second page on your revenue side, because again, right now, I'm just talking about if we went with the nine additional people and then we're able to fill those three positions, later, we could deal with whether or not we want to add to that number, okay? But at that point, we would have the benefit of having the assessment in place. So let's just stick with the nine for now. So if you look at the bottom of this thing, you've got total salaries at 500,000. Uh, 27% of that would come from the fire assessment. 73% would have to come from gen, general revenue. Uh, then you've got some operational costs that would come from fire assessment. So the fire assessment in the city would need to generate at least 244,000 dollars to cover that. Uh, we would have to run, you know, all of that data and try to figure that out, but we'd have time to do it. It was already too late to do it this year. I spoke to Heather, um, with neighbors Gimble, and we were just beyond the calendar for the current year. Have questions? Chief says that just based on the number of households, we would be at 290,000. That's without any.
You're saying the fire assessment would generate 200?
Of the hundred dollars. Fire assessment itself, if you just went, if you only consider the residential piece right now, it'd be at 290.
Not the commercial.
All the partial would be additional.
Right. Is there any, let me back up just a second. I, I went down the list and looked, and I didn't, I didn't see it or I missed it. Is, is there any debt that'll come along with that structure or equipment?
We aren't taking on any debt.
Okay, I just, I just wanna make sure, I agree. I don't know where they're at.
If there's debt, it is in our debt and.
Right, they may not even have any debt, but I, I just, I, I don't even enter into that picture.
I don't know, but my point is that for a dollar, we take over their facility and their equipment.
How many people they have on staff over there, how many?
14. That's got admin and on shift, on shift employees are 12, and then two admin staff.
So the nine and three that we're talking about there is 12. The nine that we're talking about this year and the three that we.
Well, the three that we currently have open and then the nine, and then once you have your assessment in place, you would probably pick up another six next year to do the scenario that everybody's discussed today.
So, on here, you got to hire seven existing city employees or some of them.
I could tell you that, sir, that's, that's what we feel like we can work with. We don't need, we don't need that. No, sir, these are our numbers as operational, and we feel like it would work. Um, we would run, operate that building like we do all of our other fire stations.
Okay, so let me back up then because I, I might have said it the wrong way because I'm, I'm limited on my thought capacity. We need these seven to run that department in addition to the nine that we need to put into play to fix the overtime.
Long term, that is a very real possibility, and that's the way that I would approach it, okay? The only thing I'm saying right now is that we knew that we were already talking about nine. If we did this soon.
Right.
We would get by with the nine. But next year, once we have that fire assessment in place, then we could deal with this.
Well, and that's, and that's what triggered my mind to thinking correctly, but, but I guess what I'm getting at is if we're gonna do this, I don't want it to be hamstrung that we can't operate it as efficiently as we're running our department, so. So that, that, the seven does that, and then we still have our overtime issue that we're dealing with.
Well, well, if the seven, if, if we, if we're talking next year, okay?
Wait a minute. The answer is yes. The answer is yes. For a year, we would have the overtime issue, we would hope to alter that overtime issue with the new assessment, additional assessment, and the additional personnel follow.
And you would be able to, and you will be able to help the overtime issue slightly due to the fact that you're bringing nine on, you're gonna place three up there, and then you have three additionals to compensate for some additional overtime and the three that I'm understaffed now.
Okay.
And that mean that you want all this overtime that you're dealing with now to eliminate itself? It'd be some overtime.
Well, it would.
It would eliminate itself at the end of next year. We were starting in the direction.
I think the percentage of it could be reduced. Again, this, that is dependent upon filling all the vacancies. The three that we currently have plus the nine. So yeah, you're gonna see a reduction, but I wouldn't dare stand here and tell you that you're gonna.
No, no, well, I'm still waiting to find out what that.
The following year. And we're, most of us currently work on that now.
I have a question. Does the city charge on the fire assessment?
No, no, they don't.
So, they just fund it and they don't get any return?
No return.
To protect the citizens at, what is their question?
1.5.
Well, either ad valorem, there's been a lot of discussion about taking funds from the enterprise, enterprise funds.
Then just the enterprise subsidizes, let's just say it that way.
Well, my thought is, why wouldn't the city?
Why haven't they been doing fire assessment?
No, no, why wouldn't they pay us to take it over and, and, and still save them money in their budget?
Well, I had a scenario like that some time back, but.
Let's just say.
I mean, you, you can, you can.
I, I wouldn't want them to pay us to take it over.
I don't either.
And get their assets.
But my thing is, if we're gonna fire.
We're gonna get their assets anyway.
We're gonna do that, but here's the thing. If we're gonna start offering fire coverage in the city, I've got county constituents that are paying the fire assessment.
Oh yeah, they're gonna want it, you're right.
I won't, I don't want half of my constituents not to have one, and they're gonna have two, and they're getting the same service.
The one benefit of this too is people's insurance coverage is gonna get better because that goes into the county.
And that's right.
Where the mileage is for.
Everything east does. Yes, sir, everything east of the city limits. Everything north of the city limits will have a reduction because it is a county-owned building, it's a unified service, you have a unified response, so all those, all those areas would have a deep decrease, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, what I would, what I would recommend is this, recognizing that if we do this sooner than later, it helps the city significantly. They got a budget of, say, 1.4, 1.5 million dollars for fire. I don't think there's a downside to saying, how about y'all pay us 250,000 dollars for the first year, okay? Because that still saves them 1.2 or something.
Oh, that'd be.
But that gets us through the first year when we don't have time to get the assessment in place. By the second year, we've got the assessment in place and the 250 goes away.
Okay, but that's.
Or graduated, somebody will.
Jimmy, is this something that the city has to do by charter? So the, their city council can make that change?
Yeah.
Okay. That, that was my only question, but I don't have a problem with it if it's done correctly. He calls the shots on the hiring and how it's run, just like he's doing everything else he's doing.
Well, I still think the city has to get some skin in the game. I think they need to have some money upfront for us to take it over because we're saving them a ton of money right off the bat in their next year's budget. I think it should be one of these things, it's either a one to three-year, uh, incremental payout to us to gradually take it over. Maybe start out at 250 and go to 150 and go to 50 and then be done, because over the years, they're gonna make a lot, they're gonna have a lot more money in their budget by us taking that 1. whatever billion, uh, weight off their shoulders. I think they would be more than happy to come in sometime and agree on that.
We could talk to them, we could talk to them, try to come up with that scenario. So, if board directs us, go ahead and have that conversation. I'm more than happy to, I mean, Mr. Williams is waiting here, um, for me to report back to the council.
But just for clarity sake, the board is interested in assuming the role of fire protection in the city by vote, with the caveat that we would like to see them contribute some funds at least, at the very least in the first year and possibly for the next three years. So that's what you would go back and discuss with them.
I think it will.
Is everybody available now?
250.
They'd save the money either way, no?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're saving a million bucks off the bat.
That's right.
So, so that would play into this, this other hire a little bit, is that what we're saying, or is that?
Well, the, you need to have a conversation on the nine anyway, but the nine, I, I'm telling you that we will do the service with the nine, okay? We will do the service with the nine. And then next year, we will get the assessment role in place so that we can levy the assessment. And then we will, once that assessment's coming in, and next year, if that next year's budget, we can talk about hiring the seven. This time next year, we'll be talking about hiring seven people.
If we take it over, there'll be anticipated benefits where response times will be quicker in the city. When we do the case of efforts, going direct, there'll be lots of things we'll gain from doing this to.
ISO rates are better, and insurance rates are better because of the ISO rate.
Plus, plus also you have a guaranteed response because you have paramedics on those engines, so that engine becomes an ALS response in the, in the city limits, and that guarantees them a response at any given time even if the ambulance is there. So, and that also guarantee, you know, north of town reduction, those areas, um, that, that's the, the big benefit to the citizens.
Have your, Mr. Baker?
I, this question I have was, uh, in going back to ordinary city, I have a question for Jamie. Is it where that, that the contingency fund for the fire that was paid for county funds, if they use to provide service to the city, and unless we did have something like what ordinary was suggesting?
Well, we're gonna have to have the initial, for that initial year, we're gonna have to have some kind of payment to bait the offset there. That's why I think Randy suggested the 250. With that 250, we can do it, because if the assessment then falls in the next year, if the assessment doesn't get together, uh, the next year for whatever reason, you know, then we'd have to have another payment, you know, to go, but that's how it would have to happen.
They, I mean, we can get long neighbors and give them those, I mean, they, they can make it happen next year. That was hard on this fall.
It won't take them long to do it, it was just too late this year.
It was, I'm sure, it was just tiny issues on, maybe we ran out of time.
What is, what's your prediction on what the assessment would be, or if you know, I had time to figure out everything?
We just figured that the minimum that would be required to cover this expense, if that's how.
Yeah, and if you kind of had an idea of what it would be overall, just chart a better footwork around.
Well, the problem is, is the, the commercial rates, I think, really.
It's gonna be higher. It's gonna be a lot more than that by the time you pour your commercial in.
Yeah, so you did, you, you covered the expense just on roof, on house.
Yes, sir, if you take the residential home.
Just that by itself, by the time you throw in the commercial aspect.
Unapproved property is really not gonna make a big difference. Your commercial rate is what's gonna make a difference with the size of the building to the city limits.
That, that's where that, that's, and that'll kick in next year if we get this, and we should be able to get this, long neighbors can get all this information.
Isn't it gonna have to cover not just the 244, but cover all of the projected costs inside the city?
Well.
I know it's not the total of all 500, but.
The way that we have to split it, right, we have to split it right now, and it's already, it's always been split, so what you end up with is the 300, you can end up with 365,000, but remember the, Jamie, we split the.
This is, this is total salary? This is your general fund projection?
Okay, but this total salary isn't just for that.
That's everything, yes, sir. That's total salary is total salary for seven employees. So if we're doing nine, you're gonna have to go by. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. If you go by the.
Jamie, we're the key. I told you 109,000, the difference is. So here's my point, here's my point. If we, if you deal with the nine that you're dealing with. So, here's my point, here's my point, if we, if you deal with the nine that you're dealing with, if this board approves that, we will make it work.
Ricky and I were just talking, and just thought, and I was fixing to, 'cause I was fixing to ask, on the, on the ambulance side, Jimmy. Where you can't collect a special assessment. That's the service that's gonna cost general revenue. What if we just, what if in our approach to the city, we need a two hundred thousand dollar annual payment to cover the services inside the city? Is that crazy or what? I'm talking about an annual payment to cover, we can collect fire assessments.
Collect fire assessments.
But we're not getting, in other words, outside of the city limits, we get a, a general, we get a property tax. Inside the city limits, we don't collect a property tax, so there's not a general fund collected inside the city limits to help offset that EMS service.
Two, two. Okay, what, what, okay. We still collect.
We still collect property taxes out of the city.
Oh, I did?
Point of clarification, yeah, we do, they just overlay and then they collect tax on top.
They pay it twice.
Okay, they pay it twice, I don't live in the city.
I don't either, but I've heard, um, the city residents.
If they were to ask us to take over fire, we take it over in the fire assessment, we pay over our cost of the fireside. But we're still gonna be putting on two more EMS units at.
Just one.
Put one more on.
One more.
Okay, so if we put one more on, we're still not, they're not covering any of that additional cost. And that wouldn't be costs that we were to be occurring over.
Here's, here's, here's the difficulty, however, you would be treating the city residents who's paying county taxes differently than you're treating the ones outside.
Yeah, 'cause you're adding on something else too.
If you're, you're charging everyone.
Well, I mean, that, that knocks my, my thing in the head, 'cause I, I didn't, I.
Right.
Since they're already paying county taxes.
They're paying way enough to provide the service.
We are providing the service.
We're already providing the service.
All EMS is taken.
All EMS.
Provide it all.
Oh, so.
That's what I'm saying.
By taking over the fire, we're just fixing to basically add.
So, you're still providing.
Add another layer of service to the city.
Understand, you're, you're dealing with six calls, six calls per year, per year, per year. And, and you respond anyways to those. Those are six house fires that we're dealing with.
Just handle it just like you were talking about, one year, not to exceed three years, some type of, to at least help us bridge the gap to get started.
Well, yeah, I'll handle that.
Yeah, I, you know.
All right, good deal.
Okay. Now, now, y'all just need to deal with nine employees. And we'll make it work.
So, with, with that, we're saying, just point of clarification. Larry's saying he wants to meet with finance tomorrow. I guess they're gonna bring back a responsive debt meeting.
We're gonna have to, no, well, if we come up with something rather quick, I'll call Jamie and Randy, and we'll say, here's the scenario, if we come up with, here's the bottom line, and, you know, what do you think? 'Cause they'll know better than all of us up here will, if it's a good fit. But the bottom line is, we're at two point seven something billion dollars total payroll annualized this year. If we can add more employees and reduce overtime and still be less than two point seven, then we've cleaned out.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that, if you can do it, but in the interim time period, if this transition occurs, if the city goes along by with all that stuff. At least for the time being, the nine, or, or twelve possibly, could be satisfied with, with, with the addition of those individuals and not hiring them back up.
No, that's not current.
Understand.
So, you're not impacting your overtime still following.
Okay.
So, we're still gonna have.
So, we're, we're talking about taking on that with seven employees and then hiring an additional nine, possibly twelve from the three that we had.
Here, here's, here's the scenario. If board decides to hire nine, we've got three vacancies now, and we would advertise nine more. We hope to fill all those vacancies, it's gonna have an impact on your overtime.
No, I know that.
Having said that, it won't have as much impact as it would as when, in the next year, we were able to hire seven more and have the fire assessment in place to cover a big part of that expense. So, the biggest impact your overtime is gonna come in the following year when you hire the additional seven.
Got that.
So, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Jamie, how many calls y'all have within the city limits a year?
As far as.
Any kind of calls, any, anything you drive in.
A good, emergency medical is majority of it, and emergency medical is about twelve hundreds. For EMS only, now fire, like I said, six calls, those are six house fires. We respond in medical units, no fire apparatus, all car wrecks, and everything else, we respond fire and EMS. So, we're really only talking about six house fires that were really.
I'm talking about everything you do within the city limits.
I couldn't put a number on the others, I can say EMS about twelve hundred.
Okay.
So, so, just as a point, again, a point of clarification, we're saying, the board gives us blessing on this nine, if we can come under the two point six, two point seven million that we're currently, that we're currently spending.
Right.
That's what I understand, that's kinda, is that what I understand about the rule?
If we can come under, under the two point seven and hire nine employees, I'm willing to consider it, yeah.
Just so you have some guidelines, that we don't have to come back and be approved that, just.
I'm not willing to approve that and the overtime numbers stay at.
No, I think it would. No, that's, that's, no, yeah.
That's what we're trying to do.
Unless we get a net gain.
What you're saying is, you take all those lines and combine them and then stay under it.
Right, correct.
With all your lines.
Correct.
Yeah, and that's what I said, there may be two or three unfortunate areas we run through. And, 'cause sometimes you can hire three or four people and you'll never get where you wanna get. And you hire twelve and you're three too many, so I'm gonna run the numbers from one to probably fifteen. And then we'll look at everything and see what's the best situation, where you get the most available hands to do the job, so that you're not running a skeleton doing all those kinds of things. And that your training works out better, and, you know, the more is better a lot of times.
Well, I agree.
With this stuff.
Let me, let me, let me re-ask my, my question, listen, listen. If we go along with the nine, if the numbers pan out and we can do the nine and have a net savings overall, and this deal with the city, they, the city council approves it. We have an opportunity that we can offer nine positions right away. But we'll have to also allow them the opportunity to be dual certified.
Yes, sir, and, and that is part of it, as far as offer them, they have to have, like, an year kind of.
It's a limited term there.
Three-year timeframe to become certified.
Yes.
They would get the same.
You wouldn't do the same process yourself.
Yes, sir, they would get all the same process that we provide with any other county employee, they're provided the same means. Those nine employees that will come there with tests with the county, then would be offered a position on selection, and be transferred over to county employees, retirement would stay the same, just the benefit package and rate of paper change.
Out of, yeah, okay, I just, my thing was, is I wanna give those guys the first shot at nine, at these nines we're doing now.
I understand, and they're feeling something, there are, there are some employees over there that cannot be hired by the county for our county policies.
Okay.
So, just understand that.
No, 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 I, I'm, I'm, no, I, I'm not, I wouldn't intervene on behalf of anybody, if, if, this is what the policy is, I, this board has to do that.
All I'm saying is, I don't feel these eleven positions, and they're gonna say, well, y'all got three, fourteen people, we can't hire seven.
Yeah.
Yes, what, if, if this deal's gonna go through, we have the three, we have those nine, we'll try to.
I wanna give everything a first option. Right, first option.
December end.
Just for the record, sorry, I think I thought of, we're not approaching the city with this, I mean, this is pretty much they come to us.
That's correct.
We're not looking to take anything over.
We, we weren't now soliciting knocking on their doors saying, can we?
That's why I've been that letter, and I'm trying to make sure last night.
Yeah, I just don't, I, I did today, I seen the new trailer guy, he wanted out, I wanted to make sure he do that.
Randy, I got a suggestion, too. The first year, we won't have any assessments, okay, so we're gonna be two hundred plus.
Just say three hundred in the whole.
Three hundred and a half in the whole. I think they'd be more than happy to do a five hundred, three fifty, two, or one fifty, three-year increase. Five hundred, we're gonna take over a whole lot of going on this first year, a lot of training, a lot of this, a lot of that, plus handling all this. I think they would be happy netting a million dollars back to the city in the first year.
I don't wanna kick them while they're down now.
No, but I'm just saying.
I'm just saying.
Go with that, with the five hundred, three fifty, one fifty, or some, somewhere in that range.
That count, I don't wanna get it.
And then if they have to, you could probably go as low as three hundred the first year if you had to. But I think they'd be more than happy to get that money off their back and give us some money where they're net a million dollars the first year.
And understand that some of their current equipment would, would affect our ISO rating, uh, countywide.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we're gonna get some benefit out of it too.
For Dow and Park, a lot of those things, both sides, there's, there's a lot of.
Oh, no, we're gonna get some benefit out of it, that's what I'm saying, I don't wanna do it, man, I, I just don't wanna kick them while they're.
We're, we're gonna take care of it, I just need for y'all to decide on that.
Take on it, take on it.
The nine is fine if you can stay under the benchmarks of this.
Okay, well, we'll.
About ten o'clock tomorrow morning, then Mr. Needlehead. Fine, but like I said, as long as you pay. I don't wanna have overtime line.
He's gonna meet with you in the morning, and if the net, if, if the net dollars are less than the two point seven, we'll hire the nine.
I don't know how we're gonna crunch it, but we'll.
I don't know how it's gonna go down below the two point seven, but, but I think the key here is more, more people, less overtime.
He's got something to say.
That's.
He's got something to say.
You know.
I've defended this before, so.
That, that's real.
Uh, I think, I think that.
Well, what I, what, now, here.
My goal is to, to have more people and stay under where we're at.
I, I understand, but, but like, like I was asking yesterday, you can come up with those numbers, but you're gonna also have to make sure that you've got that built-in overtime that, that stays in there to my.
That's, that's where, that's, that's where I understand, me and her are gonna work on those, the top hour numbers.
And then there's gonna be some lead over too.
No, I understand.
There'll be calls.
I wanna allow for probably seven, eight, ten percent of.
Above, above the six percent, we've already turned the baseline to six percent.
We're gonna get there.
Okay.
Mr. Baker, yes, if I could, I wanna thank you, y'all said probably, thank you, if you're gonna take over, you're probably gonna have insurance and stuff.
That's already associated in there.
He, he's already got that.
All operating calls are associated.
Custodian.
Yeah.
Our guys do the custodial work, you know, our.
Mark will do it on his way home.
Okay, so.
So, we're gonna take it up here, and then we're gonna talk tomorrow, and that, that's, we'll take it off now. And if you find money, that's great, it'll be put back in, if we don't.
Just give it to her, give her some biscuits.
Just right, okay, let's, let's get back, let's get back to our task here.
Let something better on it.
Okay, um.
He's bringing the biscuits, by the way.
So, we finished, we finished up our list, now we got, we got a couple, a couple items here, the sheriff's wanting to talk about the roof department, what do you think?
I've got a couple other little issues, these are not major issues, but I wanna talk to you just for a moment about.
Oh, I'm sorry, wait, wait, in fact, Catherine's got one line at him, she wants to talk about the regional ag extension agent, I'm sorry. She's been standing back there for a while, sorry.
Thank you, Jerry, first.
Yeah.
Yep, me too.
I know that this is tough in terms of looking at the budget and positions, but I am coming to you and respectfully asking for an ag agent position. This is an extension agent position, a bachelor's required, a master's would be required within six years of employment. And the reason why is because one out of every five farmers is in our area. If we look at the market value of ag products sold, it's two hundred ninety-six million dollars in Swanee County. Um, and we look at the variety of products that we have here, it's not just, it's not just beef cattle, or it's not just dairy cows, or it's not just broilers, or it's not just watermelons. I mean, we have a huge variety. Sixteen to seventeen percent as of the two thousand twelve census of the farm gate is provided in this region. As we look at all the livestock, um, Swanee County produces thirty-five percent of all market value of all livestock sold in Florida, twenty-five percent of all crops in the state. That's Swanee County only. So, we look at those numbers, you know, that's eighty-six million dollars for crops, two hundred and nine million dollars in livestock. Um, this is still an economic industry for us here in Swanee County. And I'll be quite frank, is it's very difficult to attract and retain an ag agent that's trying to be the expert in all of these different areas. We have, um, had our advisory committee meet to talk about what is the best way to approach this. Um, they suggested that we split up and have two positions, kind of a livestock, um, forages kind of position, and then a vegetable row crop agent. And that way, they can specialize in those areas and focus, doesn't mean that they're not gonna answer those other calls, but it's an easier way to get the expertise that we need. Um, the farmers are saying that we still need more, and I will tell you that, I mentioned before that the, the center out on four seventeen and one, and one thirty-six, they had switched over, and this year, they're, they're submitting a legislative budget request to turn it into a full-fledged center, um, because of the ag in this area. Um, the, the university has dedicated funds, and we now have, um, Dr. Kevin Antheron, who you've met, he's with marketing and economics and crap budgets. Um, Dr. Charles Barrett is a new hire, he's a regional specialized agent, and he's dealing with water, so the pivots and, you know, water quality, helping with some of those kinds of things. And then Patrick, who's doing more of the cropping systems, and from the feedback that we've gotten, we really need somebody who's gonna be doing those agronomic row crops. Um, and I will say, as we look forward, Bob Hockmuth has taken over center director, so he was our vegetable agent, and he was located here, he gave us more of his time, but he was a regional specialized agent. So, just by the means of where he was located, we got more benefit, but now, switching over to center director, we're getting less and less support. Um, and I think that as we look at the future, you guys know what kinds of things are coming down the pipe, you've seen the sweet potatoes, you've heard about the carrots, I mean, there's all sorts of things that are coming this way. And we need to be prepared, um, with the regulations, with the food safety, with the pesticides, with, I mean, there's so many different things, and we just need, you know, we only fund the position that is open now, and just to give you an update on where that position is, is I knew that the deans wouldn't be able to interview, the deans and associate deans wouldn't be able to interview until this month. And so, we didn't post the position, well, then they had twenty-five positions that were already in the hopper, so now, they won't be able to get through all of those until October. I'm not willing to post that position and lose good people, I wanna post it, let's strain them, you know, and get them hired, rather than holding on, holding on, holding on. So, just so that you know what's going on there, 'cause we do get people that get very frustrated with the, with the system.
What was that gross dollar amount you said?
So, the total market value of ag production sold in Swanee County is two hundred and ninety-six, um, million dollars, three hundred and twenty, I have, um, the.
That was.
The census for two thousand twelve, that's total.
Was that two thousand fourteen, those numbers that I read from Kevin?
Probably, yeah.
That, that wouldn't include any timber sold or lumber, timber, lumber sold in.
So, can I start those for you?
So, basically, what you're asking for is, is a one thousandth of a percentage of the total gross going out of this county.
I didn't calculate it that way.
One zero, zero, zero.
I wouldn't say it that way.
Um, and again, this is, um, forty percent, so the university does sixty percent of the salary.
The more you make, the more you can.
The amount that I'm requesting, all, that, that amount also includes travel, um, it includes some startup forum in terms of demonstration materials, so that's not just salary and benefits there.
Number that we're taking, that we would be responsible for would be twenty-six thousand five hundred and eighty dollars.
Correct.
And then that would be forty percent of the total cost.
And that, but that's not just, that also includes those other items that I mentioned previously. And that, but that's not just, that also includes those other items that I mentioned previously.
How do we, how do we rate as far as service offered to our farmers versus of these other counties or other regions, how are you guys?
Um, Columbia County has two ag agents, and if you look at your sheet, you can see, um, we definitely have more production going on. Um, and, um, Hamilton, so you can see on those sheets about Hamilton. Oh, that's on another sheet, I can, I can bring those to you though, I have that, I.
But do you have the number, like the, the total volume that they do versus what we do, Columbia County?
We're way above Columbia County.
And they have two agents, and versus St. Madison County, they have more, they have more livestock over there.
They have one.
You don't know what the number is over Madison?
I don't, I don't have that number, no, I was looking at Swanee. But we are way over Madison, I mean, we're number one, if you look at all of this region.
We're number one in the whole northeast.
Oh my gosh, and if you look at individually ranking us, I mean, we're in the top three for.
The whole state?
Almost 10, so, 10 come on.
So, so basically these other counties have one or two agents or?
Mm-hmm, for, for agriculture.
We only have one.
We only have one.
And how many, how many?
Well, you can, we got two.
We have, we also have a, what's that?
Is it your ones?
I'm, I'm an extension agent, but we, this would be for, um, agriculture, I'm a family consumer sciences agent.
Everybody's got to wear extra hats, Kevin.
Oh yeah, believe me, I answer a lot of different calls, things I never thought about, flies and.
Well, we have, we have not so much agriculture anymore, but, um, what if, I'll tell you, losing Bob Hockmuth's knowledge and not having.
And see, this is, I think that's a really important point, is that we traditionally have not had an opportunity to have somebody, you know, somebody leaves and then you hire somebody. If we can get this person in, they can get trained with Bob and get to meet people, that is such a huge benefit if we could do that. Um, and then that person could transition into that position eventually, that's my goal.
One of the wishes of the board.
I may believe it.
Mr. Nurse? Stay, yes, yes, what about you? Mr. Wainwright?
I've been studying on this for a couple of months, whenever we had a, had a meeting night. Part of the discussion I had when I break out group is, and I'll, I mentioned it to the entire group, there's, there are a lot of farmers that, that, uh, especially the larger farmers, that with their chemical purchases, they get a farmer tech that comes out scouts and all that kind of stuff. But, the downside of that is, they're salespeople, they're there to sell product. Uh, you know, at least from an extension point of view, they're, you know, they're not, they're not trying to sell any product. So, you know, the, the total help to the farmer, uh, I think it would be, uh, not considering the, the sales aspect of it, I think it'd be the same, uh, but then I think it would help the farmer more by not having that sales impact, uh, associated with that scout or whatever the case may be.
A good example, big farmers, male fertilizer will send an agronomist out there to your farm, please don't recommend what male fertilizer sells. I mean, that's.
We won't charge you, we won't charge you for the soil sample, now, if you use our, what we recommend.
We push, so, I mean, you, for the real big row crop farmers, big deal, they have a registered agronomist staff, that's their head salesperson too. So, that's what you're getting, but, but I like the idea of somebody coming up under a person as good as, uh, as a Hockmuth.
Um, people like Bob and Elaine are here replaced.
Learning from them and, uh, coming up and meeting the people, like you said, is invaluable. And we have an opportunity to do that, and it will affect us here in the future.
And, and not only the sustainability aspect from the farmer, but also as we look at, uh, water protection. You know, if we can find that sweet spot in terms of how much fertilizer or pesticides, um, but reduce the amount that they were applying, that's good for our springs, for our waterways.
Well, if you can communicate that to the individuals that are fighting agriculture in every corner, yes, we might have an industry that comes in out there to use a lot of water, but they, I'm not claustrophobic, for example. What better watershed for an entire ecosystem than timber? I mean, it, it just, and nobody sees that part of it, they just look at.
Well, they're going to use a million guns.
And we do get calls, um, sometimes after, um, an advisor has come out to recommend something, and, um, there's a problem, and so then we come out and help to remedy the situation, unfortunately.
So what I'm hearing is, is three, yes, it's correct, okay, so that would be included. Okay, moving on, road department, stuff back, road department.
I want to go to road department, but first I want to finish something on fire that wasn't associated with the nine or the three or the seven.
Good.
Um, this is a much smaller effect. We have got to maintain, and this really isn't an option, except we need, we've never funded it. We have to maintain a, uh, an incident, uh, command system, a management system, essentially, on scene management system. In order to do that, um, and I'm sure most of you are familiar with that, you have a tiered system of authority, and everyone knows what their responsibility is in that authority on scene, you've got these officers that come for that specific purpose. Uh, we have come up with a very, very conservative approach to funding that, and I'm just going to cut the chase and tell you what it is. The net effect is 17,432 dollars and 48 cents. It's something that we have in place, we haven't funded it, I'm asking you to fund it. This is prior rescue.
This is an incident commander?
This is, you've got lieutenants, captains, uh, battalion chiefs, um, and these are the people that take control of the scene and make sure that all the shots are being called and there isn't polka dot and.
There's one guy calling the shot.
Accidents on scene, and, and that you've got sufficient, uh, not only manpower and equipment, but you've got water coming if you need it, and all of these pieces play into, you know, a successful, uh, organized attempt to address the scene without, uh, injuries or death. And we have the system in place, and I'm asking to, these are really very conservative numbers to compensate the people that.
There are.
Nine positions, nine, nine people involved. It's, uh, 17,432 dollars. 4,706 dollars would come out of fires, 12,726 would come out of EMS, general fund.
These are, these are salary, these are funds that would be used and, and it would be added to the check if one of these, when these incidents occurred.
This would be part of their salary, because they, they serve in these positions all the time. Yeah, they, they always serve in those, those are their titles.
And I had this on, I think this was the end of budget a couple of years ago, wasn't it?
We didn't fund it though.
We didn't fund it.
Right.
It was on there. Would, another question, would it be a promotion for somebody within the rank?
It's a very slight promotion, because there isn't a lot of money involved.
Well, well, because my thought is, let's just say we take care of the city. There's a lot of upper level people at the city right now that one of them may fit in a position like that to handle it on the scene.
These people currently have these titles, they just don't have the funds to go with it.
Well, not only that, they, they each occupy different shifts.
They work for you right as well.
You said they already got the title, I thought when we had it in the budget last time to do it this way, that we didn't.
We didn't create the money.
I thought we didn't create the positions.
Oh, we created the positions, we didn't fund the positions.
That's what I'm getting at, because when I, we didn't fund them, I didn't think we created them.
You, you, that isn't even an option, you have to have the positions.
We, we had, we had a rain structure at the time, but this here created more of a rain structure, I thought, the way, the way.
You just have more of them because you have more stationing, but the reality is, you always have to have, it's about an option.
Well, it's, it's important, because when we had the fire incident the other day, I was like the second person there, and you had city and county, and you, in the first five minutes, there was a little bit of chaos, trying to figure out who was.
Who's on first?
Who was directed.
Right.
I was a witness to it, I mean, I just hadn't been there. So it's very important that in a scene, in a, in a chaotic situation, everybody knows who's in charge and who's to call the shots. Uh, it is very important, because valuable time can be lost and lives can be lost, you know, if mistakes made or arguments are happening or somebody's wondering who's in charge.
It, it's a standard.
Well, we're already doing it, we're just not paying them for it.
Correct.
Paying them for it.
I'm okay with it, it seems like it was a lot more than I came up with first time.
Well, and it may have been, and I apologize, I didn't bring that information, but I worked with chief and we really honed in on this thing. Again, it's a conservative number.
It may have, it may have had additional positions in the last one, there was a 100,000 dollar.
Yeah.
Well, that's why we didn't do it, they were involved.
Okay, so we're going to do that, all right, road department. This isn't, this is similar, um, but it's different, and we don't have incident, we don't have the incidents typically of this particular nature.
Okay.
I, I don't have a sheet on this, I'm just going to tell you what it is.
All right.
Um, and, and I don't want you to respond right now, but if you think about people that you call most frequently with the road department, that are out there handling business for you on a regular basis, uh, there are probably three that you primarily call. Um, I'd like to increase their pay slightly. Um, when we had some retirees go out, um, over the last two or three years, I held off on replacing supervisor positions. In fact, we have different titles for people in both, so that isn't even a title that we use. But if I were to ask you to name them, you could, you could figure out who they were in a hurry, because most of you speak to them on a regular basis. If you're not calling me, you're calling one of them. And then there's another one that isn't, you, you would consider a supervisor, but you call her pretty regular as well. Uh, but in addition to those three people, there are about half a dozen others that are under a different type of issue that I've been trying to correct over time, because I mean, I couldn't correct it all at one time. You have about half a dozen people that were treated improperly a number of years ago, before I got here. And I'm going to describe some of these situations, you had some people that were hired and classified as temporary employees. At the time, there was a general rule of thumb that they were almost supposed to be, uh, kept as temporary employees for a short period of time. And in fact, they were kept in those positions for a much longer period of time, it turned into years. And that result is, they didn't receive the benefits that the other county employees did, they didn't get the pay increases, their pay was lower, they were held at minimum wage and something close to minimum wage for a number of years. Four or five years ago, we gave those few people a little bump to try to make up for some of that. I'd like to give them another bump to try to make up for some more of it, get them closer to where their peers are, that were not treated the same way that they were treated, that were hired as regular full-time employees, even after some of them were hired as regular full-time, uh, or were hired as temporary. The, the total for that is about 35,000 dollars, and I'd like to take that as a contingency that's already in the budget, in the road department budget that you have. No net effect to the adware taxes, if it hurting any of your other budget or budgeted items in there, they would come out of contingencies.
35 includes the three.
Does it include three or?
Includes all of them, that's everything, that's everything.
But that, that continues perpetuity.
That is correct.
It will, and you're going to single out some, and some aren't going to get it, and you're going to pray a lot of animosity, because people don't claim to get them out shut.
Well, they're, they talk today, they've been talking, they talk every day.
How many, how many, how many employees do you do that include?
There's about nine.
About nine? Yeah, I know we, we're in the, anybody talk that.
This sounds off about a goal.
And, and I, and I said to some of the employees that, you know, I see what they do. Sometime I get off from working, but when I get off at 6 o'clock, a guy is out there treating, along across the road.
Correct.
And I walk, sitting there looking, I, I saw he's down there, work hard, and I trip and pet him, they're doing a fantastic job. Uh, like I said at a meeting, Greg said, if you see these guys sitting down in a truck, they don't have no air. These guys are hot and tired, well, when I see these guys, 7 o'clock in the morning, like before 7 o'clock, and they, they drink and sweat, they been working, and they have chainsaws and, whatever it takes to get a job, that, that's their job, I understand that too. But, uh, some, some, some type of appreciation, uh, to these, to these, these guys that work for you.
One thing I want to have on the radar, you know, we haven't talked about employee raises. And that's about all I need to say, y'all need to wrestle with that issue, if you want to consider it. But these are people in positions that, like I said, there's at least half a dozen of them that, no one could argue were ever treated properly, because they weren't, they were treated differently. Uh, they were treated different than other employees were treated. It wasn't right, it wasn't right the time they occurred. And, uh, that's just the way that it is.
Yeah, I, I also say this, you, you, you supervise these guys, you know, you're around them, you know more about them than I do. I'm just talking about the guy, the one there, so I see how it works.
On the, on the three that you're talking about.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry, in relation to, we're talking about two different things, across-the-board raises, I know it always comes up. The second thing here is these employees that you say that were treated unfairly in the past, that gives them more clarity as to where they work, or do they work?
They're in the road department, they're in the road department, and I, I'm going to be honest with you, I'm going to tell you how I discovered it. Like, one of the guys that mowers, runs the mower, one of them does run a tractor, that's one of them. But I'm going to tell you how I discovered it, when I first got here, I spent about two weeks reading through all of the personnel sheets and the, uh, job titles and the pay, and looking at when employees started employment. And there were some of these that just jumped off the page. Um, it was so obvious that they, their pay was so much lower than people that were doing the same type of work, and then like, like I said, in some cases, the people who had been hired as regular full-time employees after these men had been employed with the gallon. And I discovered that in some cases, it was because they were hired initially as temporary employees, and they were left that way for a number of years. They should have been transferred over as regular full-time employees within just a few months, if the intent was to keep them, but that didn't happen. So, their pay started out much lower than their counterparts who were hired later as regular full-time employees. There's a lot of temporaries, like casuals, are hired much closer to minimum wage. So, the fact that they started out so much lower to begin with, meant that even later, when they became regular full-time employees, they're still behind their peers, they were hired after they were. So, you know, we gave them a slight bump four or five years ago. You know, this is the second time I've come back, still trying to get some of this stuff cleaned up. There were others that, quite frankly, what we called or, or recognized as supervisors, and I'm not talking about those three that I think all of you are familiar with, but I'm talking about some men in the field, you know, crew leader type positions, that should have been crew leaders, um, because they had the seniority and they had the skills. have been crew leaders, because they had the seniority and they had the skills. They were bypassed, somebody's buddy was put in that position. Someone was drugged up from somewhere else because of who they went hunting with, or who they went fishing with, or who they were cousins with, or something. And I'm using a lot of generalities here, but the reality is, that's what was occurring. So I'm just trying to fix some problems, or come closer to, I'm not suggesting to you for a minute that it's gonna be fixed, but it would be better than the way that it has been.
It's gonna fix it for those, but it's gonna stir up a lot for the rest of the others.
Well, you know, I can't stand here and say that I could fix all the disparities that exist out there, because you've got other people out there that are making enormous sums of money that should never have been given the funding that they were given. And again, it was because, and I know it was because of who they knew and who they were close to at the time. And you will never satisfy those employees out there, because those people will continue to make what they're making out there. They're driving equipment, operating equipment, no differently than the next guy, but making a lot more money than they are. So you're never gonna fix all these things.
I reckon I've, I think I want to open a pot, we don't want to open-
Well, if you were one of those four, five, or six that endured this all this time.
Well, I know, like in the case of the three-
I'm asking you to consider it.
Yeah, I know, like in the case of the three, we took individuals that were over individual districts and made them responsible for the entire county.
Correct, and I think we have some kind of policy that allows for that, if they take on additional duties, they can get a closer percentage of an additional duty increase.
I don't, did we ever give them that?
No.
I don't know that we did.
Listen, no, we haven't, and that's why I'm telling you now, those, and I can do that, okay? I can just do that right now, but at the same time, it has to fit, the other part of the policy is, it has to fit with that budget. Now, I could conceal that and say it's gonna fit in the budget, because I know that it will. You know, with all those lines in there, something is not gonna get purchased, or, you know, we're gonna come in with a better bid, or something's gonna happen. So I could conceal that, I'm just trying to be transparent. And I wanna do this during the budget process.
My thought is that, I've discussed it with the board for several years now, is we have to deal with the compression issue, but I feel that very soon, next, probably after the election sometime, there's been some talk about raising the national minimum wage, something that we're gonna have to deal with. I was surprised to find out that 24% of our workforce is paid below the poverty rate, and they do that by choice, I understand that. But at the same time, if we run into an issue where we have to up our minimum wage to $10 an hour, $12 an hour is what the other side is looking at, then we're really gonna be fixed. So I think we ought to focus on, as I've said before, the bottom end of the pay scale more than those at the upper end, in order to offset any demanded increases by the federal government later. I'm not, not in favor of making right to individuals who may have been overlooked, not, not prepared to say yes to that. But at the same time, if we're gonna look at raises, then it needs to be structured, I think, more towards the bottom end of the scale. As far as creating controversy with the employees, I mean, we've been talking about benefits packages, add nauseous now, they got good benefits. If they don't want, if they're so upset with us, that they feel like they've been disenfranchised in some way because they were overlooked, then the opportunity is out of their hands. So I'm not so concerned about that, I think we have to make decisions that are in the best interest of the factory. And so, those are my thoughts on it. You can build upon those, or you can give across-the-board raises, but I don't feel that we've endured, we haven't endured a 5% increase in our insurance, which most counties would pass that along. You're going ahead and giving them their longevity increase over every year now, so I think that that shows good faith from the boards and the employees, and I'm satisfied with that at this point, this particular budget here, because every year up to this point, we've given some significant raises. And this year, we've had to replace some equipment, we're having to add additional staff, we're looking at funding some DOT projects, we're also looking at rail sperm, and there are some things this year that we've had to add value to their performance for, as far as the insurance and the longevity risks. I'm satisfied at this point, maybe just to look at increasing those who have been disenfranchised, and then perhaps some bump to the supervisors, although I'm not as concerned about that as I am for those that may or may not have been wrong, if that's your, if that's what you're advising. We can have more conversation not outside of this room, between yourself and I, but between the final budget hearings, but that's kinda where I'm standing at this point, and we've spent a lot of money, probably gonna spend some more, and I don't know that we can afford it this year, for across-the-board increases above and beyond what we've already done. So that's kinda where I'm at, and I'd like to hear your thoughts on it.
I'll say that in, in the case of the, the three, if they never did get an increase because of the, for their expanded duties- I'd like to, I'd like to do that, I'd like to make sure that they get, you know, because, I mean, we really stepped it up on them. So I'm okay with that. The six or so that, that were wrong, I've got, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I've got mixed feelings on that, I could go both ways. I mean, I understand what these two gentlemen have said, I understood exactly what you said. They had some choices that they could have made at the same time, and we can't write It hurts me, and I'm not naive, I know this kinda stuff goes on, it's disappointing to hear that, of occasions when we have managerial staff that just didn't do their job, just sorry. And that's probably your biggest role as a, as a manager, and I'm not telling you nothing you don't already know, is looking out for your employees. I think that's, that's your first obligation, in all honesty, is making sure your employees have the resources and tools that they need. We've already discussed some of that stuff today, to the point that we don't ask too much of them. Having said all that, I mean, if there was a majority of the board that wanted to take a look at those six individuals that, you know, I don't think that they're making enough money that they could file suit against the county that they were unjustly treated, but based on what you're saying, that they've got a case, that they could possibly do that, it just really disturbed me that somebody would do it like that, and hire somebody in there behind them. And they might have been given the opportunity, I don't know, and they might have just, now I'm gonna leave it temporary, I'm like, you know, or part-time, I don't, I don't want a full-time job right now, I don't know what the case is.
I don't know the situation that you're talking about at all, I'm not right-
I just know the one gap.
And what I'm asking is, I know we have some people that come in, you have pay ranges on when you hire people. You get a guy that comes in $10 an hour with no experience, and then somebody comes in two years later, you know, with 15 years of experience, I mean, it's obvious that he may get paid more.
Yeah.
I don't say that that's the situation, I don't know the situation, but I mean, I'm just-
You need to have that flexibility.
-look in, I don't, I don't wanna go back and fix anything, because I really don't know what the situation was they were hired under, I know.
And that's, and I guess that's kinda what I'm saying, I mean, I don't know the whole story, I mean, they could have had the opportunity and just didn't take it, I don't know.
I don't have any reason to believe these employees would ever bring a case against the county.
No, no, I know that, I, I'm just saying that it's, based on what you're saying, that legitimately, they were, they were taking advantage of, or-
These are people who were clearly taken advantage, there's no question in my mind that were taken advantage of, and it's unfortunate.
What you're proposing to do would bring them up to the level of their peers, or past their peers?
No, I'm not even talking about past their peers, just bring them up to where they should be.
Well, that's why I said, you know more about the situation than I do, but I don't, I do believe that, you know, if someone has been unjustly done wrong, slowly drain those individuals up, but I have a tendency to agree with-
His name's Jason.
It's good to the day.
I knew the temperature was gonna start to crack in the house later.
It could create, but you know what you're doing, and that, that's gonna come in, just like I'm saying now, I'm just one of, of 100%, 20% of 100%. And I say, as a whole, I was just talking about, you know, the guys that work on the road, and just, just all county personnel, you know, it's worth looking at, look at everybody. That's what I'm saying.
I'm not prepared to give raises across the board this year, I mean, and everything that I've looked at, and the uncertainty that I still have for a lot of things, I just, I didn't, honestly, I had, I thought about it, and studied on it, and prayed on it, and I just, I've gotten past it now, I'm not, I didn't wanna go down that road. And I didn't wanna hire anybody, we've gone on and done that, and I've been part of that decision-making. By the same token, you know, the arguments were made that we needed to make right, you know, in a couple of situations. Although this is a different scenario, it's the same principle, making something right, to get something done right. I'm all right with making the adjustments. And I say that with hesitation, I mean, it's, I'm not all that excited about it, but if in your mind, you feel like that these individuals have really been done wrong, I'm basing my decision on your, your thought, your emotion, and the fact that they were unjustly treated.
I'm gonna tell you something.
I don't like to depend on that.
I'm not excited, I'm not excited about bringing this to you.
At all? Well, the one thing I can't stand is, is the way I do business with my neighbors, with my employees, with anybody, I'd rather take the short end of the stick. You know, I don't, I'm not gonna, I don't want anybody to ever accuse me of cheating them out of something. And if you feel that way about these, this strongly about these individuals, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take it on base that that's, that you think that that's the right thing we need to do, and I'll go along with it.
So that's, so that's $35,000?
I would say it's not to exceed 35, it could be, by the time I program it out, it might be 30, maybe 28, honestly.
Commissioner Wayne Rock says yes. Commissioner Gamble says no. Commissioner Flippin says-
I'll say yes, I, but I, I'd much rather see a raise across the board, but I would support what he's saying, because he knows more about the county. So I'll say yes.
Commissioner Session says-
Your three people in supervisory positions, if you have the right vehicle in place to do what you need to do there.
Not on that, I agree with it.
Yeah, well, you said that, no, you said that on-
On the other six, do you have a vehicle where you could do merit increases based on, is this gonna be a merit increase on-
I'm afraid that would be much more damaging overall.
We don't have merit increases, it's, it's only-
Let me just say this, if I do the three, the way I can do them, then you wouldn't see the $30,000 impact, we'd be talking, we'd be dealing with-
Well, I mean, 30,000 over nine people over a year is $1.87 an hour across the board.
And it wouldn't, I wouldn't structure it that way.
But no, I know you would, but I'm just saying-
Because supervisory will take it on a whole lot more.
Yeah. So your suits would probably get in two and a half, and everybody else get a dollar off them. But I'm just saying, if you had a better vehicle to be able to do this, to bring them up to par, because I don't know any past history of any of these people, and frankly, you may not know it all either, you've probably told a lot, you know, I've-
Well, I actually explored it pretty thoroughly at the time.
So you have good, good records, because I've been to a lot of locations in my life, and a lot of times, you walk in the door, the first thing you hear is the horror stories of how it's been treated. And if you wanna believe and do what's right in your heart, sometimes you'll make the move, and then what you do, you find out later that, well, we're gonna get a hoo-dee a little bit, but if you're, if you're completely confident in what you feel that you need to do, you know, I have my reservations about the six, but the three, I'm okay with, but if, if you've done all the research, I'll just maybe leave it with you, I'll just follow your lead.
That's a yes, three yeses.
It's all out of the road department.
So that's three yeses, so that will be included in the vote.
As the road department, it's a recency.
Well, basically, the question is, is just the six, the other three, we got, we have to be in place there, and so it's really just, just an affirmation of the six, and I'll, and I'll continue, and I won't say anymore, but I mean, I'm almost standing on what I already said.
If you can understand it, honestly, very likely will be less than 35. If you made it 30, I'd make it 50.
Make it 30?
Make it 30. And I'll make it 50. I'm telling you that I'm gonna look at, I'm gonna go back again and look at these individually, okay? Because I didn't come in here with a set number for any of them, I'm just telling you that I know, I know something needs to be done, I can make it work.
Do you think morale will be better after it's done, didn't work?
It won't be better, because what's gonna happen, say that Ricky pointed out.
I don't disagree with what Commissioner Gamble said, you know, you're always, but today, it doesn't make any difference what occurs out there with any employee. When we go buy surplus trucks, I end up with whoever didn't get a new surplus truck.
They're upset.
I've got them pissing and raising cane and jumping up and down screaming favoritism.
I'll ask you this, have the constitutional employees already been, "Give me a raise now, I want a raise now." I mean, I've had constitutional employees already for the last month that's been hitting me up.
Oh, I know, I've been hit myself.
There were-
Not county, not, not that our departmental employees, I'm talking about constitutional employees.
Where's in their-
I know, but I'm just saying, they're hitting, I know they're doing yawn, but everyone, I mean, I've got numbers of them, just as I go into town, or I'm in a different facility, "Give me a raise now, we need a raise, we ain't making enough." Nobody making enough, I know that story too.
But I'm saying, unless we take it out, it's-
No, it's in there, they've already got them in there.
Are you gonna leave that there? I guess that's the question, but let me just say something.
Yeah, before you say something, yeah, there were some raises, and we just, we just let it go by with constitutional-
I wasn't planning on giving a raise this year myself.
But, but I'm just saying, they were built in there.
I know.
On, on, just, closing comments, closing topic, I want you to know how much I appreciate the 1% per year, instead of making those employees wait five years to get a 5%.
Just a reminder of that last, I mean, somebody brought it up, and I believe it, and when we said that, and I agree, Ricky brought it, you know, I don't consider that a raise, because we're already given that, and that's already there, so I don't even, I don't even think about that.
That's true, but at the same time, I guarantee you, there are employees that you'll never hear from that appreciate that. It makes a big difference, it really does, so I appreciate it.
And my response to that is, if you went out and asked 10 taxpayers, would they consider that, what would they tell you?
I'm not worried about that.
I know.
I know what I said.
But I'll just say it. So after that, okay, Ms. Betty, come on up.
I was trying to put her hand in.
Tried to promise he'd go out of here by four.
I'm sorry.
Tell me that, you said- Tell me that, you said...
I just have to say this.
Say the four.
I don't know Mr. Harris's situation, but I believe that if you know that somebody's been done wrong this way, even though it may not be the people presently, if you know something's been done wrong, then you do what you can to make it right. We start our board meetings asking for a certain kind of direction. I really don't want to get passionate right now. My employees will probably say, well, yeah, we all, we all want a raise, we all deserve a raise, no matter where they are on the pay scale, but I'm gonna be honest with you, if I know that I had somebody who had been done wrong, I would fight for them, and the others would just have to be angry with me for a while, and then get over it tomorrow when I have to come to their defense. And that's it.
I reminded you of what Dr. Martin Luther King said, injustice anywhere is injustice everywhere. Anyways, I said four o'clock, I just, one other thing I wanted to make mention of, we said we're gonna talk about the Museum Association. Actually, I will just wanted to remind the board that in light of what we funded them this year, that was well above what we agreed to fund them in the agreement, it's two thousand dollars a year.
Six.
There are some problems there, I've got a list over here. I don't think I'm gonna go over them now.
It ain't too late to change that.
Well, I know this, but I'm just telling you, all you're obligated to spend is two thousand. By agreement, but what I will say before we end, these auxiliary boards, as I've come to find out, are extensions of this board, they're commissioned to do your business, and do so as a representation of you. And when you fund them, even if there are outstanding things that would reflect badly on this board, you're okay with that being, so just keep that in mind as we...
Let me pause there just a minute. You having said that, then, what I would suggest that we do? We're doing the historical two?
Twenty-five.
Or three, three or three?
Three.
Three, alright.
We restore both of them for what we get.
Alright, and if we're only obligated by the disagreement with the city, then we're doing the museum two or three, whatever that is. Well, I think that's wrong, I think it's, I think it's six total, three from the city, three from the county. Not certain on that.
I don't remember giving them two last year, I was giving them six.
We did give them six.
We gave them six?
Because we had some...
Okay, here's my point is this, I would suggest that we just back out of that deal altogether, fund one percent with the historical, they own the building, fund that, and make that board be the board, and that's who represents our interests in those, in that function altogether. Because they're not gonna solve it amongst themselves, we've imagined that for two years, and it ain't gonna happen. My suggestion is we back out of that agreement altogether, I don't care what the city does, we'll just back out of the agreement, we'll fund the historical society at the level that we're funding both of them, well, at the correct funding level, if it's two or three, or whatever it is for the museum thing. And as far as I'm concerned, just dissolve the museum thing altogether, just let the historical society run? Like I said, it's their building.
Well, Commissioner, just let me speak, if we do back out of that agreement, it gives the city a wide look and opportunity to back out of that.
I was saying, I don't care what they do.
No, I'm saying, but what I'm saying is, I had it on good, you know, I'm pretty confident that they're gonna do the same during their budget workshop next week, and they're backing out. So...
We don't have to wait till next year.
But anyways, so I'm just giving you that information, and you can do what you want. I would prefer to do what you said, you know, I mean, we have given them ample opportunity to resolve the differences we've...
Well, if we don't recognize, if we don't recognize the one, that just kind of solves the problem right there.
So we all want to do anything today with the nine, you approved nine?
Okay, we're doing something with it right now.
When did we approve nine? We did not approve nine, nine...
Well, three to the historical and six to the museum.
Right, I say leave it, and I'll tell you why, even if the board decides to pull out and dissolve it, we're still gonna have to turn around and fund the historical commission.
What I was saying was, is take that money, that same level of funding, and just put it in the historical society. And just eliminate the museum deal altogether.
I'm saying you could do that at the point in time where you dissolve the museum, but you then just...
Is this the stuff inside ours, or just the building, will they just like their stuff?
It's not ours, it's the museum's, the historical society, that's their stuff, I don't know who it belongs to.
Planning purposes, I think what we can anticipate is that we're, you know, go back out of the deal, funding in two thousand will go to historical commission to carry out whatever they can tell me they want to do as far as setting keeping the museum going.
So is it two or three?
You just come about...
Two thousand dollars is what we're allocated to, based upon the agreement.
With the city, they do two, we do two?
No, it's, I mean, just total appropriation of three thousand dollars is what we are obligated to do between the county and the city. Two thousand to us, one thousand to them, assuming that you say two-thirds, one-third, which it says.
But the city's been doing more, so we've been doing more, and then it's come back and forth.
The city wasn't contributing to this, it's going.
Right, that's their business.
What I'd say is, alright, we give them the historical two, or three this time, let's do three for the, what would be, just give historicals five or six, and just not even recognize the museum anymore.
So what we'll do...
And not fund it.
You know, we'll...
Five or six is the magic decision.
Well, I just want out of five here.
Give the historical commission five as a total.
Just saying five total for, yeah, and just not even recognizing, and just solve the problem ourselves is what I'm getting at.
That would be ideal at this point.
So we'll add four thousand back to the consensus.
You got two, but you have...
Yeah, you gotta have a consensus, but, you know, when we get into this discussion, you know, if there is a lengthy list of people...
Oh, I'll catch you a little break of that, but that's just...
No, 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 I'm not saying that, but the reflection of the board, based upon the experiences of folks dealing over there, is not good.
We just spent two years trying to get them to resolve it amongst themselves, and we saw last night that the evidence is just, that ain't gonna happen.
I mean, if it makes it easier, the whole nine thousand, it's for the commission to rely on.
I'm just telling you, I believe in my word, I don't think that I can do this.
I'm just gonna, I'm just telling you, Commissioner, the reputation is... Sessions?
You bent man there, Larry.
I'm the rookie on this board, and I handle it with them. No, I just obviously don't get along with them, but by making this decision, we're basically dissolving the other one. And I don't know the intricate details of how they are not getting along. And I guess I probably need to educate a little bit more on that. Can you give me a little bit more detail on the letters that you got?
Oh, well, I mean, I'll just give to you, and then...
We got the letter, it already in the last one.
Of course, at the meeting that I went to, that I attended to bring it together, it was the accusation of racism that occurred. So, you know, I mean, I'm just... But I was there, and that accusation was thrown around. You know, there have been people that have tried to have a good relationship with them, and they will go for the baseline to address it.
I think they're double sided.
During the Amtrak facility, they will block off the parking lot over there, I was...
Now, I remember that, that was a negative issue.
Let me tell you what happened, a person came up to me and said, hey, they said that only youth officials can park there. Said, no, you can go park over there, so they went over there and parked. This is more than one person, and some of them stayed there, then this one person, they got back to them, said, no, you absolutely cannot park there. So that person came back to me, come back over to me in the car, said, I'm out of here, I'm not, I'm not...
You know, I had, the day the Amtrak came through, I had about seven or eight people come to me and say, what's going on down there in that end of the building, you know, they're not letting people park and blah, blah, blah. So I don't know if that's a territorial issue, or what.
No, it's, it's from the board down, it's, there's a personality, character, something going on there. The reason that we asked the board to combine is because the historical commission is actively involved in the community, they're a little bit more proactive, they've got a little, they're a little younger, they've got, they've got the initiative and the drive to put into it, to promote it, so that it becomes part of our tourism here, instead of the nature by which it...
Alright, so the building is owned by who?
The historical commission.
Okay, and the artifacts are owned by who?
I'm not sure about that. They're, I think some of them are contributing for display.
That's what she told me one time.
She said what?
She yelled.
It's there to curators, that's their stuff, that's what I was asking here, who owns the stuff inside, if y'all take the...
Because I mean, if, if, she gonna pack up, she gonna load up her motorbike and take it home?
And it's not from the counties. But here's the other, the council president, whenever they remember, we paid for the study to be done, and went in there. We loaded up the lights on this thing. Well, first of all, they said we want to take pictures, they said, no pictures. Then they eventually said, this is what they told the council president. Then they said, well, in order to take pictures, you need to turn the lights, no, we're not turning the lights on.
I think you just said...
It was, and so the county, county... So, I mean, there's just, it's just, you know, these things are happening, and it's something that I've told the board, you know, I've been bringing it up, and saying, let's just get on, it's finally the time, so enough is enough. And that board is commissioned by you. There's padlocks on the gates over there, you can't go and enjoy that park, well, I call it the park. If you wanted to just walk, or get out of the sun, or something like that. And if you notice that CRA bought the lot, well, then they put the tape on the front of it.
Well, listen, there's no reason why they can't both get along and all work under the same umbrella of the historical society. It's one and the same, as far as I'm, sorry, Eric, as far as I'm concerned, it's the history, it's only camp here.
Preservation of history. So whatever the fallout is, the fallout is. So is, are you on board with dissolving?
Oh, you have, uh, oh.
Well, I was gonna say, I can't say dissolve.
You can choose not to fund it, yeah, you don't, you can't dissolve.
Listen, God, I mean, we're not gonna make any decisions here, but, you know, the thing is that staff has...
Say it this way, Jason, you got till the final budget hearing to back out and do whatever you decide right now.
I'm gonna take a little more time to decide what I want to do.
Yeah.
Since I'm the least informed probably of all these groups, I've got to go.
Just keep in mind, we've tried to do it here. Alright, folks, I think, is there anything else that we need to talk about?
Two, two things I want to bring up real quick. It was two, two, and one's not...
No decision?
No decision.
Layers on the bench.
Does that feel good?
I don't like it. Since I've been on the board, we haven't discussed raises at this point in the board meeting, I don't want to be there because I like the way they get the budget finished, brought back to us, and then see what we have left over. But I still don't want to try to ride it off, keep an open mind as we move into the next couple of budget hearings, because I believe they are probably gonna bring it up. That said, every year, we've been approving new trucks to be bought, I know we bought off sheriff's contract. Al, Dr. Jackson, Chamber, are moving into this buy local deal, I've been asked to buy a local. I still want to get the best deal for the tax fair, but I don't know if there's any way that at the beginning of the year, we can go out for a local bid, or go out for a bid on, and then if they are close to where we need them to be compared to the sheriff's contract, let's start buying a local, if not, they have the option. I agree with you, and let me tell you what we have done, and I don't mind doing it again, we can ask them, we can go bid. We've asked the dealers in the past, because they have an opportunity to turn a price in and bid on the sheriff's contract. And they haven't elected to do that.
I understand, but I know...
But I don't mind, you know...
If we're talking three or four thousand dollar difference, even maybe, I don't want to buy a truck from Miami to save three thousand dollars.
Well, I was involved in a two-truck deal for the conservation district, and we wanted to go as local as we could, and ended up getting the Jacksonville, but I got a good price on four drive trucks in Jacksonville with a dealer that I know, and he, I think he beat Ferguson, but right along the state contractor, it was the best deal they could get, and we got it right there in Jacksonville, so if you're interested in Ford, I can get you a deal on Ford.
The only, it's not that you have to buy local, I would like them to have the opportunity.
If they do change, they want to build a bike, I agree with that.
What I've found is, is in the past, when we were first, first talking to the board, I think we did do some halftime like that, and they didn't go through, some of them did, so... And then they came later and said, well, we want an opportunity, so what I've found, they just want you to hand deliver.
Kind of, we're working with, that company's helping, we're working with Chamber, they moved forward, buy local, and move four places, or move a hit.
Alright, everybody got anything else?
You want to know what the contingency is?
Yes, please.
Three twenty-six, one twenty-five.
Three twenty-six, one twenty-five. Three twenty-six, one twenty-five. I will remind the board that last year, we ran a contingency of like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We decided to put the rest of the city...